Well, good evening, virtually, from the city of Temecula. I'm Mary Ann Edwards, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And could we have the roll call, please? And we want to do the invocation first. We're going to go with standard order.
Yes, Madam Mayor Potem, as a reminder for the public, due to the ongoing emergency, the meeting tonight is being conducted virtually. And our illustrious Assistant City Manager, Greg Butler, will provide the invocation, with Councilmember Nigar leading the flag salute.
All right, so if we could stand for the invocation, followed by the flag salute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please bow your heads as we pray. Heavenly Father, we gather together here this evening intent on doing good work. May our elected officials seek to represent fairly and well those who have given them this task. May all of our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. May personal faiths give strength to act honestly and well in all matters to be considered. Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow an understanding of our own motives, knowing that people act out of their own fears. May we each be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us to all be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength can always find compromise. Working together, may we find common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear. Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs.
Thank you.
I, everyone, say with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. So now, we could have the roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor Potem. Madam Mayor Potem Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Good evening.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Okay, so we are going to go on to public comments, and a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council. So, Randy, do you want to go ahead and read the one that we use specifically during the virtual meetings?
Yes, Madam Mayor Potem. We do have public comments on non-agendized items and no public comments on the consent calendar. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker will be limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. We have five public comments on non-agendized items, and I'll go ahead and read those into the record now.
Thank you.
The first is from Renee Dohany. She indicates, "Residents of both Rainbow, Fallbrook, Temecula, as a lifelong resident of both counties, I have found it very pleasant to live here. There is an issue that residents of Temecula would like to address with city council and the mayor, the Public Safety Transportation Department. In agreement, we do want to follow the regulations. The issue is having a spotlight shined on me as I'm passing through Temecula going to Fallbrook so bright I cannot see the road. I am used to this, but I have an idea. Can we propose having stickers issued from the permanent residents to put on the windshield so the border control can see that we are indeed American or American Indian without being scared to death every time I pass through, Temecula resident?" The next comment is from Joyce Wilson, I'm sorry, Joyce William. Actually, I believe it's William Joyce. "Good evening, council and staff. The Rotary Club of Temecula is very active in our valley. We have over 100 members who work tirelessly to give back to our community through committees that serve seniors, military families, homeless youth, feeding the less fortunate, and many other efforts to help improve the lives of local residents. Our Vocational Services Committee recently presented our 2020 Rotarian Award for Vocational Excellence, RAVE. Each year, club members nominate non-rotarian distinguished members of the community that exemplify the Rotary motto, 'Service Above Self,' through their careers and who meet our four-way test in their professions, upholding the highest of ethical standards. We were so proud to present this year's award to Cindy Warren of Junior Amateur Golf Scholarships, JAGS Give Back, a local nonprofit that makes a positive impact in the lives of veterans, military families, first responders, college students, senior citizens, special needs children, and adults. We ask that the council recognize the Rotary Club of Temecula 2020 RAVE Award winner Cindy Warren of JAGS Gives Back." Thank you.
So would you make a note of that, please, Madam City Clerk?
Yeah, we can send her a certificate.
Great.
The next speaker is Ken Fogel. "Good afternoon. My question to the council is, what the hell are you doing, what, I'm sorry, what the hell are you going to do? The rate of COVID-19 infection in the city of Temecula over the past 21 days, including today, shows an increase of 91%. The same timeframe in Arizona is 88%. If you narrow it down to 14 days, it's 56% versus 49%, and then seven days is 28% versus 20%. However you slice it, when a small city such as Temecula has an exploding positivity rate beyond that of Arizona, something is going wrong. It's even outpacing Riverside County. What actions beyond the governor's orders are you going to take?" And the next speaker is Suzanne Lane. "Thank you for reading this. May the God of all creation give you wisdom, discernment, and courage to do the right thing. I would like to express my serious concern for our community concerning the ongoing unlawful invalid public health emergency. I noticed that there actually is no order from July 13th from Governor Newsom, and honestly, he can't legislate laws anyways, not even in an emergency. What I see is on his website is his comment telling us what he wants us to do, and a tweet telling us as well. No governor can compel anyone to do anything. He has no authority. He can only direct departments to do things. Laws are what compel us to do things. Where's the law? What is the penal code and info telling me what will happen if I don't comply to his draconian comment? There is no law. I then went to the California Public Health website. There is no order dated July 13th. Go check it out. And the very same guidance from June 28th still applies. Guidance is not a law. It's guidance and is unenforceable. The media basically is complicit with the tyrannical agenda, wanting us to believe that Newsom can make a proclamation, and we all roll over and comply. This is not how our democratic republic works. Can you see what is happening on your watch? Someone has to be the first to stand up and say no to this wannabe emperor with no clothes, just like a good parent that has to make the choice to discipline their out-of-control toddler or forever live in fear of his tantrums and comply to his demands. We need to say no more. His strike team is basically a strong-arming, fear-mongering bunch of bullies. Is that how you want to live?" Now, I'm no math genius, but it's simple enough to see that COVID virus numbers are being manipulated, exaggerated to look like a serious problem. Illegals still being flown in are counted with our numbers and hospitalizations. Elective surgery patients counted in those numbers. It's a dirty political game. Just because someone tests positive for carrying the virus doesn't mean anything. At any given time, we are carrying germs and viruses and bacteria. That's why we have immune systems. Will you wear a mask forever? Shutting down all of society because a flu bug is going around is not the answer. Protect the vulnerable and everyone else. Go on with life as usual. If nobody told you that we were in a pandemic, would you even know? There is actual, there is no actual science to support the ongoing shutdown. Everything on the CDC website is all inconclusive and speculative, requiring more studies. There is no science that proves wearing a mask or standing six feet apart protects anyone. There would have to be a control group doing that, doing the exact opposite. Maybe these actions have actually made things worse by lowering our immunity and causing lack of oxygen-related issues. Fear itself lowers the immune system, and the media and news outlets are complicit to continue the fear narrative. Certain tyrannical government leaders are attempting to destroy America and its constitution and our economy, well-being, and peace of mind and basic freedoms and the way of life. Certainly, you must see this. It's so clear." She's just at about three minutes. "I suggest Temecula be the first in California to stand up for the United States Constitution, to stand on our First Amendment rights, to uphold California Civil Code 51, because any law or order or store policy or regulation or rule that is repugnant to the Constitution is invalid, unlawful, and unenforceable. I suggest businesses band together and just say no. Let the lawsuits begin. Discipline that out-of-control toddler. Thank you." And the last one is from Yukiko Hakamata. And even though it is a request for a proclamation, she still wanted it to be read as her public comment tonight on non-agendized items. "In the last two years, the city of Temecula has issued dyslexia proclamations and presented residents of the city who are advocating that Temecula Valley USD provide reading programs with fidelity to students. New Bridge School is a private school in Poway for students with reading disabilities such as dyslexia. Dyslexia Learning Center in Marietta offers after tutoring using their Barton reading and spelling programs. Parents who have students with reading disabilities have had to hire advocates and attorneys to get their student the appropriate reading program so their student can read at the grade level. Students are pushed through high school without reading at grade level. This is what the proclamation stated. The International Dyslexia Association's mission is to create a future for all individuals who struggle with dyslexia and other related reading differences so that they may have richer, more robust lives and access to the tools and resources they need. And dyslexia is neurological, is neurological in origin and is not an intellectual disability. And dyslexia, often inherited, affects all segments of the society regardless of race, income, or educational background. And dyslexia affects the way the brain processes information and is characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, and spelling occurring at all levels of intelligence. And undiagnosed cases of dyslexia can be detrimental to a young person's self-confidence, learning, and development. Too many young children with dyslexia do not receive the resources they need, resulting in lower rates of literacy and higher rates of dropping out of school, unemployment, and incarceration. While dyslexia can make reading more difficult, with the right instruction, almost all individuals with dyslexia can learn to read. Greater recognition and understanding are necessary to ensure that individuals living with dyslexia are accurately identified and provided with an appropriate service so that they can lead maximally productive lives. Now, therefore, I, Mike Nigar, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 to be National Dyslexia Awareness Month in the city of Temecula, and encourage all citizens to learn more about dyslexia, to offer support to parents, guardians, foster parents, caregivers, educators, and individuals affected by dyslexia. The same proclamation declaring dyslexia awareness was issued by Matt Ron, city of Temecula mayor, in September 2018. We too look forward to receiving a Dyslexia Awareness Month proclamation for the city of Temecula in October of 2020." And Madam Mayor Potem, we'll go ahead and send them that.
Okay, thank you.
She just wanted it read tonight.
Okay, great.
And that concludes public comments on non-agendized items.
All right, thank you. So we can go on to city council reports. Since we're in a virtual setting, I will ask my colleagues, one at a time, for any reports. I'll start on my right. Councilmember Nigar, anything?
Yes.
Yes, he does. He is digging through the briefcase.
Yeah, I think it bears mention. For a long time, for almost 30 years, I think, I think about 30 years, we've had a writer for the Press Enterprise. His name was Carl Love. And he still writes today for the Press Enterprise. He's done a fantastic book, From Two Lanes to the Fast Lane: Stories of Change in America from Temecula and Marietta. The book is available on Amazon. And what it is, is a collection of his articles. Go back, forgive me, Carl, if you're watching, I believe, over 30 years. And he also puts them in rather an order of era. So he's got the published date, and he's also got sort of the era where things were occurring. And it's a delightful read.
I bet it's fun.
Yeah, it is a very good read. Costs 16 bucks on Amazon, and I'd recommend anybody out there getting it.
Well, he's a good guy and a good community member, even if he does live in Marietta.
Yeah.
So, anything, Zack?
Nothing for me tonight.
Matt? Nothing? All right. So, from city council reports, we will move on to the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, would you please present the consent calendar?
Happy to do so, Madam Mayor Potem. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of June 23rd, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of May 31st, 2020. Number five, approve financial statements for the third quarter ended March 31st, 2020. Number six, approve amended salary schedule to comply with the statutory and regulatory requirements for publicly available pay schedules. Number seven, adopt resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. And Madam Mayor Potem, that concludes the reading of the consent calendar.
All right, would anyone like to pull anything?
Move consent.
I have a motion and a second. Randy, you want to take the roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor Potem Edwards?
Here, I mean, I.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwank?
Aye, aye.
All right, that passes. So I'm going to now recess the city council meeting to the meeting of the Temecula Community Service District and turn the meeting over to Councilmember and President Zack Schwank.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Potem. Roll call tonight's Community Services District meeting to order. Will we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
President Schwank?
And I'm here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules. We will move on to our consent calendar. "All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number eight, approve the action minutes of June 23rd, 2020. And item number nine, approve financial statements for third quarter ending, ended March 31st, 2020."
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you please take the vote?
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Schwank?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes. Director Hawkins, do we have a director's report this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, sir. General manager's report this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. And any of our board of directors have a report this evening?
No, sir.
All right. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The next meeting to be held on Tuesday, July 28th, 2020.
All right, so I now am going to call to order the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. So could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
And Director Schwank?
Here.
And do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, no public comments. So we'll go on to the Sarda consent calendar. We'll move to the consent calendar saying, "All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have only one item tonight, and that is item number 10, approve financial statements for the third, for the third quarter ended March 31st, 2020, and the recommendation is, board of directors, receive and file." So we have a motion?
Yes.
And?
Second.
Second, and could we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Schwank?
Aye.
All right, that item passes. So anything, executive director for Sarda? No.
Nothing further tonight.
All right, thank you. And anything, board of directors? No? And so I will adjourn the meeting of Sarda to, let's see, do we have the next date? July 28th, right? Okay, so go in there. And we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council. Okay, and we are on to the business items, and that's item number 11. Receive update on Old Town temporary expanded outdoor dining program recommendation. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, members of the council, good evening. Before you tonight is the update to the temporary expanded dining retail program for Old Town as well as citywide. I know that this is the third meeting in a row that we've discussed this, so much of the background you've already heard, but I think it's still important to touch on it before we move on. And of course, why are we here? I think we all know why we're here. COVID is why we're here. Retail restaurants are struggling, and we were trying to find a way to give them the ability to make it through. And I think it's important to note that this program, while we've received considerable feedback, and you're going to hear more feedback tonight, is seeking to strike the balance to do the most good for the most people, and that is the, that is the sentiment and genesis of the program. So, back on June 9th, staff presented this program and was approved by the city council to actually close Front Street, Fourth Street, and Fifth Street for the use of sidewalks and streets for outdoor dining and retail, as well as use of private property for both of those as well. As you know, that was reduced down before the closure even began to what you see here before you, which is a much more limited closure just on Front Street, closing Front Street itself from Second to Fourth, with all of the side street remaining open. And that's currently what the situation is down in Old Town tonight. Couple of things I wanted to point out, just, we've heard some feedback on this little confusion, that this program is for outdoor dining and retail, so retail can participate, and the opportunity is citywide. So while in Old Town, you can use, you have the, you have the opportunity to use public right-of-way, in the rest of the city, you don't have the ability to use public right-of-way, but you can use private property to expand out, whether it's dining or retail. And another thing we've been hearing, and we just wanted to clear this up, is, yes, the Promenade Mall was required to close per the governor's order this week, but other retailers are allowed to stay open, and they have indoor operations, obviously, with the appropriate social distancing precautions. So we just wanted to make that point clear, while not necessarily related to the outdoor dining program, we just wanted to make sure everybody had that very clear. Wanted to cover public outreach, got a lot of comments about that, too. While we admit, this was not done in a way that we would normally do in a normal situation, where we would do public outreach ad nauseam, but at this point, a considerable amount of public outreach is taking place, whether it's communication with local agencies like the OTTA, Visit Temecula Valley, Chamber of Commerce. We've had, this is now the third city council meeting, and numerous, numerous individual conversations by number, multiple staff members with members of the community, business owners and property owners. The status of the, of the program in Old Town right now, as it sits today, is we have actually 14 applications total. Eight of those applications are actually up and operating. They include Swing In, Bailey's, Devillicious, House of Jerky, Under the Willow, Temecula Olive Oil Company, 1909, and Be Good. The remaining applications are either approved or in the process of being approved, and they, if, once they're approved, they can go out and do their thing anytime they please. So what kind of feedback have we been getting since the last time we talked? You know, since we, we've had a couple weeks under our belt with the program, and we're hearing some themes, and one of the biggest ones is that it looks, Old Town looks like it's under construction. I think that's universal with the orange barricades. Again, just like with the outreach, as we rushed to get this out, and rightfully so, to, to make sure that there was, the opportunity was, was out quickly, we, we put the, the orange barriers out. We are in the, in the process of, and I'll get into that a little bit later, of remedying that situation. Along with that, we've heard it needs to be more inviting. I think that kind of goes in the vein with, with the barriers and the electronic sign and, and moving to improve some of the facilities around letting people know that it's, it's open and what it's open for. Signage, obviously, is a big one. We have heard some difficulties with deliveries with FedEx and UPS, so we have to, we have to work that out as well. One thing we did hear, which was kind of interesting, is a, a couple of the businesses that were not in favor of the program, after the, for the order closing indoor dining altogether, they actually asked the city to close the street in front of their property, which isn't what we're proposing tonight, but that is something that we've heard. And the two big ones, of course, which are the competing interests that are driving the proposals tonight, is that the closure is hurting their business and the closure is helping their business. So we're hearing from both sides of the coin, very powerful messages, but both of those messages are coming through loud and clear. And it's because of, of that feedback that we thought it was appropriate to come to council and give you guys options, let you know what's happening down there now, but also provide you with options to potentially deal with some of the concerns, particularly the concerns of folks saying that the, the closure is hurting their business. And so that's what we're going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to provide you with two options. One is, is the obvious option, and the second would be an option, opening the street. So the first option is, is to continue on with the Old Town Front Street closure, but with some proposed enhancements. Those enhancements would be, obviously, to replace the orange barricades that you see out there with, temporarily with white barricades, which are, the city has already purchased, and we're waiting for them to be delivered. That should be an upgrade into itself. But if the streets are to remain closed for any considerable amount of time, we think it would be nice to replace the barricades with bollards, similar to the type of bollards you see out in front of City Hall, connected with chain. It's a, it's a much more aesthetically pleasing type of, of closure. We also propose that if the streets stay closed, to provide box trees and planters strategically along the three-block section to soften some of the areas that aren't being utilized for outdoor dining and retail. Potentially, there's some details to this, just because it crosses over the public right-of-way and emergency access, but potentially hanging string lights. I'm sure we're all familiar with the ubiquitous string lights that are out there these days. Of course, improve signage at the north and south entrances, letting people know what's going on. Potentially partner with TCSD and the arts community to engage in some public art projects, obviously with the appropriate social distancing at all times. Also, to actually go ahead and paint the crosswalks at the intersections. That's something that we actually wanted to do for some time, but it seems now would be an appropriate time to get out there and do it. We've heard that people want the removal of the large digital traffic signs that are, and that's still something we have to work out with our traffic engineer and make sure safety is being maintained, but that is something that people have requested. And then the idea to construct city parklets in unused parking spaces. So there's a, there is a considerable amount of unused parking in the closure area that's not being used by restaurants or retail. So we thought, why not just do a public parklet? We could do one as a test, and it's really just an urban park, a platform with chairs and tables and umbrellas, and maybe some planters. It's just a, it's a shady respite for folks walking through Old Town. And as we know, it's, it's hot down there, so that would probably be fairly welcome. So you're all familiar with the bollards, and this is just an example. So something like this, instead of the barricades, potentially string lights, this is just another example. I know you're all very familiar with that. Kind of liven it up, set it off, create a, create a place unto itself just with lighting. And maybe, not, not necessarily this type of design, but this is just an idea of planters and trees along, along the route where there are none now. And this is, not necessarily look just like this, but this is a, this is a parklet. It's filling up probably two or three on-street parking spaces, and it's just a public gathering space. This is actually a restaurant, but you could do something similar to this and have it just be a public resting area. So timing for this, for this option, obviously, the streets are already closed, so you wouldn't have to do much there. But the white barricades that have been purchased will show up between July 30th and August 7th, so they're imminent to arrive and be changed out. If bollards were ordered, if that's the route we want to go, takes 30, 60 days, thereabouts, to get those ordered and installed. And then all the other improvements I mentioned would, would just be implemented as soon as possible, as soon as we could acquire the materials and get the crews out there to, to put them up. So it, there's a lot there, so how are we going to pay for that? Well, we're proposing potentially to use CARES Act funding, although I know that there's, that's a fluid situation, so there may be some changes there that we might have to come back and talk to you about. The CARES Act funding is CARES Act, that deals with COVID. It's being administered by the state. We can use that money for essentially helping businesses through the time of COVID. So the white barricades, you can see here, bollards and installations, tree, trees, street street trees and planters, signage, the city parklet would be $10,000 each for roughly a total cost to keep it closed and add these types of improvements of, of around $230,000. So option two, this is the option that would actually reopen Front Street and reopen all of the normal traffic flow of Old Town. So again, it would reopen Old Town Front Street to vehicle or traffic. Outdoor dining and retail would obviously continue. What would happen is there would be, you know, it wouldn't be totally dissimilar to what you see down there today, but there would be some hardening of those, the edges of, of the outdoor dining and retail, obviously to protect against vehicles going by in case there was an errant vehicle to, to veer off into the, into the area. And then we would still propose to do the painted crosswalks. So these are just, these are just examples. And like I said, it's not entirely dissimilar to what you see down there right now, but you can see there are some treatments where there's a little, there's a curb that's actually part of the, the platform. You can see at the, at the front here, there's a, probably a fairly heavy, they're all along here, but there's a fairly heavy planter to, to guard against cars. Similar instance here, some are more robust than others. You can see here that there's a planter kind of at each end of this example. And this is just another example. So essentially, the street would be opened. The, the areas that were, are used would be hardened somewhat, barricaded, not entirely different than what they look like now. And what the, the benefits are, it returns normal vehicle traffic flow to Old Town, which of course eases the concerns of merchants that have stated the street closure is, is actually hurting their business and, and we want to be sensitive to that, of course. Some of the drawbacks, there, there could potentially be some loss of seating area, capacity and retail floor area, just as we have to potentially move them back a foot or two to make sure proper barricading is in place. And there might be a potential loss of, of tables on sidewalks if we have to open portions of the sidewalk for, for pedestrian thoroughfare. And one of the other drawbacks is just the, the proximity of, of cars to diners and, and shoppers, just for comfort reasons and of, of course, the safety reasons. The timing for, for this option is just the time it would take for, for the restaurants and the, and the retailers to adjust, a matter of days. And for the city to put the, the car resistant barricades in, in place, which that probably wouldn't take the city more than a few days. So, but it's, it's hard to tell exactly, to give it a, an exact day and say it'll start, you know, five days or a week later. It, it would just be a matter of taking care of those two points. Again, the funding for this would, would be much less. It's just the purchasing of the white barricades, $18,000. Of course, the same funding source of, of the CARES Act. So with that, those are the two options. That, that's the, that's the status of the program. Those are the two options that we would like to discuss with you tonight. And that concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Does anyone have questions? Nothing? Matt?
I hate to bring it up, Luke, but, sequoia? On any of this?
Yes, probably. Yeah.
Well, at this point, it's temporary, so.
So is that going to change the timeline?
Well, it depends on, option one would be, it's temporary, but you would have to, you would have to make a determination on its permanency. So if it's truly temporary, then it's temporary. But if you want to, we don't know how long this is going to go on. I mean, nobody knows. So if we, if we leave it temporary, then we're probably in a good place. But if you wanted to leave it in for a year or two, we would probably have to take a look at that.
I was going to say, there must be, you know, a maximum amount of time that you could be temporary.
I'm sure we don't have any predetermined thresholds, is kind of what I was wondering. So without that, then, I mean, we're, we're in a bit of a sequel limbo, I guess.
It's something we would have to look into, that's for sure.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. Mike, nothing? Zach?
No, I don't have any question.
Okay, so obviously the barricades that are there now, the orange ones, the not-so-beautiful ones are temporary and we slide them out onto the street. But if you use the bollards, is there, are they temporary in a way? Do they screw into the ground or?
They can be removed.
Okay.
Yep.
So they can be removed for storage. And then you, I know we, you said how many people had signed up for the current program. Have you taken a quasi-poll or anything about how many people who are opposed may, you know, change their mind if we have both traffic circulation and the outdoor dining?
No, we haven't done any polling to that, to that effect. I, I think that from my unofficial discussions with folks, that those that are opposed would be much happier if the street was open. And, and there, no one is opposed, no one that I've talked to is opposed to allowing the restaurants and retailers to move outside. That's not something that has really been on the table.
But they want the traffic circulation because business and access to their businesses, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So if we have no further questions, then do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor Potembe. We do have public comments on this item.
How many?
I'm going to beg your indulgence because we have 72 public comments. They do have five minutes, up to five minutes. Most of them will not take but a minute or two. So I will go ahead and read those comments into the record pursuant to the notice provided at the top of the agenda at this point. The first comment is from Christina Hastings. As a business owner in Old Town, I'm begging for the street to reopen. This is hurting my business as much as being forced to close during quarantine. I will lose my store. The next comment is David Boone. I am sending this email to let you know that I would like to have Front Street in Temecula reopened. I understand the logic behind closing the street, but most of the businesses in Old Town have patios to extend their business out onto. There are currently only three businesses that are fully utilizing the street expansion. I have lived in Temecula for 20 years and there is a certain ambiance to Old Town. Front Street has always been a thoroughfare. Many of the businesses that put patios up before COVID-19 did so, did it so that people could sit there and watch the many antique cars, hot rods, motorcycles and people pass by. 1909 already has a patio and if you want to close a street for 1909 and the new restaurant Be Good, close the East-West Cross Street. Other cross streets could be closed that do not have residences on them. Again, please reopen Front Street. The next speaker is Delaney Mahoney. My name is Delaney Mahoney. As a Temecula resident for over 20 years, I am emailing you to ask that you reopen Front Street in Old Town for cars' access. While the intentions were to support businesses, it has shown, it has shown to hurt business, much of which are small, family-owned and operated. Social distancing and safety precautions need to be adhered to, but closing the street and access has proven, has proven to be detrimental. Please consider revising this plan immediately to support hard-working families and citizens of the valley. The next speaker is Lilia Ossenfikaya. Since Temecula City Council closed Main Road, our business suffered considerable losses of traffic and income. It is down by 60, 65%. If City Council is interested in equal business opportunity and would like to support all businesses, please reopen. The next speaker is Catlin Douglas. I hope this email finds you well. I am an employee of the Swing In Cafe and have been for a duration of four years now. In my time there, it has been nothing less than what a family feels like with all our regular customers and other small business owners surrounding us. March 17th, we had to close our doors due to the ongoing pandemic our world is currently seeing, putting my Swing In family in a bind as most of us struggle to receive unemployment benefits, as I'm sure many others did too. When we got the call from our employers that we were returning to work June 1st, I don't think our eagerness could have been more apparent to them. As that day came and went, our doors were open as we followed the new guidelines to the restaurant industry and our customers were just as overjoyed as we were. However, only after a week or two, it was announced that the main road through Old Town Temecula was going to be closed, cutting off parking for our customers and cutting off potential business for our restaurant as individuals drove by. Again, being an employee of Swing In for this long now, every single day myself, my coworkers and my employers are stressed about how our, about our now affected incomes. As being on unemployment was stressful enough, this decision to close the road came immediately after our business was just getting back into routine. Additionally, we hear from our many regular customers of all ages, the negative comments they share with us about this road closure. We are approaching a very hot summer ahead of us and most people won't want to walk the streets of Old Town looking for somewhere to eat or shop, but rather go elsewhere to places they don't have to park half a mile away to get to where they're intending to go. Old Town Temecula was successful before the neon-orange barriers. Why change a good thing? Why hurt the small businesses that so many love? Open the street. Thank you for taking the time to read this email. Please take it into consideration.
Matt, just a quick point of order. And I think it might be helpful. The governor issued his new orders yesterday, correct? It would be helpful to, to know when the comments came in. In other words, could you read the date that you received them? Because I, I wonder if some of those comments may have been submitted prior to yesterday.
Yeah, and that's a good point.
Okay.
Absolutely. And they're actually being read in the order received. So Christina Hastings was July 8th, 138, so July 8th. David Boone was July 8th. Delaney Mahoney was July 9th. Lilia was July 9th. Catlin was July 9th. Courtney Tanner, July 9th. I wanted to send a quick email to let you know I believe the street closure is killing businesses. The Swing In has been in business for 96 years and it has never been this slow. Every dear, every day I hear from customers, is there construction on the streets? When will this be gone? I had the hardest time finding you. COVID is bad enough, the street closure, it's a double hit. Please reconsider this. You're killing our business and our livelihood. Alicia Medina, July 9th. I want to complain about the street closure in Old Town. It's ridiculous. It's causing traffic jams, business losing potential customers and in general blocking people from finding wonderful shops or restaurants with having to go around and not realizing they are missing out. Please consider my plea to remove the blockades. Summer Tanner, July 9th. I am emailing in order to submit my comments based on the closure of Front Street. The Swing In is an exceptional dine-in location. It is not far from my home location and clearly has been a staple in the Marietta Riverside community and surrounding area. This closure of Front Street makes it extremely difficult to get to the Swing In restaurant. I strictly and absolutely oppose this closure and I strongly encourage the reconsideration of it. Please take into consideration the various emails and comments that will be sent in, further support of the Swing In. Thank you for your time. Sandra Williams, July 9th. Please do not close Front Street. Too many small businesses are already hurting and may never recover. Closing Front Street would be a death sentence for most of them. My family and ate, and I ate at the Swing In two days ago on the patio and we could easily practice social distancing. These businesses are trying hard to comply with the new models for COVID-19. Please allow Front Street to remain open. Taylor Smith, July 9th. I am a high school student and I am living in a pandemic. I don't watch the news, I don't keep up with politics and I don't read about what is happening with the Temecula meetings. I'm a rule follower and I love to help people. I'm a performer and I do community theater in Old Town. The Swing In is my favorite restaurant. After every performance, I go to the Swing In for a big sandwich. After every bad day, I go to the Swing In for a slice of that sweet chocolate mousse pie. When the pandemic started, I had a lot of events canceled. I believe I had around 15 to 20 events canceled. I went to the Swing In and it was closed. If it had stayed that way, I wouldn't have just missed out the food, missed the food. It's a part of Old Town. Those employees are a part of Old Town. Their service is always quick and the employees are always so nice. They get so acquainted with every customer, asking what show I am in, what dances I know, what I like to do, what my favorite part of Old Town is. Much better than the typical, how's your day going? Front Street, like everything else, is closed temporarily. Of course, that makes the businesses along the street suffer because people have only gotten lazier and don't want to walk so far to get to their destinations. However, the inconvenience of walking down the badly maintained road to the diner and other places because closing Front Street was more convenient than asking people to park and not walk around should not reflect on the Swing In. I could list many reasons why the Swing In means a lot to me, but quite frankly, I don't think you will care. I don't think you care what people say because you are not doing what is best for the people of Temecula. You are doing what is convenient for you. This is true because the Swing In can do exactly what every other restaurant is doing and enforce masks and seat people apart. Closing the Swing In is just taking more away from everyone, not just me. Save the Swing In, don't take away more. We already know school will be ruined. I'm sure we won't be able to use cash anywhere. Parks and community pools will probably stay closed. Community theater companies are in ruins. Just leave the in, save the in. Please just leave us something, a less expensive restaurant that is nice to its customers and consistent with its service. Save the in. The next speaker is Dane Salvezold, July 9th. I felt compelled to write you regarding the situation, which I must say is not like me to do so, but as a 17-year citizen of the city, I have some strong feelings about disclosure. The first issue is with the fact that this was done against the majority vote of the merchants. What's the point of asking for their votes if the council does what they want anyway? The people spoke, the council didn't listen, and that seems clear. Secondly, as a family who used to frequent Old Town before it became nearly impossible to go to our usual spots, we find ourselves avoiding, avoiding it altogether. Who wants to eat in the streets, really? You get none of the Old Town feel and are paying a premium to eat over grease, over a greasy tarmac. In addition, it looks like a war zone at this point with the K-rails everywhere. I believe it was a bad idea and needs to be undone, in my opinion. Many longstanding shops and restaurants may close due to this decision. Please consider that fact. In addition, some have just opened and need a fighting chance. Thanks for the opportunity to voice my opinion. We love our town. Diane Routen, July 9th. Since the closure several weeks ago, the amount of foot traffic is nearly non-existent. My revenue is down substantially. While we are aware of that COVID-19 shutdown has also contributed to the hardship, I am certain the street closure was the nail in the coffin. Front Street is a major artery in Temecula from the freeway straight to Marietta and beyond. I'm certain other towns have not chosen major byways to be circumvented in order to help businesses. Driving traffic and the convenience of parking near your destination is an important factor to the experience. The experiment has proven to be a traffic, parking and financial disaster, not to mention the dangerous incidents occurring on Third Street because of the dead end, a constant stream of delivery trucks and confused cars and motorcycles trying to turn around, causing serious chaos. Remove the barriers and open the street immediately. The next speaker is Spencer Seisgal, July 9th. Hope you're well and thanks for your continued business advocacy in Old Town. I know the upcoming city council meeting has the streets closure agenda, closures on the agenda for the 14th and there's been a good deal of feedback. While the business I represent, Crescent Brew and Espadine, have not yet applied, we will be submitting shortly. Following the restrictions imposed on indoor seating, we ceased operations to regroup and decide on the best path forward given the business viability and safety of our staff and patrons. We hope to reopen next week with TUP and special event approval for use of the sidewalk for both locations. If the temporary allowance is no longer granted, our reopening and reemployment of our workforce could be delayed indefinitely. Crescent Brew would be reduced to just six tables. It just wouldn't make sense. 1909, Devilicious, Be Good and Bailey's have clearly taken advantage of the opportunity and seem to be successful in their seating expansion and are able to offer a safer environment for the public health. I cannot speak for them, but I have to imagine reducing their seating could potentially lead to layoffs or closures. While many of those opposed to the street closure cite that it doesn't benefit their business specifically, if it benefits another operator on our street, I hope that program continues. If it allows a neighbor to succeed during a trying time, I'm all for any allowance or lifting of restrictions available. Thank you. Next speaker is Alicia Martin, July 9th. I'm writing this email in regards to the council on July 14th to readdress opening of Front Street. Please reconsider what this is doing to business and that have been the backbone of this town for decades. What's the harm of cars going through the town and instead have more people walking and being even closer to each other? Closing the street just makes it convenient for tourists and locals to see what this town has to offer. These are family-run businesses. Please realize the chain effect that this has on the town and the families in it. The next speaker is, it's actually Texas Lil staff, without a specific name. July 9th. We at Texas Lils are vehemently opposed to the street closure of Old Town Front Street. Having been in business in Old Town for over 33 years, we have experienced many obstacles to running a successful business. This is the first time that we have felt unheard. In the past, city council worked hard to be fair and encourage a thriving, business-friendly climate. The mixed use of both retail offices, restaurants and entertainment has allowed Temecula to become a destination for tourism as well as an attraction for local residents. With the street closure, many people are choosing not to visit. Old Town Temecula has literally become a ghost town. Sitting outside on black pavement in 100-degree heat is not fun. July, August and September are some of the hottest months, so this is just an extremely poor choice. In years past, we have had various promotions to encourage people to visit Old Town during these hot summer months. Now we are discouraging them from visiting by making traffic worse than ever and causing them to hike to their destination. Merchants should utilize their parking areas, just like we have done. Most merchants share some type of parking or access to their business. To close the street to benefit a select few just doesn't seem like the right move. Closing an entire street is just not the answer. Our business experienced such a decline, it was cheaper for us to completely close. We are losing tens of thousands of dollars. Plus, we cannot provide jobs for our staff, which means a decline in tax revenue to the city. The city has failed to communicate with the merchants. The city has failed to provide ample information as to where guests can park to access businesses. Deliveries are an additional problem. It's time for city staff to hear from the people that are working so hard to stay in business. Why not open this to a majority rule vote? Each business, regardless of size, gets one vote, yes or no? If the majority of the business owners vote to reopen, the city... If the majority of the business owners vote to reopen, the city council has a duty to listen. Thank you for allowing us to express our strong feelings in this matter. Please make the right choice. The next speaker is Jenny Shad, July ninth. I live near Old Town and usually spend a lot of time there. I do not like the street closures and have found it to be inconvenient to get to many of the businesses that I usually support. It seems to favor a few restaurants at the expense of other businesses. Unfortunately, because of this, I've just been avoiding going there at all. Please open the streets back up and give customers and clients equal access to all the businesses. The next speaker is Bruce Shab, July ninth. I live within walking distance of Old Town and my wife and I walk on Front Street almost every day. I'm saddened to see the closure on Front Street and don't understand the decision. I can't imagine that this will be beneficial to most of the local merchants. It's great, I suppose, if you're nineteen oh nine, the bank, or one of the other restaurants on the street at the corner of Main and Front Street, but I would imagine that Luke's with their third-floor location, nowhere to park, has been devastated. Likewise, the Swing In, whose traditional and older clientele aren't amiable to long walks in scorching heat. And what about other merchants, like salons and antique shops? They are obviously impacted by the elimination of a lot of street parking. This doesn't seem to benefit the greater good, but rather a select few. Please reopen Front Street. The next speaker is Ron Randozo, July ninth. It is my understanding... He's actually got a whole letter. So I'll start the timer on this one. My name is Ron Randozo and I believe that I am in a unique position to be able to comment on the negative impact the closure of Front Street has had on the already beleaguered merchants of Old Town, as well as the destructive effect on the reputation of the district itself. I am and have been a resident of Old Town since two thousand fourteen, over six years. I live in the Front Street Plaza building at the corner of Third and Front on the northeast corner. My living room windows overlook the intersection and I look down onto the Swing In and the Temecula pub. And additionally, I have a clear view up Front Street to the Espadine restaurant. Therefore, I have and may be the only one with a bird's-eye view of the entire closed-off area twenty-four-seven. I have an unobstructed view of Front Street from the first hideous orange barrier to the last. I have been a resident of Temecula since two thousand two and moved to Old Town after selling my three thousand square-foot cul-de-sac monster after my kids went off to college. I selected this building as a place to downsize because of Old Town's vibrant atmosphere having been transformed from a boring antique roadshow to the closest thing a suburban community can offer as a multi-generational entertainment district. I have been able to avail myself of the many varied dining experiences as well as the excellent entertainment and cultural offerings of the community theater and alike. I have greatly enjoyed the quality of my life in Old Town. It is certain that the current pandemic has had a catastrophic effect on Old Town businesses and their employees, but just as the first phase of opening began, for some reason, city council decided to strike the Old Town merchants with a second devastating blow. I can literally see... I can literally see that the greater Temecula community has rejected this attempt to promote and invigorate the district as it has been an utter failure and from my vantage point, a very predictable one. Temecula residents, as well as those from surrounding cities, visit Old Town for the drive-through experience. I have literally seen this for years. Remember, people come to Old Town to see and be seen. They first cruise the street, not only for the ambiance, but to decide what they would like to see and where they would like to dine and/or alight. It is after that sought-after experience that they begin patronizing their selected targets. Plainly said, not being able to drive through Old Town for the experience they seek and expect, they no longer feel welcomed and have stopped coming. Their disappointment will fall squarely on the elected officials. Several businesses that were hit very hard by the pandemic may now not survive this ill-conceived and poorly executed, albeit well-meaning attempt to stimulate business by the offering of the outdoor café concept. I plainly see this daily and especially from Thursday through Sunday. Folks, it's not working. From my vantage point, the only business benefiting from this experiment is the nineteen oh nine restaurant and not to any great measure at that. Despite what must have been a costly improvement, the Swing In has been noticeably impacted by this folly, as have many others in the forbidden zone. It would be a travesty if one of the remaining historic draws of Old Town is lost. Yes, one can say that this downturn is patronage is being caused by the pandemic, but as soon as the hideous orange barriers were placed, the situation went from bad to worse the very next day. Again, I'm right here on the corner twenty-four-seven, I see it and I know how to count. I have referred to this undertaking as being poorly executed, I will explain. When entering Old Town from the north, motorists are detoured up to Mercedes. They then proceed south and, because they do not receive any additional meaningful directional signage, a very large percentage of them turn west down Third Street where they then find that they are trapped. Again, remember, I live here and actually see it. They have to proceed to the end of the Third Street to turn around. This, of course, has increased the traffic at my front door. This is just a minor inconvenience for the motorists, unless, of course, as I have seen many times, the vehicle is a motorhome, tractor-trailer, or in one case, a pickup truck with a very large and occupied horse trailer. He was completely stuck on Third Street for over fifteen minutes as he could not turn around or back all the way up to Mercedes. I assisted his dilemma by gathering a few passersby to move and then replaced the hideous orange barrier so he could exit south on Front Street. I went to the police station to advise of this problem and suggested to the deputy that a dead-end or no-oulet sign be placed at the top of Third Street. This, of course, has not happened to date and I continue to see dozens of motorists experience this frustrating problem daily. Likewise, entering Old Town from the south has its problems as well. Motorists coming down from Mercedes on Second Street are not stopping at the stop sign because they assume that turning left is the only option. That is five minutes. The next speaker is Keith Green, July tenth. My name is Keith Green and I am one of the owners of Old Town Tire located in Old Town Temecula. Our auto repair business is one of the oldest businesses in Old Town, having operated continuously for over thirty years. The Old Town area of Temecula is an eclectic mixture of many types of businesses. Yet, in the last few years, the area has trended towards an increase in restaurants. I believe everyone is aware of how hard the restaurant industry has been impacted by Covid nineteen. For months, all dine-in restaurants were forced to close and upon the recent reopening, the restrictions related to seating density made it nearly impossible for our restaurant neighbors to see enough patrons in order to be profitable. This is the reality from which the street closure idea was born. Closing the streets to cars and opening them to dining tables gave our neighbors the chance to double their seating capacity. We assumed the street closure might negatively impact our auto repair business. We needed the vehicle traffic. Yet, we had the good fortune of being classified as an essential infrastructure during Covid nineteen. We never had to close our doors. So even though the street closure might hurt our business, we embraced the concept. We wanted to act selflessly. We wanted to do our part to share our good fortune with our restaurant neighbors. We had several promotional discussions with our patrons where we encouraged them to drop off their vehicle for service, then walk through Old Town and patronize our neighbors. Did the street closure work well for everyone? Did restaurants benefit? I don't know the answer. Perhaps it did, perhaps not. If the plan is working, I expect the street closure to continue. If the plan is shown to be a detriment, I trust the city council to remove the barricades and return traffic to normal. But besides the question of whether the plan worked or not, there is an underlying appreciation I feel compelled to express. We feel blessed to live and work in a city which is business-friendly. We are proud to see our elected officials think and work in unconventional ways in an effort to bring much-needed relief to our suffering restaurant neighbors. The purpose of this letter is not to support the street closure nor request that it ends. We simply wish to express our gratitude to the Temecula City Council for their efforts. The next speaker is James Brown, and the date is July tenth. I've been a resident of the Rancho California Temecula since nineteen eighty-eight and my family has owned property in Duluth since nineteen seventy, so you can say I've seen this valley blow up into the monster that it is now. Some good changes and some bad, but for the life of me, I don't understand the rationale of the road closure of Old Town Front Street. I've been told by people answering the phones at City Hall that this was done to improve businesses, which I'm trying to understand how or whose businesses you're trying to improve or help by blocking off the main thoroughfare through town. All you've successfully done, in my opinion, has created more of a traffic parking problem for residents and businesses. Now, I'm also aware that businesses are allowed to put seating in the middle of the street so they can accommodate more patrons in their restaurants, but I would ask you this. Would you sit at a table on an asphalt road under an umbrella in a hundred-degree weather? I think not. The people of Temecula are tired. We're ready to go back to work, our lives and our pastimes. We're tired of being sheep led astray by our government and local politicians and the news media. Let Temecula take a stand, open us back up to go about our lives. If you are worried about Covid, then stay home. Shelter in place, people shouldn't be going out and complaining that businesses aren't practicing social distancing or wearing their masks. If you're that worried about contracting the Covid nineteen, stay home. Old Town is a great place to go for dinner or drink after working your butt off. It's funny how we can allow large groups of people to assemble to protest BLM, but heaven forbid, I sit at nineteen oh nine, the Swing In café, the bank, Mad Madeline's, Devolicious, or any other restaurant for that matter to eat. I heard that the street closure was voted on, but I must have missed the memo because my vote would have been no. Please reopen Front Street and return our lives back to normal. The next speaker is Ed Duell, July tenth. Hi, Ed Duell, representing the Temecula Stage Stop, Sixth and Old Town Front Street, which represents Soros Grill, Temecula Wine and Beer Garden, Greyhound Bus, Farmer's Market, Temecula ATMs, and MK Market. We have and are opposed to the Old Town Front Street closure. I have seen personnel for the past two weeks the deterioration in Old Town. Business closed, no customers, no foot or car traffic. It's hurting ninety-eight percent of business, property owners, and apartment renters. I and others petitioned over twelve hundred signatures in nineteen ninety-eight to change the name from Front Street to Old Town Front Street so Old Town would have signage on the I-15 freeway to show all passerby, we are here and open. We have the same problem as we have today to no business. The city and others have invested millions in Old Town and Old Town Front Street, not to have it shut down, but to have it all to enjoy. We are requesting the opening for all livelihoods. Steve Shabbos, July tenth. I preface this letter with the statement that I know you more than likely did not have anything to do with approving this decision, but unfortunately, you are the one stuck with dealing with the fallout. Please take this message not personally, but in the frustration in which it was written. I've been visiting Temecula since the early nineteen nineties and have been a tax-paying citizen since the turn of the century and it seems that as more and more foolish decisions are made by the Temecula City Council, I get the stronger and stronger urge to experiment living in anarchy. However, this latest decision to close a section of Old Town Front Street to automobile traffic has definitely taken this urge to an entirely new level. The concept of this experiment, as I understand it, is to invite restaurants and businesses to place outdoor seating and wares on the asphalt-street fare style in an effort to combat the current indoor seating restrictions imposed by the state during the Covid nineteen pandemic. After much discussion with other local regulars over the last couple of weeks, many of us have come to the same conclusion. The one-block stretch that has been closed contains only three restaurants and several businesses, two of which either do not need the help because they have other ways to extend their service, such as patio seating, utilizing their own private parking areas, or are not able to move stock outside their stores daily without risking safe or practical business practices. It seems that shutting down the street in this particular area seems to benefit only one bar, which incidentally was approved to open by the council in spite of protests from other current and former business owners in the area. This casts an air of suspicion. As a regular patron to several Old Town businesses, I've experienced firsthand the aggravation of having the street closed. It's understandable enough when this takes place for a parade or a couple of days of the year for the rod run. All the Old Town businesses benefit at such times as these. However, having an entire public street important for its ability to move traffic through an already bottlenecked section of Temecula, shut off for the betterment of just one business can't help but be seen as detrimental to the other establishments in the area. Why weren't their concerns taken into consideration by those that claim to represent their wishes? And on a related note, if blocking off streets is such a great idea, why is there only one street in all of Temecula being shut down to help businesses? Are the only problems that get attention from the city council the ones that can be seen from their office view or car window? Anyone with more than two weeks of practical marketing education should have been able to inform the Temecula City Council that the psychological effect of having large orange roadblocks across the street was going to mentally discourage people from walking past them. It's frustrating to see these damaging decisions being enacted while other areas of our city, which truly need attention, are being ignored. Instead of the city council blindly patting itself on the back for their decisions, maybe the members should be traveling the streets, knocking on doors, and asking questions to the people that they are ignoring. Given the ridiculously poor results of how blocking car traffic has stimulated Old Town, it makes one consider the possibility that whomever pushed this idea through the city's legal channels is either receiving something on the side from this move, has an interest in reducing or removing the non-alcoholic serving businesses currently operating in Old Town, or simply demonstrating an astonishingly underwhelming grasp of how to truly help business owners during the crisis. This decision has not helped, but hobbled business in Old Town. That said, as quickly as it was put into place, a decision like this can be reversed. It's pretty obvious that not many citizens were involved in making these decisions. Why are so many citizens needed to rescind it? As a citizen with a voice and a vote, I'm saying that the city council's experiment is a failure. Please consider this restrained communication a formal request of the Old Town Front Street to be reopened to traffic and business. The next speaker is Julie Dre, July eleventh. Respectfully, I declare enough with government restrictions that are hurting our merchants. If you want Temecula to survive, we must be mindful of the struggles our local businesses have been facing. Any decisions which further restrict recovery are detrimental to the entire community. Do not restrict traffic on Front Street. Next speaker is Russell Fergusstrom, July eleventh. I currently work at Devolicious and have been a part of the staff since two thousand fifteen. I was informed that the city of Temecula will be reviewing the street closure as it has positively and negatively affected businesses. I can't thank Temecula enough for this opportunity, especially now. Due to our current closure of limited seating to just outdoors, it has been an immense help to my income to stay afloat during these uncertain times. I can't imagine there being a huge opposition to Temecula Revive, being that there's a surplus of parking which seems to be the biggest concern. I understand it seems to be a slower pace in activity in Old Town, but I think we can all agree that would be Covid nineteen, not because of a very miniscule road detour. I hope we can remain with this extensive seating as I strongly believe it's keeping our small business going strong. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Bob Danko, July twelfth. It has been approximately thirty days since the outdoor dining experience was approved and implemented. As an owner of one of the handful of restaurants taking advantage of the desperately needed space, I would like to report that the response has been overwhelmingly positive. While the original intent was to supplement our dining area due to social distancing, within approximately two weeks, the governor shut down all indoor dining. Overnight, the extended patio became our lifeboat. Without it, our business cannot sustain itself. I urge the council to continue with the current plan and allow the added dining area to continue until indoor dining room is reopened. We are fortunate to have good weather and the public seems to enjoy the experience. The next speaker is... It's just the business without a name and it's Teos Territorial Traders. All city council members and city staff regarding this meeting on Tuesday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, after the closing of part of the street, the destruction to my retail business and income has fallen off sixty-five to seventy-five percent. And now you want to close more? My clients have told me they will not walk or fight to find parking blocks away to shop or dine, just move on to another town to spend money. Most of my clientele are forty-five years of age or more with discretionary income and when it's a hundred-plus outside or raining, they are not going to make a Pac-Man game to do it. The next speaker is Mark Frederick, July twelfth. I am writing in to express my displeasure at the current road closures on Old Town Front Street. It makes it really a pain to go to Old Town and has almost completely kept me away. I can only imagine how it is impacting all of the Old Town businesses by making it so difficult to access their services. I believe in supporting small business, especially with the current state of the world, and this road closure makes it very difficult. I am very much in favor of reopening Front Street. Whitney Fredericks, July twelfth. My name is Whitney Frederick and I own Aero Beauty Collective in Old Town. I am against the road closures. The traffic it is creating is deterring customers from coming to Old Town. Delivery trucks are having a hard time accessing the buildings on their route. Also, the fact that Third Street is dead and you cannot turn onto Front has created a large problem of cars trying to turn around with little room to do so. While this may be helping a handful of restaurants, it is hurting way more businesses. The road needs to be reopened immediately. The next speaker is Lauren Hargreaves, July twelfth. I'm writing about the recent road closure on Front Street in Old Town Temecula. While I understand how some businesses may benefit from these closures and widening of their patio areas, my con- my concern is for the many other businesses who are already suffering financially because of these new changes. Our business owners have endured and persevered so much these last few months. Many of them are barely making it, as it is with the recent mandatory closures and shutdowns. It seems as if only a select few businesses were taken into consideration when deciding on this new project. I urge you to reconsider this decision for the sake of your hometown, small business owners and neighbors. Temecula is a town where we look out for one another, and while I'm not personally a local business owner, I'm speaking up for those who need this support right now. The next speaker is Carol Landry, July 13th. Barriers in Old Town for dining. The barnyard and other stores are hurting. It's killing the sales coming in, big difference. These people can't go through this right now. The dining tables are empty during the day because of the heat, but the tourists still want to roam the stores. The barriers are ugly and cars don't bother coming in because it looks like a construction area. Horrible idea. Let them put out the tables, but take down the barriers, please, and thank you for listening. The next speaker is Kenneth Danko, July 13th. We would like to thank the council for implementing the road closures. We have been operating for the last month under the temporary, temporarily partially closed Front Street. With the street patio in half-capacity of the dining room, we were ultimately in the best position we could have been in since the complete shutdown. About a week and a half after we started serving in the street, Governor Newsom restricted the indoor dining and has crippled the restaurants once again in Old Town. Although the street dining and road closure was originally thought of as supplement to the half-capacity indoor dining, it has now become a lifeline for the restaurants that are participating. We have had to temporarily close our speakeasy and furlough those staff. The current heat wave has put a damper on the lunchtime business, but the evening business, once cooled down, has picked up. Without the street dining, restaurants will be forced to significantly reduce labor or temporarily close, like the few that have done so, that are not within the closed, closure boundaries. The plan was presented at two council meetings and is fair to restaurants, residents, and non-resident businesses. We invested in furniture and pulled the con, the correct permits with city, with the city and ABC. Our overall customer feedback is positive and are thankful for the city to do the closure as well. The negative feedback I have seen are from restaurants that are not participating, are not affected due to their restaurant construction, open air, or using their own parking lots to create extra dining. The shops, boutiques, salons were not affected by Newsom's order either, just seating at restaurants indoor. We hope that the council will keep the street temporarily closed and allow the restaurants to use streets for dining until all dining restrictions are removed and we can function as we were prior to the pandemic. The next two emails are identical, so I'll read the email once and add the two names. Please reopen Front Street. I am a hairstylist, and the closure is negatively affecting my business. I have a Temecula business license and had no notice as council member Schwenk failed to properly notify businesses. Thank you for your time. That was submitted by Brianna Harrison, July 13th, and the same email was submitted by Mary McGee, July 13th. Next speaker is Donna Payne, July 13th. Please don't close Front Street Temecula, thank you. Next speaker is Winich. Unfortunately, it's not a, a clear first or last name. Please do not close the street any longer. It has made traffic a nightmare and only benefits a few businesses. However, I do like the additional parking areas, and it would be great to keep those, thank you. The next speaker is Brendan Swan. Hello, my name is Brendan Swan, and I'm a resident of Old Town Temecula on Pujols Street. My roommates and I love the recent changes to Old Town Front Street that allow for the businesses to set up curbside. We love our local businesses and would be happy to see this become a permanent change to continue to support our neighborhood shops and restaurants. The small sacrifice of redirecting traffic to alternate routes is hardly a nuisance at all and is completely worth the benefit that our local shops receive in churn, in return. Please consider continuing on this course and consider this message as my support. Thank you for all that you do for our community. The next speaker is Bill Emke, July 13th. The Gambling Cowboy and Renee's Cowgirl would like to once again express our concerns with these new street closures. Every weekend, we have the privilege to serve many guests from San Diego to Orange County. For the past couple of weeks, we have had many of them express that Old Town Temecula doesn't feel inviting. It has lost its hustle and bustle, and it's no longer full of life. It appears empty and too far to walk. Also, whether you enter from the north or south, it appears to dead-end. Therefore, you do not invite visitors to explore what's beyond the orange barriers or canvas. There needs to be a thorough fair through Old Town Temecula, and sidewalk seating may be a better way to go. It looks as if you went to a Charger game with seating for seventy thousand and only thirty-five hundred showed. You don't care how good the game was, you wouldn't want to go back. We are opposed to more street closures and any extensions. Please put it back to where it was. We understand the attempt to help the restaurants and other vendors. However, the execution has not been successful for the majority of us. Next speaker is David Lewis, July 13th. Now that the city of Temecula wants to add to the closing from Fourth to Sixth Street, this will encompass all of Old Town Front Street. This will be discussed and probably voted on next city hall meeting, which is on July fourteenth, twenty twenty. This act will totally destroy my retail business, along with the other retail businesses and some restaurants that don't want it. All of our incomes will be directly impacted by this move. My business since the street closure halfway in late June twenty-fourth, from Second to Fourth Street, has depleted my gross income by sixty-five to seventy-five percent. My business had a forty percent increase from June first to June twenty-third, twenty twenty, till the closing on June twenty-fourth, or abouts there, over June two thousand nineteen income. Since most of my clientele are forty-five years of age or more with discretionary income to shop, dine at higher-end businesses, they will not walk or fight for parking spaces when it's a hundred degrees plus outside or pouring rain. I have been told by most of my clients from the last thirty-six years or longer that they will not fight to have to shop or dine and play a Pac-Man game to do it. They simply put it that they will take their business elsewhere and in other cities. History shows, once people find a new place to go shop and dine, they will not come back. There's always a give and take in all situations in life when it comes to business survival in a shopping district, as such as we have in Old Town Temecula. It's a balance, and it's called equitable for all. The smart move would be to close the streets for outdoor dining after six PM, Sundays through Saturdays. The restaurants have parking lots, why not use them for their dining out access temporarily till restrictions are lifted? Why should it be at the financial cost that ninety percent of businesses have to suffer? This is not right. Just about the time I was finished writing it, was brought to my attention by my fellow residents that the city may have paid for some of the very losses we are now suffering, paying for outdoor patios and other structures for restaurant businesses. The next speaker is no name, but from Clark Confections. I just wanted to give my opinion on the Front Street dining, uh, July thirteenth. I just wanted to give my opinion on the Front Street dining operations. I think the city of Temecula has made an excellent job of letting businesses use the streets to operate, especially since many of them are organized and such good taste. I have heard businesses being upset about this, claiming this has hurt their shops, but I am unsure how this may be, see, this may be seeing as more than ever, people are walking down the street and more parking is available. Front Street parking is always iffy on being able to find a spot anyways, and if you did, it's mainly employees or being people dining in the restaurants. I truly think these restaurants have done a wonderful job in improvising in a time like this, especially nineteen oh nine. It's not fair that some want to see succeeding businesses fail just because their shops may not be deemed as essential places or not making as much money as others. Tourism is at an all-time low right now, so most businesses, so most business is done locally. There are no weddings, no bachelorette parties, like the normal Temecula business we see, so of course, businesses will struggle, since many still do not feel comfortable leaving their homes unless needed. This is what is attributing to the shops struggling. Not that a few blocks are closed off to driving access when it is still completely accessible by walking. The gravel lot near the city hall fountain is a great addition and not even a two-minute walk to all of the shops. In all honesty, I think the restaurants being open like they are are one of the main reason any retail shops are seeing any type of customer sales, taking away the outdoor dining as well, will lead to less seating available for those wanting to dine out, as well as less employees being scheduled to work there for more layoffs. This hurts already struggling families as well. I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you and sorry for the format errors as I'm on a mobile device. The next speaker is Michael Corley, July 13th. I have lived here for a while, and seeing these restaurants shut down has been difficult. There are good people, these are good people. Please keep the street seating open. We love it, it gives us a place to go and somewhat feel normal, thank you. Next speaker is Ali Phillips, July 13th. I am writing to show my support for the street dining in Old Town. I think that opening the streets for business use is a great idea and will help them generate the profit they need to stay open and weather this storm. I really hope the city continues to allow this. The next speaker is Sylvia Paulson. Thanks for the opportunity to weigh in again regarding the street closures in Old Town. We have had a few visiting tourists mention to us that the south entrance to the street looks like a crime scene. Many comments have been made about the lack of parking and, of course, difficulty of access. This kind of first, or second, or third impression on the few people that do venture out to visit is simply devastating for each and every merchant in town. Many of these visitors will not return because this is what they think of us. This is what they will remember. As a small-town gift store in town, as a small gift store in town, we are relieved to be open after eight weeks of closure. We have reset our daily sales goals to thirty-five percent of what they were last year. Before the street closures, we have made those targets. Since the street closure started, we have failed to meet even those miserable goals. It appears that the city is favoring some businesses over others, which is wrong and goes against the council mission statement. Our darling little town is going to end up with a string of vacant shops and virtually no tourism, unless the city takes quick action. The town needs to look inviting. Garish and forbidding barriers need to go. Restaurants need to use their own properties to accommodate customers, not invade the pavements, which are public domain to all businesses. Upbeat advertising on websites and other media reassuring patrons that Old Town is safe and open for business. Maximize parking availability to customers. Allow access to clean public restrooms. I sincerely hope you will listen to the voice of the merchants. Next speaker is Michael Strickland, July 13th. As a citizen of Temecula, I have found the closure of the street section in Old Town to be a great way to help keep business open and operating. Let the businesses extended to the street not only provides them an opportunity to stay open, but also attracts more attention to the business from pedestrian traffic. I would like to state that I believe the streets, the streets should stay closed, not only for the time being, but my hope is that this can become a permanent closure. With the city of Temecula's plan for the future of Old Town, I believe it is in the best interest of the people of Temecula and the business of Old Town to keep the streets closed and the businesses open. Next speaker is William Waring, July 13th. This email is about the lack of planning and support on the Front Street closure. Closing the street was like cutting off the blood supply to the restaurants and shops of Old Town. Since the blocking of the street, I have been back on a daily basis to support the businesses, and it's starting to look like a ghost town, not the thriving Old Town I know and love. We have gone different days of the week at what would be a prime time, and the streets are empty. Thursday to Saturday nights, there are many tables empty and no one even walking the streets. When you decided to shut down the street with the merchants voting against it, did you ever think about how this, this would look? Orange construction barricades are not very welcoming. It looks as if we are repaving streets or doing major repairs to the town. The business owners and the residents of Temecula do not want our town to be forgotten and turned into empty storefronts. When you shut down the street, people will avoid it and stay on the fifteen. They will not cruise into town for a drink, a meal, or maybe some olive oil. Yes, are we dealing with something we have never expected, and we need to adapt to survive? But how the city handled this was not very well thought out and is hurting more than helping businesses. Like many of my neighbors, I enjoyed a good old breakfast at the Swingin' Cafe or delicious latte and some pastries from La Coffee Shop. I want our town to not only survive, but thrive. We need to start thinking before reacting, planning before executing. We have a great city with great people. Let's start to support our local spots by taking these barricades down and have a pint and tasty burger at Devolicious. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Paul Bab, July 13th. First month back open June was an average sales month. July, my traffic is down about seventy percent. Sales for July off sixty percent from last year. January and February were great, better than two thousand nineteen, then closed. Why can we not open the streets and still have outdoor eating and parking areas? Looks like the food places have a nice protective area. When coming south on Front Street, then making a turn towards the parking garage, food places have set, have setups for street parking area for outdoor eating, and the street is still open. Open Front Street with ten miles per hour, everyone is hurting. Next speaker is Rhett Dana Williams, July 13th. My wife and I are long-term residents of Temecula area and have been thrilled with the city's recent decision to close part of Front Street in Old Town to support outdoor dining for restaurants. We would like to voice our support for continuing street dining for as long as the restaurants in Old Town are restricted from having indoor dining. It's important that we, as local residents, do what we can to keep our local businesses alive during the COVID-19 restrictions. Thank you for listening to us. Next speaker is Chad Riley. Hey there, just a Temecula resident. I love the street shutdown for the restaurants to extend into. I'm not sure why Swingin' is having issues. This is so nice for my friends and myself to know we can go to our favorite places, and the business is good for them to get through this. Please keep it. Next speaker is Deanna White. I am writing as a citizen of Temecula to express my support for the continued closure of Old Town Front Street, allowing for the expansion of multiple restaurants' outdoor dining capabilities. This has been a challenging time for all businesses, of course, but I believe these temporary measures will help prevent some wonderful restaurants from closing due to the lack of business. Let's keep Temecula's local businesses running strong during this uncertain time. I believe we can help protect our local economy by continuing these unique and creative efforts to keep things running safely. Next speaker is Kristi Ann Jefflewellen. I hope this email finds you well, especially in these uncertain times. I would like to email you on behalf of myself and my husband that we are in favor of the Old Town Street closure today, allow, today, allow for outdoor dining. We think this is a great idea for the families of Temecula, as well as supporting all of our wonderful small businesses. You definitely have our vote and our support. Next speaker is Cindy Mulligan, July 13th. I am very much in support of keeping the streets of Old Town shut down to allow more seating for outdoor dining. We are one of the many cities doing this, and I think it's had a great reception. This allows the restaurants to continue to do business in this struggling economy, and we need this support even more now to keep Old Town alive. I have been down there since the street closure, and it has had no real impact on parking, since there's plenty of parking to be found. Please continue to support the restaurants in Old Town and allow them to continue outdoor seating in the street until we get through this crazy time. Next speaker is Chris Bullard, July 13th. Hello, I am adding my support to keep the outside dining in Old Town open. These poor, these poor businesses have been through enough, losing all kinds of business. Please allow them to stay open. Next speaker is Jerry Myers, July 13th. The Front Street closure has been detrimental to our business. Sales picked up after COVID when we reopened. Sales June seventh to June twenty were up twenty percent compared to last June. Since the street closure, sales are down eighty percent compared to last July. The street closure unfairly benefits bars and restaurants by allowing them to increase their square footage for free at the expense of other businesses in Old Town. Front Street is prime real estate in Old Town due to the cars and pedestrian traffic. We pay a premium for our frontage on Front Street per square foot. The city has now given bars and restaurants free square footage on Front Street, eliminating the drive-by traffic and pedestrians that we pay a premium for. The city chose to accommodate a few bars and restaurants by giving them the street. The city is compensating them at the expense of all other Old Town merchants. How does the city plan on compensating Old Town merchants who are losing business due to the street closure? Does city council even have the right to close a major thoroughfare to citizens of Temecula? When there is an accident, construction, or traffic on the fifteen, Front Street is the detour. CHP and semi-trucks have regulations regarding detours and which roads can be used for commercial traffic. At the last city council meeting, there were twenty-nine comments from Old Town business owners against the closure, and only four for the closure. City council ignored the majority and continued to stand united to close Front Street for a few bars and restaurants. What outreach has been done since then to check the status of the closure? None. The follow-up has been entirely by, been by merchants reaching out to the city to voice their grievances about the street being closed. The city did not do its due diligence prior to closing the streets, and they have not followed up since. There are numerous photos at different days and times of the closed section with nobody at the tables or walking in the street. Customers are not utilizing this area. We also have photos of delivery trucks sitting on Front Street for over an hour in the middle of the day, blocking one lane and creating a safety hazard by unloading in the street. According to the article posted on the PE dot com, Mike Nagar says it is working phenomenally. Old Town is made for walking, not driving. The closed area is a ghost town during the day, and Old Town was built by antique stores and small businesses, not bar hopping. Customers can visit many stores and services in a day, but only one or two restaurants maximum. Lucas quoted, "The city is buying white barriers." That directly contradicts the city council saying they would revisit the issue in thirty days. If they had planned on revisiting it and only heard criticisms of, criticisms of it at the last meeting, why would they invest more money into white barriers to continue to keep the street closed? The city is not acting in the majority of Old Town's best interests. So whose interests are they serving? A few bars and restaurants? That seems like preferential treatment. City council needs to correct the terrible branding that Front Street is City Council needs to correct the terrible branding that Front Street is closed. Front Street needs to be reopened and the messaging needs to be that Old Town is open. The next speaker is Ashley Gearing. As a Temecula, July thirteenth. As a Temecula resident off of Seventy-Nine South, I'm in full support of keeping the streets closed for traffic on this outdoor street dining open as long as possible. Next speaker is Dolores Sargent, July thirteenth. Councilman Schwenk, when you voted in favor of the street closure, you failed to represent all small business owners in your district. You voted in favor of closing down an iconic street that draws visitors from around state, nation, and world. Driving through Old Town, visitors could locate a specialty shop, finding a parking spot on the street and enjoy a walk-through town. Not anymore. To add insult to injury, the process by which the City Council and the Old Town Steering Committee provided notification to the public of the proposed closure was bare bones. During a time when people are focused on literally surviving, government has been stretched to its limit. It is unconscionable that Councilmember Schwenk and the rest of the City Council support the ideas of Al Rubio and the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce that this is a good time to test or experiment with our livelihoods. In my opinion, this was an under-the-radar effort to defranchise, disenfranchise smaller Old Town business to promote the high grossing restaurants and bars. Consider this, how is it that all of the public comments provided to the Old Town Steering Committee at their May twenty-nine, twenty twenty meeting favored the closure? Businesses favoring the closure at the May twenty-nine, twenty twenty Old Town Steering Committee were Nineteen Oh Nine, Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, SoCal Gas, Old Town Blues Club, Visit Temecula Valley, Rancho Springs, and Inland Valley Medical Center, Craig Puma, Strider Transportation, Under the Willow, and the House of Jerky. Much like the May twenty-ninth Old Town Steering Committee meeting, public comment for the June ninth, twenty twenty City Council meeting had zero opposition to the closure. Those businesses persons who went on in favor of the closure were Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Strider Transportation, Visit Temecula Valley, and the Rancho Springs and Inland Valley Medical Center. But once notice of the closure reached a larger portion of Old Town's small business owners, opposition to the closer, closure intensified. In the sixty-five pages of public comments submitted to the June twenty-third, twenty twenty City Council meeting, the following businesses persons opposed the closure. Silver Fear, Fever, Silver Fever, Tails Territorial Traders, Thomas Edward Salon and Dry Bar, Cheryl's Antiques, MVP Notary and Tax Services, Temecula Estate Shop, Hot Inspirations, Catwalk Boutique, Gambling Cowboy, Renee's Cowgirl Gantina, Herring Company Incorporated, Sunil Setu Real Estate, The Gardeners Cottage, Old Town Antique Fair, Swingin Cafe, Mad Madeline's Grill, Main Street Salon, Michel Marucci, Thomas Kincaid Gallery, Texas Lills, Olive Dipity, Old Town Suite Shop, Family Legal Centers, Coin Op, and the Latina Association. Those in favor of the closure were Nineteen Oh Nine, Fluid and Fair, Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Under the Willow, House of Jerky, Gillian Larson, Old Town Blues Club, and Visit Temecula Valley. Telling the aforementioned public comments for and against, on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty, ten businesses favored the closure. On June ninth, twenty twenty, four businesses favored the closure. On June twenty-third, twenty twenty, twenty-five businesses opposed while seven favored the closure. Of the seven in favor, Nineteen Oh Nine, Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Under the Willow, Old Town Blues Club, House of Jerky, and Visit Temecula Valley were amongst the original proponents of the closure at the May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty Old Town Steering Committee meeting. The majority opposed the closure, but Councilmember Schwenk and the other City Council members chose to close the street regardless of the majority opinion. The next speaker is T Frank, July thirteenth. I share a real estate office located on Sixth Street in Old Town Temecula and I live in Old Town Temecula. I think the closure of Front Street, Old Town was not a well-planned or organized. Many businesses were not aware of or informed except for one posting. Many of us found out by social media or word of mouth. It appears a special interest group decided on the street closures for the benefit of the few. These are challenging times for all businesses and I understand the concept of the street closure. However, I do not think it is a benefit for the majority here in Old Town Temecula. I have seen several groups of people stop at the orange barriers, ponder, then turn around and walk away. The appearance is a construction area mostly. The aesthetics are least desirable. The closure also limits window shopping from cars who would have had an opportunity to stop and explore. I vote for reopening of the street. The next speaker is Lori Sutton, July fourteen. I would like to address the closure of Front Street which has allowed businesses in Old Town to expand into the street. My husband and I are in full agreement with the closure in order to help many of the businesses continue to thrive during these difficult times. It's actually pretty amazing having Old Town become a beautiful pedestrian area as it allows for the expansion of many of the restaurants into the streets at the same time. We would be on board with it becoming a permanent situation as it adds much appeal to Old Town in general. It's not looking like we will be experiencing inside dining anytime soon and it would be a terrible shame to have Old Town become a ghost town if these, if these businesses cannot survive. Please continue with the street closure because nobody wants to see businesses fail in Temecula or anywhere for that matter. Opening a backup at this point for the convenience of the few or the traffic flow would be very short-sighted in my honest opinion. Please let's help Temecula continue to thrive. Next speaker is Katie Spalding, July fourteenth. I fully support closing down the Front Street in Old Town Temecula to allow our restaurants to remain open during this peculiar time in history. If closing Front Street allows our restaurants to place more tables for patrons, I am in full support of this. I believe this would allow for an increase in foot traffic to the neighboring local owned small businesses as well. We need to support our town. I'm sorry, we need to support our own. Next speaker is Gillian Larson, July fourteenth. I would like to congratulate the Old Town Alfresca Dining Committee for leading the way with not only the Old Town Alfresca, but any interested business. Every day on the news we hear about other cities all over, not only our county, but all over California, only now starting to make their plans and start their outdoor dining and shopping. A possibility. Temecula led the way and I hear from, from many, hooray for Temecula. I took a drive through Old Town and passed several other restaurants who are being progressive and running with this idea to provide what people are looking for and working at staying in business. I want to see for myself as I am personally staying in quarantine. To name a few that I could see while driving are to be congratulated on what they have done to make this an enjoyable experience. Be Good in Nineteen Oh Nine were well laid out and busy with appropriate precautions. Under the Willow and Old Town House of Jerky, Mad Madeline's, then Gourmet Italia, Trattoria, Toscano, and Broken Yoke have all stepped up to the plate. Driving through Old Town was very easy and in fact, a pleasure. The barriers are unsightly and a deterrent to come into Old Town, so if an easily moved barrier could be designed, that would be much better. It was Saturday and plenty of parking. I know change is hard, but to survive, we all have to play our part and look for ways to thrive in our new normal. Our cheese has been moved, but there is a lot of cheese out there waiting for us. Let's find it. The next speaker is Peter Recobino, July fourteenth. I am a managing partner of Coin Op Game Room located on Fourth and Front Street here in Temecula. I am writing this letter in hopes that it will help extend the street closures from Fourth Street to Fifth Street. When the original street closure happened, my business partners and myself were not for the idea. We didn't believe that this would help our particular style of bar or restaurant. Coin Op is an arcade bar. Our guests come to Coin Op so that they can have a drink, eat some food, and play some of their favorite classic arcade games. The street closure was meant to expand a restaurant's footprint so that they could have more sit-down seating. This was not something that we thought we would, would be beneficial to us as people want to be up and moving around to play games. On July first, when Governor Newsom ordered all the restaurants to close indoor dining, our opinion on the street closure changed. We needed to do whatever we can to expand our footprint and up our capacity for sit-down seating. We are currently following the state mandated guidelines and are only open for sit-down food and drink service on the patio. We can hold a maximum of thirty-eight people currently while still maintaining social distancing. If we were able to expand into the street, we would be able to almost double that number. We have already started taking the necessary steps to make this happen on our end. We have started the application process from the city. We have reached out to our insurance company and ABC to extend our coverage onto the sidewalk and street. We hope to have all this done by Friday, the seventeenth. Thank you for taking the time to read this and I hope that you can help us extend the street closure to Fifth Street. I know these are trying times and we are all trying to get through them together. I appreciate all that the city of Temecula is doing for us. The next speaker is Laura Canici, July fourteenth. I am writing this because I am at my wit's end. I started my dream of owning a small business in March, then COVID shut us down. I used that time to get my business set up, investing my savings. In the last four months, we have all endured hell, but nothing screams, "We don't care about you," like closing the streets and closing them with orange barriers, barriers that leads many to believe we are under construction. Before the shutdown, I had so many people come by and I was able to tell them all what our goal was. The last two weeks, I have spoken to three people and that is it. We are not in this together. My neighbor is the pub and grub and they are alive. They are, and they are, I'm sorry. My neighbor is the pub and grub and they are vile. They blocked off the pathway people use to come back by the jail. They were nasty and fought us like thugs. I lived in Chicago for thirty years and worked in corporate. I have never seen such ugly, such rudeness. They refuse to just leave the pathway unblocked. This is whom you wish to cater to? A restaurant I watch daily and nightly pack them in, no masks, no distancing. I have to say that there seems to be no aforementioned, aforethought put into this plan. Also, no offense, but who dines in a hundred-degree heat on the hot asphalt? Temecula is comprised of a rich history and it wasn't just restaurants that attract tourists. I was a tourist seven years ago and restaurants were the last thing I wanted to go to. You have so many unique little shops that make strolling through this small city a pleasure. To be able to see the hot rods and bikes going up and down Old Town is also a pleasure. Now I can hear the, I'm not sure what that word is, from the deafening silence except at night when the pub and grub packs them in with no consideration to mask or social distancing. Their drunk patrons have tried to break in through my back gate. I have security cameras. If this is whom you're looking out for, let me know. I will put everything up for sale and leave, including my house, utterly disappointed and let down. Lorena Spencer, July fourteenth. I am the owner of The Painted Garden and have operated my business in Old Town for twenty years. I oppose the closure of Front Street. It shows preference to two restaurants who already have more outdoor patio area than most. It was hurt, it has hurt the rest of the shops along Front Street. Be Good has plenty of parking in the back that can be utilized for this expansion. Nineteen Oh Nine has enough outdoor patio space to serve outside. Front Street belongs to the public and small businesses. The city did not ask for opinions or alert us to the street closure, claiming that they contacted the Old Town Association that most of us don't belong to for a multitude of reasons is not doing their due diligence. The city claims to have added more parking spaces on Main Street and Mercedes, but that is besides the point. Customers need to park in front of our stores. I have heavy pots and metal fences that need to be loaded onto vehicles. This has slowed down my business to appointments only. Public restrooms, we need them on Front Street and/or Main Street, Sixth Street, or City Hall restrooms are not enough and theater restrooms were closed. Another solution would be to stamp the guest hands so that they can return to use their restrooms while visiting Old Town. In order to keep visitors shopping in Old Town, we need to provide them with better access to relief and parking. We need the streets reopened. The next speaker is April, April Denson, July fourteenth. I'm writing in support of all of our local businesses in Old Town Temecula. Please vote to keep the outdoor dining experience alive today. We need every sense of normalcy we can get right now and we need to keep our city thriving and local businesses alive. Please help them out today. The next speaker is Brenda Schultz. I'll use the timer. I am writing to complain about the road conditions, barriers, and closures on Front Street, which, Front Street, which has not been addressed despite the verbal correspondence with Emily at the Chamber, Luke Watson, and emails from over fifty or more letters sent into the council from many merchants. This closure will cause me to close my doors and as many have already. First, I'd like to express my disappointment in Zach that has not come and talked to all of us regarding the closure and all of us opposing to hear our concerns and voices. It is beyond my understanding why this problem has not been resolved by now and I consequently find myself since May twenty-ninth obliged to write this letter with great disappointment. I thought the compromise would have worked fine, but it has not for several reasons. A few of my clients turned around because they thought the entire road was closed and turned around and went home. Another reason is my client could not find parking and when she did, she decided it was too hot and did not want her updo style to fall by five P M. So I called her and moved my vehicle, my vehicle in Penfolds Parking to save this client, but how many times will I have to do this? I'm disappointed that some of you council say it's working great for two restaurants, so what about everyone else? I am sure there are over a hundred and forty businesses and within a few weeks, you have received many complaints and concerns and all you're hearing from Nineteen Oh Nine is it's great, but you are hearing it's not working out for everybody else. I have been walking down there to see if in fact, it's doing great and I have news for you. During the week at breakfast and lunch, it is not and dinner draws a little more of a crowd, but not significantly to close the roads. I took my husband on Sunday, again, dead town, and just a few people eating, but Friday and Saturday, no social distance and a lot of drinking. I noticed we had no policeman even watch some of these intoxicated people. Further, it is not known whether the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce entry egress plan for fire life safety of the closed areas has been carefully planned and approved by the appropriate agencies, City Police, Fire Department, OSHA. I find it hard to believe the fire department would approve of this when there's no turnaround. If there's delivery trucks blocking Third Street, a fire truck could not get out of there or do a turnaround. I think all of you have really forgotten what this city was made from and visitors don't just want to eat at Nineteen Oh Nine or Bailey's. They want to see the old buildings, the motorcycles roaring through town, old vintage cars, and families walking into antique stores and going into the candy store. Sitting at Mad Madeline's watching, watching the roaring old cars roar their engines or basic good old people watching or Swingin, good old breakfast, knowing there were settlers on that street at one time. Do not take away from the history of town away. I've been to Santa Monica Promenade and across a few blocks, you have all this state parking needed, but it's mostly for locals. This is a tourist area. They want to walk and shop around or just go directly to salons, bakeries for wedding cakes, Starbucks, and pick-up products from stores without having to walk blocks for it. I have two therapists in my building. Are her clients with children going to have to walk through all the craziness from one end of town to get to their offices? The street closure will devastate the city more than COVID nineteen by not having the same flow or traffic, lack parking, and those ugly barriers are confusing and the signage. Without vehicle traffic and the ability to park within a reasonable walking distance, businesses dramatically affected. All this is an interruption of commerce and my business will be affected. I'm sure that some of you agree with me that this is a major inconvenience and that it should be sorted out at once and not skewed for only a few restaurants. We all pay business taxes, property taxes, and permit fees and license fees. Below are my contact details. Please do not hesitate to contact me. The next speaker is Tom Schultz. The Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce has taken it upon themselves to approve street closures in Old Town coerced by a small group of dining and drinking establishments. For agendas not understood, the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce has chosen to ignore the urgent, the urgent pleas of longstanding businesses to keep the street open. Without vehicle traffic and the ability to park within a reasonable walking distance, businesses are dramatically affected, not to mention losing the precious parking spaces along Front Street. We all know the challenges of parking in Old Town. The Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce needs to listen to the business owners opposed to the street closure. By doing so, they would have a better understanding as to the immediate impact on their business and overall long-term negative effect on the commerce of Old Town. Clearly, the chamber has chosen to listen to the few with total disregard to the whole business landscape of Old Town. We as the business owners are against the closures, adamantly disagree. We demand the chamber cancel this expanded dining drinking program driven by a few self-serving establishment. It is not in the best interest of Old Town commerce, business, parking, and safety of its patrons. The small businesses have and will continue to be the lifeblood of Old Town. We will not accept this now nor in the future. The next speaker is Sue Kempton Miller, July fourteenth. I am writing to you with my concern about street closures in Old Town Temecula. I am voting against this. What about the small businesses that are just opening up and trying to get back on their feet? The bakery, salons, boutiques, elderly people still shop downtown. Do you think they will walk several blocks with a walker and a wheelchair? How about the baker that has to carry all her baked goods several blocks? Would you want your wedding cake carried and possibly damaged? I doubt it. The small businesses, well, just about all the businesses, need every opportunity way to attract customers. This will only hinder business in Old Town. Thank you for listening. The next speaker is Neru Sagal, June, July fourteenth. I heard you were the person to email regarding the road closure in Old Town Front Street. I am writing that this is not a good idea since there are a lot of other businesses in Old Town and not just the restaurants that are hurting and shutting down the main street is going to be hurting those businesses also. As it is, parking is tough in Old Town and by shutting the roads, a lot of people are going to stop coming. I go into Old Town to pick up things and food and will try to avoid that area if I have to walk three to four blocks to pick up the food and make deliveries. Even elderly people will stop going there as it is too far to walk. Please reconsider this as it is not feasible for everyone. The next speaker is Julie Kramer, July fourteenth. The sudden road closures in Old Town Temecula have primarily been billed as an effort to help the restaurants expand their footprint. It is not fair to use city resources to uplift some businesses on the backs of others. This plan seemed rushed and yet very methodical. Parking is a huge issue. There are suggestions to parking in an incomplete structure. Street parking is greatly diminished. Are there outside influences such as redevelopers or chain stores? We are seeing many cities close streets in favor of outdoor dining and it is proving to be a small business killer. I ask members of the Temecula City Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Supervisors and any other city staff with a potential conflict of interest if they have any financial interest in the restaurants or potential redevelopment. Please disclose ethical issues and recuse yourselves in the matter. From the beginning, it has been clear that the other shops and businesses were merely an afterthought in this favoring of the restaurants. The additional banner placed on the barrier addressing shops seems like a bet hedging liability limiting measure. It isn't good enough. The small businesses only care about their bottom line and none of these optics. Old Town has a good weekend for sales just prior to the roadblocks being set up, which provides more proof that the sudden cliff dive in sales and traffic can be attributed to the street closure. The city council has already conceded that the road closure is failing via the modifications to the original plan. Why else is one block open now? The Main Street blocks undoubtedly have the same complaints and concerns that prompted the other street portion to be opened back up. I believe the block by nineteen oh nine and Be Good Restaurants are being treated particularly unfairly. Those whole, this whole closure is only benefiting those two restaurants. Why should everyone else have to go under just for them to have a few more mostly unoccupied tables in the streets? Main Street is absorbing restaurant staff parking all day when we depend on those spaces for shoppers convenience. Cars are now parking on the sidewalk in front of the Olive Company, blocking foot traffic down Main Street. Delivery drivers are now parking in the intersection to drop off goods. The back public access way to Emporium Shops and Historic Jail were barricaded off. Old Town small businesses can no longer support these restaurants with our bottom lines. We ask that the roadblocks be immediately removed. The next speaker is Kara Underwood, July fourteenth. I'm a Temecula resident in the Harveston community. I'd like to share my experience at the expanded dining and retail program in Old Town. I am not comfortable at indoor businesses during COVID and this program has offered a dining experience, an ability to support local businesses while remaining outdoors. When driving on Main, Old Town Front Street, I am only paying attention to the traffic on the road and did not know many of these shops and restaurants exist. As a pedestrian, I've been made aware of businesses I would likely never see as a driver and I found the nearby parking lots to be easily accessible. I hope to see this program continue. I have also read the report on race and equity effort. I appreciate the entire council's commitment to participate rather than one or two council members. I feel it is important to engage with our diverse community and therefore suggest that the council collaborate with Temecula unity and other Temecula residents eager to assist. I have seen opportunities for change in various areas and look forward to participating as a member of the community. The next speaker is Anna Beg, July fourteenth. I would like to say that closing off Old Town to driving is a wonderful idea. That should have been done when the parking garage was built. I avoid going to Old Town simply because of the traffic. It makes it crowded, exhaust-filled, noisy and also dangerous. Having Old Town opened up to walk and cross the street freely would make it much more pleasurable for those visiting. Why wouldn't, why couldn't a trolley like the one seen around town transfer people from the garage up and down the street? This would take care of those who would find it difficult to walk and at the same time make going to Old Town an experience and fun for children. Please keep Old Town closed off, closed for through traffic. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Sid at Mad Madeline's. Four out of the five restaurants who are participating in closed street have a patio or parking lot in back or on the side of their building. Bailey's and Devilish's can have the stampede parking lot. The five restaurants can use their parking lots and put up tents and misters like I have. You should not block off the street for five restaurants when there are forty restaurants in Old Town. The five restaurants that are out in the streets are making double their money and aren't paying rent on that extra seating room while all the other restaurants and stores are hurting and losing money. Why are we shutting the streets down for five restaurants when there are forty restaurants in Old Town? A long time ago, city council brought up closing the street and making it like an old western town at Knott's Berry Farm and the business owners voted no because we are not Knott's Berry Farm. City council is using COVID to justify the street closure because the new buildings have no parking and the city is buying land and building parking lots. In the Disney movie Cars, they explain Route sixty-six and how their little town slowly died. People found another street to drive and rerouted around their street to go to work and to go home. That will happen to Front Street. Business on Front Street rely on traffic and people driving through. It's a historical highway, Route three ninety-five, just like in Cars. But traffic is way far down since they closed the street. If I was a visitor from out of town, I wouldn't stop to read a little banner on a big orange plastic block. Visitors and motorcycle clubs are going to other cities. People can't drive through and see our cute little town. They will go somewhere else without traffic and parking problems where they can drop off family, wife, wheelchair members close to the store or restaurant and then go and park. Bottom line, we all love Old Town and we need business back at our stores and restaurants from people driving by on Front Street. Open the street. The next speaker is Mark Kuzak, July fourteenth. Hello, my name is Chris Kuzak and I am president of Luke's on Front in Old Town Temecula. Since the road closures, our restaurant has lost tens of thousands of dollars in revenue due to a plan that helps very few businesses and is doing irreparable, irreparable damage to the majority in Old Town. It only benefits two to three restaurants while the rest of us are struggling. People come to Old Town from the wineries and from out of town to drive down the street to look around without unnecessarily getting out of their car and walking to different shops that are half a mile away. We are unable to do alfresca dining on Front Street due to our location. Our lunch sales are almost non-existent since the closure and in the long run, who wants to sit on a hundred and twenty-five-degree asphalt eating food in the sun? This plan was definitely poorly thought out. Restaurants are fighting each other for business and people are driving into Old Town are completely clueless as to what they should be doing, where they should be going and what is the protocol for the new downtown area. It seemed like the plan was let's put a big orange disgusting blockade through Old Town and not tell anybody what's going on. We've had numerous complaints with people saying that this isn't what they expected and they will not be returning to Old Town until this is fixed. Many of the businesses that can offer alfresca dining don't have the money to buy misters fans and supplies needed to work the outdoor, outdoor dining experience into a profitable one. The plan rewards people that can do this and pushes aside people who are not able to figure it out for themselves. Closing the roads going into and out of Old Town is not the answer. As you can plainly see, when you walk down the streets at lunchtime, there are maybe five to ten people out in the streets. Weekend crowds are a third of what they were before. People are unsure of whether or not Old Town closed because of COVID or why there are blockades going up and down the street. This plan has become more of a nuisance and is punishing the businesses of Old Town rather than promoting them. Open Front Street to through traffic again. This is not the time for testing things that might work and if they don't, it comes at our expense. Thank you. The next speaker is Sean Sargent. Councilmember Schwenk, when you voted in favor of the closure of Old Town Front Street, you chose to abandon a majority of your Old Town constituents that oppose this action. Citing with Councilmember Nagara, the Chamber Chairman of the Board, Strider Transportation, SoCal Gas and Visit Temecula Valley, you agreed the closure deemed an experiment and test was a good move. Your decision shows a lack of compassion, leadership and fortitude to stand up for your district's small business owners. Councilman, where was the transparency leading up to the council's decision to close Old Town Front Street? Can you explain the meeting that took place at the Blues Club, date unknown, that was organized by its owner that talked about the closure? Luke met with approximately sixty to seventy restaurant property owners that day. Two attendees confirmed this meeting took place. A decision like this would certainly affect all business owners in Old Town. Where was the modification, where was the notification for this meeting posted? Also, during a June seventeenth meeting at Mad Madeline's, Luke met with over twenty Old Town business owners. Why not mention the Blues Club meeting to those business owners? Councilman Schwenk, this occurred under your watch. When I requested from the city all written, voice, picture and video documentation that contributed to the decision of the Temecula City Council to authorize the closure of the Front Street, the May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty Old Town Steering Committee video and public comments were not included. This meeting specifically addressed street closure as an agenda item. All public comments supported the closure, but neither the video or public comment was sent to me as requested on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Only after submitting a second request specifically naming this meeting did I receive the video footage and public comments. Councilmember Schwenk, weren't you present at this meeting? Lastly, yesterday I asked you and City Clerk Joel to please post the video footage of the May twenty-nine, twenty twenty Old Town Steering Committee meeting to your Temecula TV YouTube channel. Specifically, I asked that it be posted in the early morning of July fourteen, twenty twenty to allow for Temecula residents and Old Town business owners the opportunity to observe the meeting prior to the start of tonight's city council meeting. As of the drafting of this comment, I was unable to locate the video on Temecula TV YouTube site and neither you nor Randy Joel have responded to my request. The Old Town Steering Committee meeting is relevant to the expanded dining agenda item except for tonight's city council meeting and should be accessible by the public ahead of tonight's meeting. In closing, just like the unsightly orange barriers that cost the city three thousand dollars per month to rent is an eyesore and an insult to Old Town Temecula's pride. Your decision, Councilmember Schwenk, to approve this closure insults the Old Town business owners you represent. The majority of business owners will not forget how you took the path of least resistance. You should consider resigning your post so Old Town can elect someone who will take pride in voting no regardless of the consequence in order to protect the most vulnerable of its constituents. The next speaker is Shirley Hernandez, July fourteenth. As a business owner on Front Street for over three years, I must say this has been the worst decision ever made for Old Town. I own two retail stores in Old Town, both located on Front Street. One store located on the side, the street is closed and a second store located on the side, the street is open. Listed below, sales data for both locations, I compared to January and February sales. There were the last two month, we, these were the last two months we opened the entire month. Infinity Boutique located at the Palomar Hotel, sales are down fifty percent versus January and February averages per month. These were the last two months we were open for the full month. January is also one of our slowest months. Old Town Boutique at this location, sales are down eighty-five percent versus January and February averages. We have been hit extremely hard at this location. My ask, let's reopen the street. It's been a total disaster for retail businesses on the side where the street is closed. Comparing to my store at the Palomar Hotel, there is a trend of thirty-five percent down difference in sales versus my store where the street is open. If this continues, Old Town Temecula will be ruined. Please reconsider reopening the street or at least having a one-way street and removing those orange barriers that scream stay away. If you need additional sales data to support my argument, please advise or a sit-down meeting I would love to discuss further. And lastly, July fourteenth, Mike Frivell. My shop, Old Town Temecula, Old Town Antique Fair, has been in business since nineteen eighty-seven. The street closure has had a negative impact on our sales by thirty-five percent, but traffic is down. Not everyone, including tourists, come to Old Town to just dine. They also come to shop. If the two restaurants want to dine in the street, they should utilize the lots behind their businesses. Let the merchants vote. Madam Mayor Potem, that concludes public comment on this item.
My goodness, you, do you need a drink of water?
I'll get one.
Okay. So we had a chance to hear the comments. I will entertain discussion from council members.
Madam Mayor?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody who took the time to, to send in comments. Seventy-two comments is a lot of comments and sitting here listening to them all, being attentive to them all, I really do appreciate it. I do take notice that most of them came in prior to yesterday. And so, and, and new, I guess, new edicts or new rules coming down from the governor's office. I don't bring this up often, but I think now is a good time because we don't talk about it too often. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, we did the Kaiser Marston Report. And in, back in that time, Old Town was a literal ghost town. I'm not exaggerating. It was closed most weekends because there was just nothing happening and during San Ana winds time, you would literally see tumbleweeds rolling down the street. And that's no exaggeration. And we hired a company called Kaiser Marston and said, how do we make this a viable downtown shopping district, restaurant district, all of the gas land district? And so we went about getting a plan and then we went about implementing that plan. During that period of time, the city invested about six million dollars of its money and that six million dollars, we were able to parlay into almost one billion dollars of private investment. We bought all kinds of things here from residential to mixed use to a community theater, to a children's museum, to City Hall, and, and I can go on and on. I, I, I bring that up. In fact, let me, let me also make mention so fantastic of a Renaissance that it was, we've memorialized it with a display out in the lobby that as often as people can, I would encourage them to come look at that because it, it, it takes us from the point I just mentioned all the way up into today. The, the back in about two thousand and four, deja vu kind of hits is what I'm experiencing now when we dealt with the farmer's market issue. And again, a lot of people won't remember the farmer's market, but as we were part, implementing part of this Renaissance, a very successful, a farmer's market opened and it became very successful. So successful that it brought five thousand people on a Saturday down to Old Town. It was wonderful. It's exactly what we wanted. The level of complaints that we had from Old Town merchants lasted for years, years. And the complaints were that they were taking businesses, business from Old Town merchants, that some of the goods that were being sold at the farmer's market were also being sold at the brick and mortar. And over time, because I was on the subcommittee that handled it, just literally over a period of three years, we, we tweaked it, tweaked it again, continued to tweak it. And I guess as time goes, has went on, I, I think probably what's being sold at the farmer's market is a little lax, but a rising tide lifted all boats and, and Old Town is a thriving, thriving downtown district, exactly like we set out to do. And nobody could have predicted what COVID would do. There's just no way to predict that. But what I'm hearing is everybody thinks we're giving deference to restaurants and we're not. Although restaurants seem to be the ones that are taking advantage of it. I know that we've heard some comments, let's say by, by salons. If a salon wants to, they can set up in the street. They can do that. They may not want to, but that option is available to them. We're not prohibiting it. Same thing with retail. When we, and I'm going to try to look at the timeline. When we approved this, at the time, when we were considering this at the time, the retail stores were closed by the governor and the restaurants were only available for pickup, I believe. Is that correct? And then right before we were about to approve this, the governor, I think, lifted the in, in, indoor eating.
For the first time.
And for the first time. And we, we sat here and said, oh my gosh, well, you know, this is a very dynamic situation. We probably should go ahead and continue to do this. And of course, what's just recently happened kind of proved those dynamics because we're back to being closed again. I'm a little puzzled and maybe the fact that the, most of the comments were from last week. Because right now, as I said, I, if people are looking to make their, their, their retail, their salons or other businesses viable, move them out to the street if, if, if they're being impacted and if they could be moved out to the street. I, I, I like the idea personally that Luke, you brought up of bringing in the bollards. Yeah, you know, the orange barriers do look kind of, but you know, you got to cut everybody a break. We're doing this on the fly. So, you know, thanks for the feedback. We heard it and I think that if we make the decision to move forward, we're going to go ahead and get bollards. I like the, the, I forgot what you call, you had the lights going across the street. And then there was the, the scene, you had a name for it, camping, was it or?
Parklet.
Parklet, there you go. And that works out nice and literally you almost can bring them, all the markets. When I mean by markets, it's anything that's sold, including beef jerky or what have you, right out into the street. Is it going to take some effort? Yes, it's going to take that effort. The city also is playing its part. We went ahead and added how many parking spaces right up the street?
Just about ninety.
Just about ninety. So we've compensated for that. I do understand that there is some additional walking that's involved. But we've set it up so. additional walking that's involved, but we've set it up so it's really about a block that compensates for what we're losing. How many did we lose in the process, Luke? Do you remember?
It's just about seventy.
Yeah, so we've, we've, we've added more parking and, and then some. Also, it's been very, very hot, and so that's, whatever has been going on in the past two weeks, it's been very, very hot. And of course, I think in this weather as well, and as we go into the summer, most of the people that are going to, let's say, dine in the street are probably going to come out in the evening. And those same people who might dine in the street in the evening probably will go shopping in the evening. So, I, I would like to see that maybe everybody pivot and, and, you know, get a little creative, and again, it's maybe difficult, but it, and I don't want to minimize anybody's troubles. I really don't want to do that. But I think option one is good. I think we, we stay the course, and we continue to monitor it, and that's kind of my two cents for now. Obviously, I'm open to what my colleagues have to say.
Zach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Potem. So I spent the better part of the last couple of weeks sort of wandering through Old Town and, and just trying to notice, and, and, and meeting with some of the business owners that spoke tonight. And what I've noticed is, is the businesses that have embraced it are doing well, right? And that was part of the, part of this plan was to revive this, the economy down here, right? That's the branding of it, Temecula Revive. But there's a catch, you have to participate. So as I'm wandering around, and, and you see some of those vacant spots, right, and you wish you would pull that onto the street because we're offering space for you to use. Offering that space also gives patrons of these businesses a sense of safety. They feel distanced from each other. They feel like it's safe to go. You heard from a few commenters that they don't feel safe going out, and that's a common theme that I hear. So people are concerned about those things. I think we can certainly all agree that we need to beautify it. Luke, I liked all of, all of your recommendations, and I, even from the very beginning, the orange definitely looks like a construction zone. We hear you. Definitely, we need to beautify it. Three weeks ago at our last meeting, I recall during, during council reports, I reported out that that day we had six hundred and thirty-one cases. That was a new high in Riverside County for positive cases. That trend has continued. So along with the heat, we, we've seen an increase in cases, so much so that since our last meeting, forty-seven percent of the cases, the positive cases in Riverside County have happened since the last meeting. So twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-one cases since our last meeting. We can't ignore that that is part of the reason that we're seeing a decline in business, not just in Old Town, but just in general. People are starting to have friends and acquaintances that have tested positive. It's starting to get a little more real, right? It's getting a little more concerning for folks. So we certainly don't want to hurt anyone's business. I mean, that is definitely not at the core of this, at the heart of this, but, you know, at the same time, we need, we need businesses to try to take advantage of some of those things, and I know there are some limitations. If you're serving food on the fourth floor, I can see that that would be difficult, right? But there's certainly opportunities, I think, that, that we could see businesses take advantage of, and, and, and gosh, you've got some space that, if, if we beautify it, it's going to be quite inviting. I mean, it just genuinely is. I heard some concerns about it's too far to walk, and, and honestly, when you go to the mall, you end up walking probably three, four, or five times as far as some of these places. I, I did, I did have a question about the Old Town Slider that used to run down here, and I know that would be kind of considered public transit, and that might be kind of concerning during COVID, right? It's a small golf cart, so we're probably kind of limited on some of those options that we can implement during COVID. So, but, but I feel like we did a pretty good job with the parking as close as it was. Like I said, we came into Old Town and, and parked in those new lots, and, and wandered down, started wandering through businesses that, quite frankly, I hadn't been in in years, and, and bought some soap and some other things, and, and just tried to, just seek out a little knowledge and see what's going on. I'm in favor of continuing with option one, especially given the recent mandates sent down from our governor and the current state of coronavirus in our community. I think it's the right thing to, to stay the course on this. If things change and orders change and, and, and the landscape changes, we can certainly pivot and roll back out of this. But for now, I think option one is a, a good choice.
Matt?
Thanks. Well, I appreciate everybody's comments. You know, a lot of good thoughts, a lot of good, you know, dialogue here this evening, both from, you know, our local businesses and residents alike. This isn't an easy one necessarily, and I'll, and I'll say why. First, I am a little bit concerned. I'll, I'll mention again the sequoia issue. I mean, absent a very thorough traffic analysis, absent, you know, any other discussions, you know, I, I realize it's temporary. I realize that we're probably okay doing what we're doing under those constraints, and cities all over California are doing this right now. But as this, as COVID continues, you know, where, where do we draw the line between this is a temporary fix versus something that we could see for another, what, six, twelve months, right? We, we can't make that prediction, and so that, I, I still have some, some concerns with. You know, there were a couple of really good points that, that really jumped out to me. One of those was, you know, that a lot of businesses pay for the frontage because of the visibility, because of the, you know, ability to drive through Old Town, and, and they, you know, they, frankly, they paid a premium for that, and we've, you know, in essence, restricted that, the access to that premium. The other concern I have is, is just, you know, and another good point that was made was this, you know, although not all businesses are taking advantage of, you know, the opportunity, not all businesses can take advantage. You know, they mentioned Luke's as an example. Well, being on the top floor of the building, how do they do outdoor seating when they don't have that kind of frontage, right? And so it, you know, in my mind, there is a good, you know, sort of conversation to be had of, you know, what advantages are we going to give a business like Luke's, or, you know, the hair salons, or, you know, any number of other businesses that either can't participate directly in this program or, you know, choose not to, frankly, right? So that's a bit of an issue. I, I completely understand the, the, the COVID situation, and it's hard to tease out, is, is the decline in business a result of an uptick in, you know, cases? Is it, you know, related to the recent, you know, temperatures and heat that we've had? You know, good luck trying to figure that out, right? But, you know, I think enough of the owners have been there long enough to say, hey, you know, this is having an impact on us in some way, you know, and it's not, you know, the benefits aren't equally distributed, you know. So fair enough. I think that's, you know, that's something to, important to acknowledge. Attempting to benefit all businesses can't be reached. I think we also need to acknowledge that, right? So, you know, conspiracy theories aside, none of us, you know, came here, you know, with a special relationship or an agenda or anything with any of the businesses. I think that needs to be said, you know, because a lot of folks kind of mentioned that. And, look, we, we just live here like the rest of you folks. We go to businesses. I've eaten at restaurants and visited stores, and I've looked for myself to see how things are operating or not. But, you know, there's no malice in any of decision-making, and no real special relationships with anybody in the decision-making. Everybody expressed opinions. We heard about it. Not everybody attended early meetings. I think, you know, look, again, for a variety of reasons, access to meetings right now, access to public spaces, access to information, it's all very challenging, you know. So as this trickled out and more businesses realized what was going on, you know, they had, they expressed their concerns, and we're hearing them now. Balance is needed. I would say that this is a partial success and a partial failure, and, you know, and, and not, you know, not for lack of trying. We tried to see the experiment. We tried to see if it's going to work. I, I, I'm leaning toward the second option because I think, you know, we need to pop the streets open again. I think, you know, we want to preserve the investment that businesses have made in outdoor seating, and we certainly don't want that loss because we definitely don't want to have further economic impacts to businesses and that potential abandoned, you know, cost. So my understanding is the option two allows us to, you know, find a, a bit of a better balance. I would love to see the experiment continue here, to be honest, because I think the, you know, I can envision a future where we have, you know, more of the tree-lined streets and, and the, what'd you call them, parklets, you know, that kind of concept, the plaza, the whole thing. Is now the best time to be experimenting with this, though? I'm not sure, right? I mean, everything we've done in Old Town over the years has been very methodical, very thoughtful, and very careful, at least, you know, since I've been here, right? And, and this one, look, we're, you know, we're all responding to a very different situation, a lot of challenges. We don't know what works and what doesn't. We didn't know, you know, what was going to happen with this, and so, you know, there's a bit of experimentation that's going on, and, and, you know, this isn't just happening here, right? Cities are struggling with this all over the United States right now, and, and some are having successes and some are not. And we're all trying to figure out the way to, you know, benefit all of our businesses as, as best we can. And so I think for all of those reasons, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of sticking with option two. You know, let's get the streets open. Let's put up some protective barriers. Let's allow people to still sit outside and expand into these spaces, but, you know, not at the potential expense, even if it's, even if it's just a, you know, again, we're not be able to tease these things out, even if it's just a perceived impact, you know, clearly, you know, we need to pay attention. So that's where I'm landing.
Well, then, let's, let's hash this out a little bit. So if, Zach, Mike, if you want to continue because you like the concept of the outdoor dining, and I think it's good especially now since they can't eat inside anymore, so this might be one of those cases where, you know, necessity is the mother of invention, so this might be the time to experiment as long as we do it very carefully, and I'm, I think the way that it's been done now, I don't think it has quite been fair, and, and it's hard to tell, you know, post hoc, ergo propter hoc, after it, therefore because of it. Well, because something happens after something else is implemented, is that the cause? There are so many variables affecting us right now with the, the virus and everything, and it changes daily. So it's really hard for us to know what things are making a negative impact. So why wouldn't we consider option two? Because it gives us all the benefits of outdoor dining. It lets them take advantage of the extra space and the distancing, but yet it leaves the streets open and it takes away the argument of the people who feel that they're being impacted negatively by having the streets closed. I don't see, you know, to me, that seems like a win-win, and it'll, it'll remain the same, that the other merchants can take advantage, and you really can't have a salon out in the street. I'm not going to sit there with my hair and curlers out in the street, just for one reason, but, for many reasons, but not to say that they couldn't do retail sales of, you know, beauty products and hair products, things like that. So I really like option two because it gives us all the benefits of option one. It takes advantage of the space. We still need to beautify, yes, and I wouldn't be opposed to, wouldn't you feel better about leaving option two in place for a longer period of time because it doesn't impact the street, and would that change the sequoia at all?
I think it, it, it helps, right?
It helps by not...
Again, it's a conversation I think we need to have at some point of where, where is that trigger where we need to worry about?
But it's not going to make it worse.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it alleviates the traffic issue. There's still the parking issue, but it, it strikes a, a better balance than what we're doing right now.
It does, and I know that we do hear about parking in Old Town even when we don't have a virus and we don't have street closures, and it's just by virtue of the nature of Old Town. Old Town really is like, it's, yes, there's a main street down at Old Town, but it's really like a walking district because the things are so close together. So, and we wanted to encourage walking when we did the street scape improvements. You know, we made the sidewalks beautiful, and we made them beautiful again and safe at the same time now. You know, we added the lampposts and, and the benches and other things to make people want to be in Old Town, and clearly it worked in addition to putting the theater down there. You know, Bailey's was the first entrepreneur that took a, a chance and built Bailey's Restaurant way ahead of everybody else, and, and they were the pioneer in Old Town, seeing what was coming, and I think it was a, you know, it was a good investment and a good gamble on their part. I think it's paid off. But I really like option two because, maybe you can help me see why, what's the difference between option two and option one, except that with option two, we take away the objections of the other merchants? Because I'm not seeing a drawback between option two.
Well, are you asking me?
Yeah, I am.
A, a, a few thoughts. I think we need to remember right now that indoor bars, restaurants, retail, salons, and I can probably go down the list, are all prohibited. They're closed. So a lot of these complaints that we're getting right now are somewhat moot unless they move them out to the street. They cannot open. So the argument that, that my salon is, and I don't mean to point out salons, but my retail store, I'm not getting the traffic, I'm not, whatever, you're closed. Right now, you are closed. You're not going to get any business unless you move out to the street. So I, I think that is the only segue right now to give anybody some viability.
Wouldn't they still have that opportunity if we did option two?
I don't know. That's a good question. I do, I do think it, well, let me kind of address that. I do think it limits your space. I, I don't know how much we're going to be able to block sidewalks unless we move into the parking lot stalls, and then, of course, you, you don't solve the parking complaints that you're having here, so those still are in effect.
Right.
And then, of course, you have dining and retail right up next to cars, which is kind of problematic, but, you know, I, I, I guess we're pivoting on the fly here. The other, the other thing for me is, you know what? We just started this, okay, maybe three and a half weeks ago, and this is a very dynamic thing, and I don't want to chase our tail on this. Like, that's, that's particularly, I just want to see, we said COVID was, COVID was going to be dynamic. Nobody thought that we'd get closed down again. I certainly didn't think so, but I knew it was a possibility. Lo and behold, that it happened. I don't want to keep changing, okay? I think we need to, me personally, just need to do something, stick with it. We can bring it back at the next council meeting. I have no problem doing that, but just don't want to keep changing. Anyway, but your question, maybe I didn't answer.
No, no, you did, because I didn't, I didn't think about them being closed now, but are they closed now? Because other stores are open.
Retail stores are still allowed to be open.
Yeah.
Salons are closed.
Okay.
Well, how come the mall has to close if retail stores are...
That's what I turned to you and said...
That was a specific call-out by the governor, that malls, indoor malls have to be closed.
And that didn't make any sense to me either, but a lot of this doesn't make sense to me these days. So, yes, I turned to you and I said, why would the mall close if the retail stores are open? So that's a question yet to be answered, but...
I, I, just while we're, maybe you could comment or anybody else. If you, because I'd like to answer your opinion. If you have a retail store, the, the theory or what we're hearing is that people can't drive by your retail store, hence that's affecting business.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
And if the street's closed and many people are in the street, you can either still be open and people can, who were dining can go into your shop.
Which is the same argument for the, on behalf of the farmer's market, because they're in Old Town. We've added people to Old Town.
Yeah, so they can go into your shop, or you can move your, parts of your shop outside. So I'd like to, maybe we can have that dialogue.
Well, okay, so the complaint was, if they're saying people can't drive by and, and have access to the store, so option two would take care of that because then the street is open, and it just pushes the restaurants back a little bit into the parking spaces, and so how far back would they have to move from where they are now?
Actually, from, from what's out there right now, it wouldn't be too far because they're, they're actually only in basically the parking spaces now and on the sidewalk.
Okay, so that would stay the same, so that wouldn't really reflect the change.
Well, it wouldn't stay exactly the same. It would be a little bit of change there.
Okay, so we're gonna...
And I don't know exactly how much space that would be, but it would be a small change.
How do you move pedestrians if, if the sidewalks and the parking spaces?
Well, they weren't on the sidewalks, though.
Well, the sidewalk would have, would have to remain open. At least, at least forty, or four feet would have to remain open.
And it's open now, right? Sidewalks are open now?
Most of it's open now, but some of the restaurants and a couple of the retail shops actually are using the full sidewalk and the street. So there would have to be an adjustment there.
So that would be a compromise between the people who feel their businesses are being impacted negatively because the streets are closed, and it would take away a little bit of space from the restaurants while still allowing them to... while still allowing them to stay, you know, outdoors and seat people. And they're gonna lose a little bit, I don't know how many are using the sidewalks, but that doesn't seem right. That they, of course, we all, they're moving down the street, right? So they're walking down the street.
Exactly.
So that would be, that would be a change. So they're gonna give up a little bit of the sidewalk space, and we're just gonna squeeze them a little bit to make sure they stay in the parking spaces, right?
That's right.
So a server in a restaurant would have to cross the pedestrian sidewalk to serve people who are dining in what we now know as parking, parking stalls.
And are they, are they doing that now, Luke? Do servers have to cross the sidewalk with people on it?
Yes, I know of two restaurants where they're already, the sidewalk has remained open.
Okay.
And they're crossing over the sidewalk to serve folks in, in, in the, on the street portion of there.
Has that been a problem?
I have, I haven't heard anything about that being a problem.
Okay, so it didn't sound like that would be a change. But by doing that, we get to open the street. And I think that has been the biggest concern for the, what I want to call the other business owners who are, are, you know, hey, and if restaurants aren't taking advantage of it, you know, they should, I think. Especially if it's been successful for some, I don't see why it wouldn't be successful for all. And if we do it that way, maybe that would inspire more restaurants to take advantage. We don't know why the other restaurants didn't take advantage, do we?
No, I think it's just an individual business decision.
Okay, well, Luke's obviously, if you've got an argument like that where you have to carry food down for flights. So why, so what we do is we squeeze them into the parking space a little bit. He said it didn't lose too much, they're pretty much there now. We open the street up, and Old Town traffic doesn't move very fast, so I, I wouldn't really have too much of a concern about that. And then we open this, leave the sidewalks open. So that's the difference. We leave the sidewalk open and we, we open, um, Front Street.
So you've had quite a number of restaurants, or not only restaurants, but companies taking advantage of this, making investment in it, in doing this. And why, I don't, why, it looks like there's maybe sixty percent people who don't want the street closed. I'm, I'm just hearing this, I mean, if we're counting maybe forty percent that like it, somewhere in there.
And we don't know, because who takes the, if they didn't, you know-
Well, and that's what's my next comment.
Yeah, they didn't take the time to tell us.
Is this, you know, and, and Councilmember Swank alluded to this. Is this somebody who's just annoyed because they don't want to move things out? Is there truly a parking problem? Is it truly somebody has to walk too far and therefore wouldn't patronize a business? If you go out there, and, and, and I've gone out there too, on my bike and just kind of watch some things. I, I'm looking at the businesses out there and I'm just, I'm not seeing that constraint. Now, that doesn't mean it's not there, okay? I, I, I'll tell you, I don't know, but I-
You're not seeing the lack of, of businesses, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the parking in proximity to where the, where the streets closed, and it's, it's not far. Now, granted, you're right, some people may not be able to walk in, okay? But that would exist.
Whether they go to Target or?
Well, I mean, I, well, that precludes somebody would, in order to access your business, would have to park in front of it, is what your argument is, is making. And I don't know how many spaces are ever open, y- you see what I'm saying? And so for some reason, it's, it's just kind of not computing. But, look, I don't want to hurt anybody. I mean, if, if opening up the, the street solves it, but-
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
But I don't know that it does, and I don't know that we're not chasing our tail. And I don't know that if, that if this situation is gonna become more restrictive. That's why I'm, I'm hesitant to keep being reactionary.
I see what you're saying.
You see?
Cause then we gotta deal with a whole new set of, you know, issues maybe if we change. But to me, it doesn't reflect that big of a change, because, so, and he brought up a good point. So if they've made an investment in chairs and tables, is that going to change? Because they're still gonna be in the same amount of space in, basically in the parking stalls. It would only change for those who can no longer occupy the public sidewalk.
That's correct, and, and I, I have no idea exactly how many tables would be lost. But, uh, yes, there would be, there's, the restaurants that are using the sidewalk now would, would most likely lose some tables.
Okay.
So I, I don't mean to keep talking.
No, no, that's, I'm-
The reason why I brought up the farmer's market, okay, and maybe let me make the connection, is anything that brings people down there is what you want.
Yes.
And so that's maybe the argument, that's maybe the actual, the gist of it right here, which brings the most people down. I'm thinking if there's more places for people to eat, because that's what people primarily do in Old Town. Bars are now closed, so, you know, that's gonna be a hit on business. But what brings the most people down there, because that, that helps everybody.
Well, and they're still gonna have the same amount of space in which to eat outside.
I don't think so.
Luke?
No.
Except for the sidewalk.
The sidewalk is not the same width in every location.
Okay.
And the sidewalk where the restaurants are using the sidewalk-
Yeah.
Is fairly narrow.
Big, oh, it's narrow.
It's probably five feet wide.
Okay.
And they have a row of tables there.
Okay.
So I would assume that if you open the sidewalk, that row of tables will be gone.
So I, in, in a, in a way to, you know, split the baby in half, I would say option two is going to allow them to continue to serve outside, and especially now when they can't serve anything at all. I'm so sorry that the governor keeps going back and forth on this, but I, you know, it'll allow them to continue to eat outside, but yet it will remove the obstacle. And I think we can ask the same question you asked. The more people that are in Old Town, you know, high tide floats all boats, and we know that. So if people can drive down Old Town Front Street, is that gonna, you know, make it more attractive for them to stay and to do things?
Keep something in mind, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I just-
That's okay.
It's just these things are, are just floating out, keep something in mind. We went from, particularly in restaurants, of not being able to open to opening with social distancing.
Yeah.
And the idea behind that was to find a way to add as many tables so that we can bring as many people back to work as possible.
Right.
I, I'm wondering if we're reversing that sort of-
A little.
Yeah, I mean, if we're starting to reduce the ta, the, the tables, then we're, we're, we're kind of heading back in the other direction.
Sounds like not a lot, though.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
It sounds like it's not a lot.
Sorry, anyway, I'll, I'll-
But the reason I keep pushing this is I don't want us to tie two to two and come up with no solution. So that's why I'm trying to kind of work through this, because I like the idea. I think it's great for the restaurants if we can maintain that, the same space they have now in the parking stall or in the, you know, the parking spaces. They can utilize any improvements or anything in the equipment they bought, or chairs and tables and things that they bought. Sounds like they're already crossing the sidewalk anyway, so that didn't seem to be an issue. It will impact the restaurants that are utilizing the sidewalk. I'm surprised we let them use the sidewalk anyway.
Well, it's because they were using the street. The pedestrians used the street. Okay, I just want to add one, just something, food for thought. You know, the, the closure's only where it is. We have applications outside for other restaurants that will end up effectively operating under what option two would look like, because the streets will be open there, we're not gonna close them there.
Yeah, because isn't that the coin op, right? I mean, same thing, so-
Coin op and Eat have, have expressed interest, and Laurent's and Craft Brewery on Fourth Street.
So you'd get, you would get more.
So just, just food for thought on that.
So you would get additional participation by doing option two?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is that they, they have the opportunity now to come in and do it. They would, when they come in and do it, the street will be open in front of their business. So they will effectively be operating under what's option two would look like.
Got it, because we're not closing the streets there.
Yeah, the closure doesn't extend out to them.
Okay, so, but options, option two still takes away the argument that we heard, I think, over and over. I think we heard street closure, street closure, street closure, that's what the argument that we heard for the other businesses. So I think I'd be willing to sacrifice how many few tables of the, of the restaurants that are using the sidewalk right now. Keep them on the street, especially now that they can't serve indoors. And also, it really doesn't change anything for Lea and Eats and those types of restaurants because they, their streets are open anyway. So they would be confined to their parking lot, if it's a private parking lot, and the parking spaces near or in front of their store, right?
That's right.
Okay, so that really isn't gonna change. But I, that's why I want to go with option two, just because we heard over and over and over, street closure. And to me, it's not that big of a change. Greg?
One option that you can recover a little bit of floor space, if you will, or footprint, would be, we've seen folks build a platform-
Yeah.
Out in the parking aisle.
Is that, is that what we saw?
So that it makes it, it makes it flush with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Cause right now, we have that roughly two-foot-wide rolled curb area that's unusable space. If they were to build a platform flush with the sidewalk, extend that out, they'd be able to recover that two-foot curb area and make that floor space, maybe encroach a foot into the sidewalk, recover a row of two-top tables, I'm not sure, just a thought.
I like that. Zach?
Yeah, so I just want to add a couple of things really quick. I think that what, what we see is activity breeds activity. And when you have a businesses open, it's like, what's going on down there and, and see? What, what we're seeing in Old Town right now, and you even heard from some of the commenters, is, is like Espiden and Crusher Brew haven't even been open, right? And you can point to these businesses that just haven't even been opened at all. Different businesses have different hours. Some are only by appointment, right? So we have this, we're trying to do this balancing act. I think we could get to a place where when we see some of these new, new, uh, new businesses come on board, you would have a mix, right? You would have the closure that we currently have, that's only been going for three weeks. And if we roll it back, we're probably gonna be the first city to roll it back. I haven't seen another city roll outdoor dining back yet. And then we would have these new businesses that you would essentially be getting option B, so you could look at it and see. I think I heard one of the comments, they actually wanted the street closed. They wanted front closed from fourth to fifth, so, which we're not even gonna discuss that right now. I think that staying in this course, at least for the next two weeks, until we get to the next council meeting and see what happens, my biggest concern is just at the state level. Had we, had we decided to throw this away before, every business in Old Town would be beaten down our door going, why did you throw that away? We needed this space, we needed this space. So I would hate to, like Councilmember Nigara says, chase our tail on this. We have a plan, we could message it better. I think some of the businesses could message it better. I think that the community is embracing it. It, it's just, there's this fear, there's a fear of, of, you know, being close to other people, and that's a genuine fear. So we can have a little bit of both.
But you could still accomplish that with, with option two, and I think that's where I'm, you know, I, I just say-
Without doing any harm.
Without doing any harm to other businesses, right?
That's my concern, yeah.
And, and so if other businesses further down Front Street are, are anticipating opening up and taking up the parking spaces, you know, but still allowing the traffic to flow, then why not just do it on the rest and standardize it? Because, you know, it reminds me, I was in Disneyland once with my family, and we, uh, were there till, till, till the closing of the park. I don't know if you've ever done this before, but there were so many people there that we got shuffled to this sort of back alley behind Main Street-
Yeah.
That was less than magical, right? I mean, I'll be honest, right?
That's where the cast lives.
Yeah, the cast is back there.
That's where the cast lives, you're not supposed to be back there.
There's like garbage cans and stuff, and it kind of smelled like, you know, a great experience.
That was my world.
And so, you know, it kind of ended the night in a weird way. But, but we missed out on that opportunity of walking out on Main Street for that, you know, for that exit, right? And I, and I only bring that up because it, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're doing, is we're saying, well, come, you know, this is the cool part of Temecula, we want you to come down here, but we're gonna force you to go that way. And if we are getting a lot of drive-through traffic, and if people are starting to come out more, and we're starting to see an uptick in tourism, then, you know, my, my sense is, let's just, you know, let's keep the magic alive. The other thing, too, is regarding the state of California and the governor, I mean, you know, I, I can say with, with pretty good confidence that we've seen nothing but schizophrenic decisions, you know, for quite a while.
Yeah.
And if I were to predict, you know, that, you know, businesses are to remain closed or, or these orders are in effect for another two weeks, I would not put any money on that bet. Because I have no idea what's gonna happen tomorrow, let alone two weeks from now. And so if we find a nice, happy medium in, in this, I just say, let's stick to that. Let's give the existing businesses, they're gonna have to take a little bit of a hit.
Yeah.
The other businesses can adjust. If they want to move outside, they have that opportunity. And at this point, we've just created a level playing field.
Yeah.
And, and everybody's gonna sacrifice a little bit here, because we're not gonna have the parking, you know, potentially, we're not gonna have, everybody's gonna take a little bit of a hit, but it at least keeps the through traffic going and, you know, doesn't have that closed-down feel. And like I said, until we get, if we ever want to do this the right way, you know, now, like I said, is not the time to be experimenting with Old Town, in my opinion. And we would, if we were to really contemplate a more, you know, plaza-type design for Old Town and rerouting traffic and all of that, that would take some major infrastructure changes, right? And, you know, and, and, and we would also want the businesses to have sort of a longer-term horizon to be able to respond to what their business model is gonna be in that new situation. And we haven't done that here, and I just, you know, I just think, just from an, you know, an equitable standpoint for all businesses, they're expressing a concern, you know, I'd, I'd say, let's, you know, go with option two. Try and make it as, as robust as possible for, you know, people to expand into the, into the areas as allowed and, you know, open up Front Street.
I, I think now because they're suffering so much through, with COVID, and they have lost business and employees are out and things like that, I think do no harm. If we can do no harm while at the same time still promoting the same concept in Old Town and allowing businesses to be able to stay open because they can serve outside. The other thing, too, and, and I mentioned it, Matt, is that with this concept, and we haven't closed the street, so we haven't limited access to anyone, but yet we've expanded the restaurants into this. And especially if we, I love the idea of the lights. I've always wanted to put lights across the street at Christmas time, and I never understood why we couldn't, but I love that idea. That, again, will give it that feel of a colonade, you know, that celebratory feel. And yet, again, we've done no harm to the others. I can't imagine that all those merchants would be saying, you know, and with the passion that they have, if their business weren't being impacted in some way. And again, we don't have any way of knowing whether it's the virus or whether it's the rerouting of the traffic. But it certainly could be the rerouting of the traffic. And if we can remove that while maintaining the good parts, which is the expansion of the restaurants and allowing them to open, and then the festivities that we're gonna do by, you know, fixing it up a little so it doesn't look like the Backstreet, the Underground, Disneyland.
So a couple of thoughts, just as we, we hash this out. We don't know if we're, we're, I know do no harm. All the, the comments were of an opinion. I, 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 I did not hear any comment where, where someone had said, this is occurring, it is hurting my business, other than people don't want to walk from a parking stall to somewhere else. That's all, that's all I've heard, but I, I, there is nothing that was said that is indicating that, that there's a real problem that we could tackle. But I do know that if we start to reduce space or tables or anything of that nature, then we know we're doing harm, we're, we're actually, I mean, that, that is harm. The, the other thing, again, that gives me pause is, I, along the lines of what I just said, I, I'm not certain how many people, again, who, who want the street back open are those that just, all of the farmer's market era, just don't want to participate and, and want the path of least resistance.
And it could be.
And it, and it could be.
But that, that doesn't mean it's not a valid, you know, a valid point.
And for many reasons, they may not be able to participate. Could be monetarily, it could be physical health, it could be all kinds of things, so. But I just don't know that, I'm trying to make a decision. The other question is, is it safe?
Yeah.
Is, is there, I mean, how would we block traffic from people eating in the parking area? What, you know, I mean, is there a, a danger of being hit by a car while you're eating?
And is this being done anyplace else?
There's always a danger, you get, you get where I'm going, have we looked at that?
And is it done anyplace else this way?
Yeah, so I have a couple of comments, but I'll, I'll defer to the, our engineer for technical, but-
Is he still here?
It's done all over, it's done all over. This is, this is done all over the place, and there are ways to, to, particularly on the, the, the side that traffic is oncoming as you drive up, that's where you want to harden. You want to put some kind of heavy barrier there.
Just that first-
That, that corner.
Yeah.
On the corner. And then, you can see from my examples, it's, again, it's done all over the place. You know, there's, there's minimal car barrier along that parallel edge. And you can, there are things you can do, there's, you can put, you know, ballers, you could put a small curb there. You can do pretty much anything you want, but it's done all over.
And then you gain back the spaces if they- And then you gain back the spaces if they build the, the, I, I saw that platform, I wondered what that was.
Just consider this for a second, maybe, maybe this'll work. When we originally considered this, if you recall, we pared it down already. We were, we were going to close additional streets, if you remember, and then we, we took this path because people didn't wanna be impacted, so we pared it down, everybody remember that, okay? So, you know, we're gonna pare it down again, but fine, if that's what we end up doing. Why don't we just make this option then available along the whole thoroughfare? That's number one.
It, it is.
It is.
No, I'm talking all of Old Town Front Street.
Yes, it is.
We got that, okay?
Yeah.
Good, good. And then, um, what about, since there are people that may not take advantage of their frontage, that we make some sort of mechanism available that their neighbor can't take advantage of their frontage? Do you follow what I'm saying? So, um.
Why me?
Think, think about this for a second, I'll be a little bit more detailed. Let's say we have nineteen oh nine, um, and uh, the Swing Inn is over there to their north, or to the south, excuse me. And if the Swing Inn doesn't wanna move tables, they wanna stay closed, which I notice that's what they wanna do. They, they did not opt to move into the street, they opted to close. Well, and if they're gonna, I don't know why either, but if they're gonna stay closed and nineteen oh nine wants to expand into those parking spaces, why not let them?
Could, I mean, it's public parking space, is there a liability issue, is there?
Uh, I would ask the city attorney to opine on, right now, we've limited it to property frontage.
Yeah.
That you've, that you've dedicated right away towards. There may be an opportunity to enter into a license agreement with the neighboring property owner to allow you to do that, but uh, Peter, do you have?
The man in the mask?
As I understand Councilmember Nigara's question, right now, people are allowed to use the street that's right in front of their building. And if somebody next door is not using their space, you'd wanna give that space to that other person. I think you could do that.
Cause it's public street.
Right, it's a public street. You could also put in some safeguards and say, well, if that person, you know, you, you have a priority to get the space in front of your uh, uh, store, your restaurant, but if you don't use it, then the city can give it to somebody else.
But we'd, we'd have to make sure, you know, they don't impede any traffic, trying to go into the stores or anything like that.
But it would take up parking, okay? It, it would take up parking.
Right.
And.
Yeah, but we're picking up parking, I mean, we're really taking that parking up anyway, because the other restaurants can take that space now.
And I'm looking for a compromise here. Remember, our goal was to keep people in business and that related to keeping people employed.
Yes.
That's the goal.
Yes.
Dr. Ron, you look like you'd like.
Can we, can we couch that one? Just, look, that, my concern, I mean, look, if I'm the Swing Inn, and, you know, we, we, you know, we have a reopening of the streets, I'm saying fantastic, but then you put my next door neighbor who's, you know, in essence, a competitor right in front of my, yeah, you know, I feel like we're creating an unnecessary conflict. So before, I mean, you know, hey, look, if, if we wanna contemplate that program, I think that's fine, that's probably a later date conversation. Let's just see where we go with this first phase. But if that is an opportunity, and if other businesses wanna come out and, and do that, then I'd, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we let the Swing Inn, you know, have a little bit of say and say, yeah, if you wanna open up out here, that's fine.
Yeah.
But see, here's the thing, and you make a very good point, I, I, I don't deny that, you make a very good point. But we got, I don't know, five, six people alluding, who wrote in that are alluding to the Swing Inn and I, you know, during this time, the Swing Inn chose not to avail itself and open up of this program. And some of them were claiming that our street closer, which is not in front of them, okay, was somehow impacting them. So I'm having trouble reconciling that. They have to close now.
Yeah.
Right? And so if they don't choose to open, okay, under these circumstances into the street, I mean, it's like nobody can, and that just, that, remember, our goal is to keep people employed.
Yes.
That's the goal, not to shrink that footprint, but to enlarge it.
Could we give them first right of refusal?
Well, I, yes, of course, I would say, listen, there's an application, in this instance, for nineteen oh nine.
For the space in front of your place.
You have, you know what, um, this is, we're not asking your permission, but unless you're going to use it, um, we're going to grant the permit. Now, it does what you said, Dr. Ron, it, it does, and I do have an, an issue with it, but I'm trying to find a compromise.
Well, and, and I get it, I, I, well, but, you know, it also comes down to finance, right? If you're the, if you're the person on the uh, monopoly board that has, you know, more money than the rest, and you're buying up property like crazy, you're gonna, you're gonna likely win the game, right? And so we're, we're in essence kind of doing that, if, you know, Old Town Front Street is the monopoly board. So I, it ju, that makes me real uncomfortable, I, you know, from, from another business. It's, yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd prefer, you know, hey, look, I, I, I think it's, I think it's a good conversation, but I think we're, you know, I, I'm not comfortable shooting from the hip on that one tonight.
Fair enough, fair, fair enough, you know what, I'm just throwing stuff on the wall, see what sticks.
If we do this, and we, and we confine them to the parking spaces where they pretty much are now, and we open up the space on the sidewalk, but we gain back that space by building the, the platforms, and they look like they were made out of two by fours and plywood, pretty much, right? So like a foundation, so that gives us back the net amount of space. Let's, let's say down the line, if somebody's not using their space, and their neighbor goes to them and saying, hey, you're not using your space, can I use your space? I mean, obviously, this, you know, the city would have to play some role in it, but I don't want the city to be the one allowing a competitor, you know, to take over that space.
Actually, the more I think about that, um, you got Old Town, everybody split over there, now that I think about it. I mean, that would just like be like.
Yeah, exactly. But it puts us in the position of being the bad guys that are gonna give away the space.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know, that, but I like the way we're going. I, I see all the benefits to option two, and especially if we can gain back the space for the tables, if we lose some space on the sidewalk. And then it'll be, the good thing is, is it'll be consistent with the rest of Old Town, because they are going to be opening up and they can use those parking spaces under the current scenario. It's just that their street wouldn't be closed, so that puts it consistently from one end to the other.
And, and, and I hear you, and I truly don't wanna be argumentative.
No.
But, but there's a certain amount of tables you must operate to be able to be viable.
But we said.
We're talking about shrinking them.
No, we aren't.
Well, yes, we don't know.
For some of them, we are, yeah.
I mean, you're talking about reducing the footprint.
Yeah, that was just a concept, I don't know if they'd be able to regain those tables or not, that was just an option I threw out.
Yeah, and, and so, and we don't know. And the other thing we don't know is the motivation of, of, of these complaints. Are they, are they, is, is the street being closed truly restrictive, um, or is it just not preferred? And if it's truly restrictive, in what way is it restrictive? Because then we can get our arms around it. And then we can say, oh, okay, you know, nobody can get to your business. Not in a theory that, um, you know, I have heard that if somebody could not walk, then they'll never come back to Old Town again. I, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not going that far.
That doesn't make sense to me, that just, it doesn't make sense. So, so I don't have anything here to play with to make an educated decision to reduce a footprint, remove jobs, okay? And, and when the whole idea, I mean, hear me, the whole idea was to get more space so people can open. And that decision was made at a time when indoor dining was allowed, okay? Now indoor dining is not allowed at all. The contemplation of reducing that footprint now is even more, I won't call it, well, could be catastrophic. It's more problematic, that's for certain, that's what I'm having trouble with.
I think I'm kinda, I kinda seeing it as a wash. Um, if, you know, if they lose three or four or five tables, um, is that gonna make it, is that gonna, you know, and we open the street up, is it gonna improve business at some of the other establishments so that they can get their people, hire their people back?
The more people there.
Yeah.
The better.
Yes.
Okay, and, and, and that's, and the theory is, if you have the tables, the restaurants, et cetera, can open, people will utilize them. They're not gonna be there in a hundred degree weather in the afternoon, that's not gonna happen, um, we all know that. What we don't know is what it's costing somebody else, I do wanna know that. We, we don't wanna impact somebody else, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna reduce these footprints on a whim.
It's just a little bit.
And we don't know, give me the numbers. If you can tell me that, that by, by opening the road, each restaurant will lose one table, I, I, I can say, well, what does that do? If, if you tell me they're gonna lose five tables or six, well, you're gonna cost some people their jobs. Cooks, waitresses, hostesses, you, you, you know, that's just reality.
But we're not able to answer any of those questions, that's the problem. So, so we have to make some decision here tonight.
We don't.
And, and I, I think we do, I mean, you know, I'm saying we do, and I think the decision is, you know, that if we could just pop the street open, it hits a balance between what we heard. You know, I'm, I'm gonna take it at face value, if a business tells me that, hey, we are impacted and we are struggling and our percent, they put out percentages and all of this, because of that street closure, I said earlier, hey, you know, correlation doesn't mean causation, right? That's an old proverb, you know, from statistics. And, and, you know, and, and it's true, because is it, you know, is it the increase in COVID, is it something to do with, you know, the heat, is it whatever? We don't know, but I'm gonna have to take it at face value at this point to listen to these other businesses and say, hey, we think this is what's happening to our business. And you know what, time will tell. If we're in this situation for several more months, and, and, and some of these businesses still don't, you know, after the street is open, still don't recover, then, then we will know, but in the meantime, we're gonna be stuck in that situation. And, you know, it just, we're just not finding the balance and representing all, you know, all of those perspectives.
And I think those businesses would then realize it wasn't the street after all, it must be something, you know, I'm doing or not doing.
And they're gonna have to adjust, but for right now, you know, if that's the only thing you're focusing on for your business, and you're saying, you know, the city of Temecula has made a mistake and it's impacting my business, I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt and say, okay, then let's, let's figure this out.
I think, yeah, I think we can't, I think we can't ignore them any more than we could ignore the restaurants that say, if I expand out into the street, it's gonna, you know, enlarge my business, that's easier to understand.
And if we remove a certain amount of tables and it causes a restaurant not to be able to operate, what did we accomplish? And we don't know that.
We've still expanded their space though, but we've expanded their space.
Pretty well split, so, I mean, and I hear what you're.
I'm going two to one, that was my count.
It, it was.
It was about two to one.
It was really love.
Could I offer up something, potentially, just a potential solution? There are two restaurants out there right now that are using the sidewalk. Could they just be grandfathered in? And the, everyone else is not using the sidewalk, and the ones that come on later have to use the sidewalk.
Can you do that if you don't have this?
Well, they have to, you have to allow, allow use of the sidewalk.
Well, what if, what if, I, I, your ideas, we could talk about it, but what if somebody who is impacted by that now, okay? And, and doesn't want that to occur? In other words, one of the, one of the complainants.
Well, then we'll know that it wasn't really the street.
Yeah, it's just the frontage, actually, that's a, that's really insightful, Luke.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Take a pause here, let's recognize that, because, no, I mean, really, if, if it's only two that we're, we're contemplating right now, from a, from a pedestrian access standpoint, you can always cross the street, you can let folks know, maybe put up a sign on, on their, you know, frontage that says you have to cross here if you wanna continue, it's a bit of an inconvenience, but.
Zach's dying.
It, you know, addresses your issue, Mike, we're not gonna lose tables, it's only in two locations, and we'll just hit the standard for the rest of the place.
Zach?
Good to go.
Okay, so, so I like that on, on, on the surface, but if you're, if you're coming down Main Street and you wanna go to Under the Willow, you're gonna, I guess you could go through the back of the parking lot to get there, but you would come to, uh, in front of Be Good, right? And you're like, how am I, I'm supposed to cross the street, go down a block, come back a block, I mean.
Could they work their way through the tables?
I think you're, we're getting into, do you really wanna meander through tables during COVID right now? Like, I don't wanna be eating and have someone meandering through COVID.
He brings up an excellent point, you move them on the sidewalk, how do you social distance? How does that occur?
I think that has to be the focus, right? We're talking about the economy.
What you're gonna, and that's the whole, my whole point, you're going to lose space for tables.
So for me, it's, 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 it's the economy, right? We want people to be able to, to open their businesses in the public right away, and I understand the equity part, and it's not equitable. And some of the comments that I heard from business owners that are still within the closure, they were frustrated that the businesses outside of the closure got their way. They were frustrated that, well, why did they, they, they didn't want it and they didn't get it, and we, we want it open, and, and so I'm frustrated that they got it, right? So, we're, we're trying to make a bad decision, there's no good choice here, right? Like, you're talking about restaurants losing business, or you're talking about retail losing, like, there's not a good choice in the situation that we're in.
I'm trying to say the least amount of harm, least amount.
What Luke proposed is, is, you know, no harm to existing businesses that chose to use the sidewalk. Yeah, it's a bit of a gauntlet to reach a couple of businesses, but then again, those same businesses said, it's a bit of a gauntlet to get to us anyway.
Well, and they, they took the risk by investing too.
Absolutely, and, and so it's, you know, so it's, it's no, look, none of these options are, are perfect, you know? And, you know, I, I've, you know, we talk about social distancing, well, there's nothing keeping somebody from walking along the edge of the tables on the street side if we kept the streets closed, right? You could walk right up against those barriers and be just as close to a table, walking right past them, than walking down a sidewalk. So, I, I mean, you know.
There's more square footage.
Well, there is, but, you know, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, functionally, it's, you know, it's, there is no perfect solution to what we're talking about here. I think that's the bottom line, and what we're trying to do is minimize impact to all businesses that have, you know, represented themselves today, and be able to allow what we've already allowed to, you know, continue in some form.
Right.
So maybe there's, there's a, there's a hybrid in there, and, and I, and I kinda liked where you were going with, like, we'll try to figure it out. So for me, the feel and the safety of it changes, like, as a family, walking with my kids, it changes when you're in a pedestrian passo like at the mall, where the, where the bollards are up and it, it's safe versus a parklet where there's still moving traffic. So the feel of it changes, but maybe there is an opportunity for, um, the, the more permanent removable bollards, like what we have here, where we could adapt to like the Thursday through Sunday, right? Or the Thursday through Saturday, and make that change, so we could, we could do the full expanded dining on the weekends, and when these retailers that are having more nine to five hours during the week, it would be open for them.
But aren't the weekends their big, aren't the weekends their biggest hurrah?
I don't know that there's a big hurrah right now, honestly, I just don't think there is.
A bigger hurrah?
I mean, I think we're just in a place, we're in a totally different world, and I think if we were talking about this as a long-term project, we would have had public outreach ad nauseam, you know, we would have, we're just trying to help people survive.
But don't forget, I mean, how many businesses do we have in Old Town? Hundred and, right? So we're letting two businesses drive decision-making for a hundred and forty some odd businesses? I, you know, I mean.
Wait a minute, how many people have pulled permits? I mean, that, that's, that's the true question, how many permits?
No, 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 I'm just saying, what we're talking about as far as the sidewalk issue is only related to two restaurants right now. So other folks are still gonna be able to do their expansions into the street and do all of this, and it would look just like option two, you know, all the way down Front Street.
All the way the rest of it, yes.
You know, the complete length, but what we're saying is, where there's only two restaurants who've expanded into the sidewalk area itself. So they can make a decision to either abandon that sidewalk area and do whatever everybody else is doing, or, you know, we just, um, you know, make a concession for, for them, you know, in this one case. But again, it's two businesses out of a hundred and forty, so.
And we've still expanded their business by allowing them to move outside in that way and into the parking spaces. They've added to their business, their existing business which is inside. Now, that's no, you know, especially, that's critical now, cause they don't have an inside business. But when inside opens up again, they'll have inside business plus what's in the parking space. So it's not like they're losing any, you know, they're gaining those, they might gain a few less than they would otherwise.
I'm not, I personally am not focused on those two businesses, I like the fact that we're talking about grandfathering, that's, that's great. I, I, I don't think I would favor two businesses over everybody, I wouldn't do that. But how many permits and applications do we have, Luke?
Fourteen in Old Town that have, uh, applied or are being reviewed, and eight that are actually utilizing the street right now.
So there'd be a total of, uh, uh, what, twenty-three?
No, it's fourteen total.
Total.
And of that fourteen, eight are in the street right now.
And the others are under review, is that what you're saying, the remainder?
Some of them have already been approved, they're just not taking part.
And the eight would still be in the street?
Yes, and, and one caveat to that is it's seven in the street, and Swing Inn has expanded their patio. Yes. And one caveat to that is it's seven in the street and Swing In has expanded their patio on private property.
Yeah. But they still have the option of moving into the parking spaces if they wanted to.
They do.
Okay, so the numbers that have, the numbers that are in the street won't change. They'll still stay in the street, basically in the same place in the street where they are now. The only difference will be that they won't be able to use the sidewalk unless we grandfather the men.
Yes, under option two.
Option two.
And it depends on the width of the sidewalk in front of the business.
Okay.
Some places, it's twenty feet wide.
Yes.
Or ten feet wide.
Right.
Some places, it's five feet wide. So, that makes a difference.
And the problem with that, that makes a difference. The problem also is, as we listen to these comments, we don't know which businesses are they, that, where they're being impacted. Let me try to say that again. Is it a business next to the ten-foot sidewalk where somebody already has a permit that, that they're worried about? Or is it the street closure in general? Because if, and here's the reason, if somebody has a permit and they're going to take up the space in front of one of the businesses that are complaining that they don't want that space taken up, you haven't solved anything.
But they can't take up that space. They can't take that space in front of another business.
Well, they.
They can only use the space in, in the, along their frontage.
I, I honestly think we're just way overthinking this, right? I mean, this is, you know, just, I mean, it, you know, we've got a handful of businesses out of a hundred and forty or so that are interested in expanding. The opportunity for any one of these other businesses to expand in that same fashion still exists in front of their, their, their business. All we're saying is just let the traffic move through. It happens in other communities. We saw photographs of it. I've seen, you know, communities who've done it. It's, you know, traffic slows down. We can come up with engineering to, to help address any public safety concerns.
The engineer's still here.
And, and at that point, what we're, what we're saying is, you know, make a decision here tonight. Are we, are we talking about the two restaurants that we get, you know, sort of, you know, the blessing to use that, that sidewalk area they've already occupied and then from here on out, nobody else can? Or do we just take it away and standardize it, you know, across everybody? But, you know, but just let the traffic flow. Let that, you know, that piece of Old Town continue to operate. And that's what, you know, predominant number of comments was saying, we just want the access. We want to be able to, you know, we're still gonna have some, some loss of parking spaces and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have to, you know, but everybody is going to be impacted and everybody has the potential to benefit.
So, clarify something for me is, do we see as a council that the issue is traffic going through Old Town as a whole or traffic in that section of the street that's closed? That, so, so there has to be a circumvention.
Yes.
Because that, so people are saying, because there's a circumvention.
Yes.
That both sides of the area that's closed is being impacted? Or is the area that's closed, the, is that where the complaints are coming from?
I think it's all of them. And, and honestly, who's, who's to tell right now, right? I mean, that's, that's the issue is, is who's to tell. But if we're trying to find the most pragmatic approach moving forward that finds some sort of balance between what we've heard here tonight and what we are trying to do with advantaging, you know, businesses under COVID environment, I think option two is, is the solution that gets us there.
Because it, because it benefits everyone. It gives the ones, everybody an option to move into the space. It doesn't reduce the amount of space for the restaurants that are operating now, except for the two. And we can fix that by grandfathering, so no jobs are lost there. All we've done is open the street.
You lose tables.
No.
No, we're not losing anything.
Not to grandfather the men.
When you lose square footage.
We're not losing anything, Mike. Nothing's being lost. Zero.
Elaborate. I don't, I don't agree with that. If you're.
The footprint is going to remain the same. We grandfather the two. They can keep doing whatever they wanna do in the square footage on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
For those two businesses. Everybody else gets to do what they're currently doing or what they're proposing to do. And we lose no square footage on any of those businesses.
Where are the, who, then we have to ask, who are the pending applications and where are they? Because we may be thwarting their plans at this point.
We're not. They're, the pending applications can go ahead and the ones that we were told about are already operating under option two.
Right.
We don't know that.
Yeah, we do.
They may be planning on moving into the street.
They're not. They, they're moving into the sp-.
They're, they're in the parking spaces, Mike.
The, the, the point, I think the point on the grandfathering was, is that they're grandfathered because they've already made the investment. They're already in the street.
Right.
Yes.
Not, you know, you have a plan or you're gonna have a plan and you're coming in later. It's, you, you're there now, you're grandfathered now. But everybody else would have to allow for.
So, we would have to tell everybody else that might be planning on opening in the street. You can't do that.
No.
Excuse me, sir.
They will.
Please elaborate.
No one, not even right now, can operate in the street. Only the parking aisle.
The parking spaces.
Okay, I, I understand that. So, forgive me, it's the semantics. Those that were planned, go ahead, go ahead.
But that's where the new applications will operate as well.
Yeah.
In the parking aisle.
Yeah.
And that will allow those that are within the confines of the closure to roll out into the parking aisle, just like they would be allowed to with the full street closed. And then those beyond the confines of the closure that have expressed interest.
North.
Will be treated exactly the same as those within the confines of the closure because they'll have live traffic next to theirs, even if we kept the closure in place.
Yes.
They would have to operate in that same configuration.
Yes.
So, essentially, you're leveling the playing field all the way through Old Town with the exception of the two that have heavily invested and taken up the sidewalk.
And they'll still be in the parking spaces. They'll just be on the sidewalk.
They will, the, the applicants that have not made the investment yet will lose the opportunity from operating on the sidewalk into the parking area. Is that a fair statement?
No.
That's a fair statement if they are within the confines of the closure.
Yes.
So, I can, I can put some numbers, some exact numbers to this.
Because you can't, Mike, you can't block the sidewalk if the street's open. You can block this, you can block the sidewalk if the street's.
That's my, that's my point. Maybe I'm not communicating.
Let's, let's let Luke give us some actual numbers.
Because we have, we have fourteen applications. We have eight that are in the street now, two that are using the sidewalk. From my list here of applications that are either in the process, approved, there's only one that is, that has an approved plan that uses a sidewalk. And that is Old Town Blues Club, which is a bar, which is officially shut down at the moment. And all of the rest of the applications are outside the closure area. So, they wouldn't be allowed to use the sidewalk anyways.
Anyway, yeah, they can't use it anyway. So, we're not losing anything.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I just have a quick question. I'm looking at some of these, these corner lots and we're talking about, okay, doing away with the sidewalk. If you have like a Coin Op who has dual frontage, right? Espadin has dual frontage. Some of these places have dual frontage. Nineteen oh nine has dual frontage. Be Good has dual frontage. Which, they just opened a restaurant in a pandemic. Like, how amazing is that? And they're packed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because of our outdoor dining. Would they be allowed, so would they be allowed to roll onto the, both sides?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the whole width of the, the whole width of the restaurant, yes.
Would, would, if you had a corner lot, we're talking about losing tables now. If you had a corner lot, would you be able to use the frontage on both streets that you were the corner of?
Yes.
On the corner of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, if you have frontage on, it's whatever frontage you have. So, if you, you have the corner lot, you could use both frontages.
Mm-hmm. So, we're, we're not losing anything because we can grandfather in the two existing ones in the closure area now that are using the sidewalk. Everybody's still gonna remain in the parking spaces because that's basically where they are now. Everybody north of the closure area is, some of them are already in the parking spaces. They can't block the sidewalk because the street's open. So, there's no place for pedestrians to walk if you block the sidewalk. So, they can't block the sidewalk.
Let's say we consider this. Previously, where we were thinking about an option one, adding accoutrements such as bollards and things like that, how would that fit in the option two? Are we now shunting the responsibility for blocking through traffic from somebody's expansion? Are we shifting that burden over to the applicant?
Now, now, just remember, nothing changes north of the closure area because there, nothing changes. They're gonna be doing exactly the same thing under option two that they're doing now. So, whatever we, however we were gonna handle them with bollards or whatever, that wouldn't change either.
What, what I might suggest is, working with Pat's Public Works team, the city would help supplement the blockade from a vehicular perspective, utilizing white barricades in lieu of orange, make them a little bit more pleasing.
Thank you.
If the restaurateur wanted to dress it up, to make it a little, little bit more appealing, that would be what they would do, similar to what you see out there now. The olive oil company rolled out some, some barrels with some olive trees in it and some planters along the longitudinal edge to segregate. But the city could utilize the white barricades that we're purchasing as the end blockades.
Yeah.
The ones that would stop the vehi, the vehicles and the one on the corner. And then if the restaurateur wanted to make those a bit more aesthetically pleasing, they could dress those up, put a sleeve over the top of it, put a planter on top of it, something to that effect.
And they're, and obviously, the olive oil company was doing that anyway. I mean, right? Whether it was one, option one, or option two, they're still in the street. They're still gonna do that. So, Zach, do you have a question?
Yeah, so the businesses that are Baileys, Devilish's, Be Good, nineteen oh nine, that are already in the street, we're going to be placing white K-rail around their closures? Or they're, we're gonna leave what they currently have in place?
My recommendation would be, it sounds like Pat wants to say something, but we would put the ones that would be perpendicular to the curb, you know, the ones, the blunt end, and maybe one, a right angle to that. And then they could leverage their, their longitudinal.
At the barricade corner.
Yeah, what we were thinking is that we would need to work with each individual restaurant to determine what we would need to, to make their safe and have the aesthetics. And, you know, we've clearly heard that people don't like the orange.
No.
Barricades, so we would not use those. We can use the white. We're, we're ordering white barricades. We're looking at possibly using box trees and things like that that the city would provide. So, that's the, that's the method that we would use to try to, to fortify each individual location.
And, Mayor, because I don't like even the white barricades, okay? The, and, and we're talking about Old Town and we're talking about our theme, what it looks like, attracting people.
They may use trees instead.
But if, 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 I tell you, if we're willing and can provide that infrastructure, and I'm talking the box trees and the bollards, for those that are making application.
That looks stunning.
Zach, what do you think about that?
Yeah, and that's kinda where I'm going with this, is we need to be able to provide something. And it's even, even if that start building parklets, like, just right now, start building some parklets so that, that we're not hindering these businesses any more than, than what's going on right now.
Well, and it makes, it makes consistency, too, with the appearance from one end to the other.
And listen, appearance is extremely important.
Yes, it is.
I mean, it is very, very important. And, and I think that's really where we're gonna have to land on this. Because I, because I get it. Like, I understand, you know, everyone's point here and hearing these comments. But I just didn't want us to get into a place where we're, we're now white K railing around businesses.
No, that's ugly.
And it's just, that's just gonna look like a hot mess, too.
No, that's ugly.
So, let's, let's try to craft something real quick, okay?
Could I add just one other thing, too?
Sure.
Some of the other things that we were looking at, if we're going to just go with the, the parking spaces for the restaurants, is other things that would create that visual friction on the street to try to, to, you know, keep the traffic slow and, and improve the safety, like the crosswalks. We had talked about, you know, painting the crosswalks at, at the intersections where there's the always stops. You've got the lights ideas that would go potentially, you know, linearly along the street, things like that that would potentially slow down the traffic. So, those are all the things that we're gonna have to look at to try to come up with a aesthetically, you know, pleasing atmosphere
And I don't think you need to put that in your motion, because I, you know, but, but I, because I think that's a given.
I do wanna be clear because, because, let me just, let me, let me give it a whack and then we can, we can augment it. How about that? Let's start off with, I think we all agree that those that have expanded into the street will be grandfathered in. Are we, that's my first part.
Well, everybody gets to go in the street.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Is that, okay, fair? Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Those that have expanded into the sidewalk will be grandfathered in.
Yes.
So, that's the first part. The second part is, when it comes to option one accoutrements, the city will provide for those applicants either bollards and chains, box trees. We, we don't want K rails. I, I think we're, whether orange or white.
No.
Well, except from an expediency standpoint, it sounds like we're thirty to sixty days out from getting any of that. So, we can't say.
But the box trees, we can get.
Right.
Quickly.
So, so some of the, I'm just saying, if it, if it's the white barricades temporarily until we get other things in place, you know, let's not, let's not delay it because of a lack of supply.
Or it could be the box trees, but let's get a will of the council going.
Yes.
Okay, so are we okay?
Yes.
Just with all expediency in mind.
Yes.
Of course, of course. So, are we okay with the council providing the option one accoutrements?
Sure.
Yes.
And, and I'm gonna, I don't know, we certainly don't wanna hodgepodge. So, may I make the, keep track of this as part of my own motion, that whatever that looks like goes back to the subcommittee? And, and listen, I don't want a lot of control over this, whether it's bollards and chains or plants, a box, a bollard, a box.
Standardize it.
Yeah, whatever it is, we'll make sure it's standardized and.
Do you guys, do you guys know what looks good?
You know what? I'll trust staff. And I, I know it when I see it. So, anyway, so there's, there's that. Am I missing anything? Oh, or do we want lights across the street? Is that, was that an option or is that?
Can, can, I don't think you can do it with vehicle.
Yeah.
Unless you really raise those up.
So, we'll mix that.
We could do them longitudinal probably, wouldn't you think, Pat? But draped across is too large of a span and the poles are not designed to hold it up.
Got it. Does the council?
Darn it.
Does the council want that? Okay, make that part of the motion. We obviously are opening up the street, okay? And then, of course, I don't know that this needs to be in the motion, but I just want clarity. The whole length of Old Town Front Street has the option to do this.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Every street in Old Town.
Every street in, in Old Town, thank you. And they, they would be able to avail themselves of this motion that we're making. Okay, are we, are we cool with that?
Yes, I'm happy.
Do we need to have somebody repeat the motion? I don't think so.
We're good.
Madam City Clerk, are you good with it?
So, we got a motion? I need a second.
Second.
All right. So, can we have a roll call vote, please? This was good, you guys.
It was.
It was very good. Aye.
Councilwoman Nigard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Varan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bishway?
Aye.
Do I need to extend to, get somebody to extend?
Yeah, we're gonna be here a while, until at least an hour. Madam City Clerk, uh, Madam City, Madam Mayor Protem. Yeah, we need to.
Mayor Protem.
Whoever you are.
Mayor Prot-
Can we please hear from the city manager?
Mayor Protem.
Yes. Hi, Aaron. I forgot you were there.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Bless your heart.
Can I make a suggestion? It's, it's ten-thirty. Item twelve deserves the appropriate time. And if it's the will of the council that we take that item in two weeks or we take it in a special meeting, but I'll, I'll, I'll put that out there for a suggestion. There's a lot of work within that.
Yes.
That item. And it deserves the same level, if not more, attention than the last item.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I'll just put that out there to, to all of you.
Hundred percent agree.
Yeah, I agree. It really, this, this one is, it's a big.
I'm good with either. What, I mean, would we be going another hour and a half? I'm good to go to midnight.
Well, we have, we have a lot of public comments on this, I think.
We have seventeen items, I do know there are members right now that are watching this meeting, that have submitted comments. That's just factual information, so it's completely up to the council.
Can we carry those comments over? Can we carry those comments, same comments over to two weeks?
Yeah, absolutely, if the council chooses.
Yeah, we can do.
Maybe we could schedule a special meeting for Tuesday.
Yes, and then we could.
I just, I don't know, I'm on the fence on this one.
Yeah, me too.
A lot of people have been waiting.
People are tuning in, and if it's a, I don't know, you know, I kind of like to hear it.
Our staff has worked very hard on this, and it was a great collaboration, so it's up to you. Either way, whatever, we need a consensus though.
Yeah, I hate to, I mean, we spent a lot of time on this one, and it was, you know, talking about a street, this is, you know, talking about a much, much different issue. And I think it's gonna be a fairly robust discussion potentially.
It's only ten thirty, I'm just getting started.
So.
Well, I'm okay if we move forward. Matt, I hear ya, I think though, there's an expedience to this. I think everybody's looking forward, a lot of people are looking forward to this.
I don't want people to have stayed up this late just for this item, and then to not have it. And they, because they have that expectation, so I'm good.
Fair enough.
If, if I knew we may have delayed the next item, I would acquiesce sooner.
Yeah, I mean, come on! So we have consensus to keep going, do I need a motion to extend?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend until eleven thirty, is that what it is? Yeah, because I can see eleven thirty, and then we'll go from there.
You want to take a little break?
I go either way, a breaks.
I'd like to take a little break.
Yeah.
Just a tiny break.
So we'll go ahead and recess for five minutes, Madam Mayor Protem, which will allow everyone to.
Take a little break.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Check, 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 there we go. All right, moving on to item number twelve. Receive report on race and equity efforts and provide general direction regarding the same. Recommendation is that city council receive the report on race and equity efforts and provide general direction regarding the same. Okay, so who's gonna do the staff report?
Madam Mayor Protem, we have the city manager on the line who will provide an introduction to this item.
Hi Erin.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. This item tonight is a result of the city council discussion and the request that took place at the city council meeting on June ninth. Since the horrific death of George Floyd on May twenty-fifth, our country, our state, Riverside County, and the city of Temecula have been stirred by organized and peaceful protests and challenging conversations about systemic racism and equality. All of this under a national movement calling for change. For me personally, the difficult conversations of racism, equality in America transcends beyond just my family, my home, my friends, my church, but of course, has become a very important conversation amongst my colleagues here at work and with other community leaders in Temecula. I have attempted to do a great deal more listening than talking on the subject, and I have admittedly learned a lot. I've been educated in many areas on black history, and I've undergone a great amount of introspection in the process. I realize now, more than ever, I understand that I don't understand. A socially complex and divisive issue such as race and equity has not routinely found a place in the conversations of local government. However, that is changing every day throughout the country and within large, medium, and small companies. I am grateful and I applaud the city council for your will and courage and desire to discuss the subject this evening and entertaining fundamental ideas of change that each of you have shared with myself and the team. In my role as city manager, we have spent the last four weeks discussing race and equity and where we fit in as an employer and an organization particularly sensitive to a workplace culture. As a result of this, I am pleased we are making strides that will involve movement toward continuing education geared toward us as public employees and appropriately relevant to the workplace. This program is yet to be final, but is envisioned to be administered by a professional and outside individual that is trained and skilled in this subject area. As each of you know, we have had a great deal of meaningful conversations with each of you, one at a time, mindful of the Brown Act, in preparing this agenda item this evening. Tonight, however, represents our first opportunity to allow the city council to engage in a meaningful dialogue, expand upon your previously shared ideas, and provide direction to myself and the team on actionable items you want to see going forward. At this time, I will have Randy provide an account of each of the items we heard from each of you outlined in the staff report and organized in a fashion and modeled after the National League of Cities and the Race Equity and Leadership Program for REAL. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that impactful introduction. Madam Mayor Protem, city council members, tonight, it is my pleasure to present this report to you, it really is. So we want to go ahead and give you a brief little moment here to lay the foundation. We recognize it is late, but we will dedicate the appropriate time to this so that you can have the appropriate consideration as well. So we want to take a moment to lay the foundation for how we found ourselves here in this moment tonight, considering this agenda item. On May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, George Floyd, a forty-six-year-old unarmed black man, was killed after being arrested by police in Minneapolis, Minnesota for possessing a counterfeit twenty-dollar bill. The nation watched in horror as video footage showed the police officer kneeling on Mr. Floyd's neck for approximately eight minutes, while Mr. Floyd was repeatedly heard saying, "I can't breathe." The deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, Stephon Clark, Lando Castile, Tamir Rice, Michael Brown, Eric Garner, Trayvon Martin, and many, many more have led to nationwide protests and demands for police reform. For days, weeks, months, and years, the nation and state has repeatedly seen civil unrest in response to these incidents. Temecula, like other cities throughout this nation, is not immune from challenges associated with racism, and also experienced community protests. The local protests over the last several weeks shined a light on that which was always present here, even if it wasn't overt. Members of our community have shared their personal stories, their discriminatory experiences, and their powerful voices in an effort to be heard and to be seen. Many of these voices are being shared for the very first time by our residents. Many have stopped to take notice, to see and to hear. Social justice organizations and legislators across the spectrum are renewing their efforts to examine the issues of systemic racism in this country. Corporations and institutions are examining their own unconscious bias to understand where they fit into this narrative. Various chapters of Black Lives Matter are organizing community protests and meeting in their own cities. Our own friends and family are discussing race and equity at our backyard barbecues and at our dinner tables. These important conversations are happening everywhere, and they're happening here in the city of Temecula. Locally in Temecula, the city council is also listening and learning. A few preliminary meetings were held immediately following the George Floyd incident and the resignation of a former council member with protest and faith-based leaders. Several additional requests for meetings from individuals and organizations have also come in, and we will be seeking direction from you on those later in the report. Based on their one-way comments at two subsequent council meetings, you as the city council expressed a strong desire to address the needs of the community and to effectuate actual change, and not just some sort of a performative response. Since they all wanted to be equally engaged in this important conversation, staff proceeded with two rounds of individual meetings with each council member at which you could share your general thoughts and ideas on bringing about meaningful change. Due to the Brown Act, which is codified in the government code, however, consensus can only be built in a public meeting. This agenda item tonight, which includes various ideas and opportunities suggested by individual council members and community members, is being brought forward to you tonight to gain this consensus in this public meeting. As seen in the report, there are many thoughts and ideas to move forward in this space. The big caveat that we are moving forward under is this is a conceptual list of ideas and consensus, for consensus building pursuant to the Brown Act. Details and final approval on certain items is subject to final council approval at future city council meetings. When staff met individually with each council, there was common ground and an organic overlap of ideas and thoughts. As our illustrious assistant city manager has observed during multiple staff meetings, with the exception of a few items, the broader ideas and concepts appeared to fall into buckets, so to speak. There was an internal bucket, an external bucket, and an ongoing sustainable bucket. And those three buckets also appeared to align with the principles of the REAL initiative. As the city manager stated earlier, REAL stands for Race, Equity, and Leadership. And please note, just like in Hamilton, the comma counts. The comma after race making it a standalone from equity, it matters. The National League of Cities, of which Temecula is an existing member, created the REAL program in two thousand fourteen in response to the Ferguson, Missouri unrest and in response to requests from member cities across this nation to help them in this space. REAL is designed to strengthen the knowledge of local leaders to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial divisions, and build more equitable communities. The three general principles associated with REAL are to normalize conversations. The broader concept for this step is to not only speak about race and equity openly in different settings, but to develop a shared understanding of common definitions and layer foundation. Although not exclusively, this step aligns more with the internal focus. Operationalize actions. The broader concept for this step is to develop tools that will drive results to close the equity gap. Data is absolutely crucial in this step to help identify strategies to yield desired outcomes. Again, although not exclusively, this step aligns more with an external focus. Organize sustainable effort. The final concept for this step is to develop capacity for staff and council to work intentionally on equity within the organization through structure, through policies, through procedures, on an ongoing and sustainable basis. And this is the step that more aligns, again, although not exclusively, with systemic changes in organizations. While numerous individuals and groups from the community have offered assistance for education and other services, individual council members were desirers of using a neutral third-party professional that had a demonstrated record of working with cities on race and equity issues. Again, the following ideas and opportunities represent a basic dialogue of the city council and community members to date. It is not meant to be an exhaustive list of solutions to the various challenges before us. It is a starting point for discussion and consensus building. As additional ideas and opportunities are brought forward, they too will be brought back to the city council for additional consideration and consensus. So we'll now proceed with a collective review of the ideas themselves, and after public comments, again, we have seventeen, we will come back to these ideas to review one at a time to obtain your collective consensus and direction. So phase one in normalizing the conversation, general concept, the first general concept is broadly city council engagement and involvement. Each council member equally engaged and involved, Brown Act applies to internal and external meetings. The item for direction when we come back after public comments will be your consensus on how to handle external meeting requests. The next idea is the resolution supporting unity and racial equity. There's, this is a public declaration supporting unity and denouncing hate and racism, similar to other cities throughout the state and throughout the nation that have taken this step. The item for direction will be consensus on researching and creating such a resolution and returning to council for final approval. The next idea is professional diversity equity training, and this is for internal purposes. The general concept is to contract with NLC or other professional to provide diversity, inclusion, unconscious bias, race, and equity training for council, commissions, and employees. And the consensus item for this idea will be to basically provide consensus on moving forward with contracting and administering professional development. Professional media relations training, again, internal focus. Contract with professional firm to provide public communications and media training to city council and executive staff. Again, the consensus will be to go ahead and contract and administer the professional development. The next idea is communication with law enforcement, and this is the initial. We know we're gonna have, in multiple phases, ongoing communication with law enforcement, but this is really the first step to really understand and engage in conversations with the RSO as our contracting agency for public safety services, understanding their policies for hiring, training, community policing, and opportunities for improved communication specifically as it relates to incident awareness and community integration. The specific item for consensus is to go ahead and proceed with conversations at either the council levels and/or executive staff levels on these engagements. The next idea is communication with the community. Again, this is initial, phase one. This is really the opportunity for one-way listening and learning from the community by attending educational events, meetings organized by community groups. As we know, there are several community groups out there, you guys are seeing the emails as well, that have various events going on, whether it's NAACP, whether it's Temecula Unity, whether it's some of the other individuals, Empowerment Center, that have reached out to us. There is a lot of those opportunities for one-way listening and learning. And the consensus item here will be consensus on receiving and sharing invitations for all and understanding the purpose of the attendance, and then what follow-up will be required from the attendance at these meetings. Phase two, now we're moving into phase two. So this is phase one, after we have received that internal professional development and laid that foundation, moving into phase two, and we are operationalizing the action. And so the concept, the broader idea here that was mentioned was a diversity or equity board or commission. The general concept is the creation of a citizen board or commission to advertise, to advise council on matters of diversity, inclusion, race, equity. The group could also be utilized for redistricting purposes as well. And the process for creation could be similar to the existing board and commissions, and selection could be at-large or by district. As you know, all of our boards and commissions currently go through an application process online, and the concept could be, we can go ahead and solicit the applications by district, or we could solicit them at-large, and you could appoint by district, or you could appoint at-large. But of course, we would utilize an application process similar to all of our existing boards and commissions, as we have them now. The item for direction here would be consensus on the creation of a board or commission, the timing for said creation, and your preferred application or selection process. Of course, we would return to council for final approval on this as well. One important note on this is, per local and state law, the city council does have broad authority to go ahead and appoint any boards, committees, or commissions it so chooses and it deems necessary. But it alone, the city council retains its legislative authority, so something to consider. Phase two, continued, operationalize the action. We talked about professional assistance for community dialogue. So here, it's really about contracting with NLC or other professional outlet to help us facilitate conversations on diversity, inclusion, race, and equity within the community, whether that is actual facilitation onsite, or whether that is giving the city the tools to help conduct such communication, that is the concept here. And the item for direction is whether you would like to proceed with contracting for such assistance. Phase two, communication with the community. This is really where we come into opportunities for two-way dialogue between the city, law enforcement, and community on topics of race, equity, diversity. And this is where we could consider small group gatherings, homeowners associations gatherings, coffee with council members in specific districts. gatherings, coffee with council members in specific districts. And the consensus item here would really be on how you would like to go ahead and have such dialogue and preferred forums. The next idea was communication with law enforcement on an ongoing basis. And this is really the conversations with RSO to build stronger community policing model based on overall needs of the city, the business community, and the residents. Several community members in the council had also mentioned partnering with the school district on these types of communications. So the consensus here would be, again, on how you would like to proceed with those types of communications and what kind of routine updates you would like to receive. Also, the city council protocol manual. Creation of a city council protocol manual, similar to other cities, but specialized for Temecula for orientation, education, and accountability purposes. Content could include rules of decorum, code of ethics, standards for communication. And as previously discussed, these are city council protocol manuals are commonplace in other cities throughout, not only the state of California, but other nations, other states in the nation. So we could definitely do our research there and get some models. And the consensus would be on whether you would like us to proceed with researching and creating such a manual. And then, of course, it would return to council for final approval. And then also finally in Phase Two, we would be looking at our internal citywide policies and programs. And this is more for the executive team with broader council oversight, for us to review our own citywide policies and programs, such as the boards and commissions appointment process, to determine where there might be more opportunities for diversity and inclusion of underrepresented community populations. And the consensus would be to receive your go-ahead on reviewing and adjusting the policies and programs on a department-by-department basis and where needed to return to council for final approval. The last phase, there are only two items, but perhaps they are the most impactful and they will take the longest to get to. This is, these two items really go at the heart of the systemic change. So the first concept was definitely to have a refreshed budget process with the ability for additional public engagement, utilizing new outreach methods, and internal council and department consideration for spending priorities based on the needs of the underrepresented community population. And the item for direction on this is consensus on proceeding with a refreshed budget process for future budgets. And then lastly, the Quality of Life Master Plan. As you know, currently, we have six values listed in the Quality of Life Master Plan. That particular process we will be undergoing in the near future. And the addition of an equity value to demonstrate the city's commitment to equity for residents of all racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds. The addition of an overarching diversity and inclusion value could also be considered. This is extremely important because these values are directly tied to our annual departmental goals, and these values are directly tied to our general plan, to our budget. Everything goes back to the Quality of Life Master Plan. So the addition of a value here would be for the long haul and systemic, for sure. And the item for direction would be consensus on going ahead and adding these two values to the QLMP during the renewed QLMP process, which will be handled, I believe, through Luke Shop. So that brings us to our recommendation. And what we're looking to do here is with this report, we're happy to answer any questions that the city council may have. We will then go ahead and read these comments into the record. And then we would like to go ahead and go back to each idea and just get the council's consensus and direction. And then you can go ahead and give us any other additional direction, and then we will take one final motion for approval. So Madam Mayor Potem, that concludes staff's report. Erin, I and of course, the full executive team are always available to answer any questions you may have, as what is presented here is a team effort and will be a team effort that crosses multiple departments.
Well, thank you, Madam City Clerk. It looks very, it looks comprehensive. It looks like that many things were taken into consideration, not only what council members said, but what we've learned and heard from the community, and also some things that we've seen other cities do that have been successful. So are there any questions? No? Okay. So do we have any public comments? I know we do.
We do, we do. We have seventeen comments. So at this time, they do have five minutes, but none of them will take the five minutes. So I'll just go ahead and start reading them as I did earlier. The first comment is from Camari Divalos. Hi, my name is Camari Divalos. I am a resident of Temecula as well as a tribal member of Pachanga. I am writing to ask you to address how you will choose appointees for the Diversity Commission currently in planning. I believe that an open application process made to choose appointees from the entire city would benefit our community rather than a handpicked appointee chosen by each council member. This would ensure that the widest possible net could be cast to secure the most independent and diverse appointee possible. Further, it would be in line with the city's plan to address racism and equality by fairly allowing people of diverse ancestries and backgrounds to fulfill this important position. I also suggest holding a public election or voting process for the appointments in which all Temecula residents would have a say in determining who sits on this commission. This would ensure true democracy as well as creating transparency within our local government. I hope I have given you something to think about. The next comment is Missy Kaiser. I am writing to ask you to address how you will choose appointees for the Diversity Commission that is currently in its planning stages. As a long-term resident of the beautiful Temecula area, I am certainly pleased to hear that the city is planning to address issues of racism and equality in our city. A diversity commission would be a great start, but I strongly believe that it would be more beneficial to the community if an open application process was made to solicit appointees from the entire city rather than having a handpicked appointee chosen by each council member or per district. An open application process would ensure that our city can secure the most diverse appointees possible, appointees who are directly involved in our city and its communities. I also ask that you hold a public election or voting process for the Diversity Commission appointments in which all residents of Temecula have a voice in determining who sits on the commission. With this public election or voting process, we can ensure that the commission is chosen by the community for the community. Without these measures, the commission could fail to be considered an independent body that serves the need of all Temeculans. The next comment is by Alicia Wilkins. My name is Alicia Wilkins. My family and I have lived here in the city of Temecula for seventeen years. I am also the owner of a brick-and-mortar establishment called Hera Hub located in Temecula's Business District. As a long-term resident and now business owner who recently found my town in the national spotlight, it was important for me to review this report with a critical eye. In doing so, I was proud to discover my city's initial report went beyond mere window dressing and symbolism of equity. The report has suggested actionable steps with a mind towards sustainability of these efforts. Given my background as a scientist and advocate, I was particularly pleased to see thought given to data collection and the formation of a citizens' commission. I am in support of the recommendations in this report submitted by our city manager to city council. They serve as an illustration of us moving forward as a city. The next speaker is Emily Carrion. My name is Emily Carrion, and I am a resident of Temecula. I am once again calling on our city council members to propose and implement a robust plan for protecting Temecula residents from police violence. The plan described in the report on race and equity efforts is far from robust. It outlines a series of individual-level solutions that will do nothing to address system-wide racism in Temecula. As one example, the report proposes diversity trainings for city council members and staff. This solution assumes that changing individuals will end racism. This assumption is incorrect. Racism is not simply a characteristic of individuals. It also exists outside of individuals and organizations, institutions, and systems. The quickest and most effective way to deal with systemic racism is to change the systems. None of the solutions in the report do this. The most impactful system-wide change city council members can take is to reallocate Temecula's police budget. Including both general budget and Measure S funds, Temecula spent $38.5 million contracting with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department this fiscal year. Research consistently shows that Black people are subject to overpolicing, police harassment, and police violence. In other words, policing makes Black people feel less safe. When Temecula spends forty-four percent of our budget on police, city council members send a clear signal to Black Temecula residents that their health and safety is not a priority. The city of Temecula must reduce its policing budget and reallocate funds to services that would benefit Black Temecula residents, including mental health services, housing, and education. As it is written now, the report only pays lip service to racial equity. The proposed board or commission has no power or funding. Moreover, board members are to be appointed by city council members. Why should we trust the city council members to appoint people who understand and appreciate the gravity of racism when former city council member James Stewart insisted that racism was a non-issue in our city? Or when this report illustrates the current city council members do not understand how racism is embedded into our city systems and institutions? I demand our council members stop paying lip service to racial equity and instead take decisive action. They must immediately address the racism built into Temecula's budget priorities. The next speaker is Christine O'Neill. These comments are for the city council meeting of July fourteenth, 2020. Please read them to the city council. We support law enforcement and public safety, and we do not want these budget cuts. Also, we do not want Planned Parenthood in our city. We are thirty-year Temecula homeowners, teachers, and people of faith. Thank you. The next speaker is Jose Velasquez. We thank you for all the hard work, commitment, and love that you have for our city. We feel blessed to live in such an outstanding community with such outstanding leaders. My name is Jose Velasquez, and I am the senior pastor of Citywide Mosaic Church. Citywide Mosaic Church currently meets down the street from Temecula City Hall at the Temecula Stampede on Sunday mornings. Besides regular Sunday morning church services, Citywide Mosaic also provides toy distribution, back-to-school supplies, and weekly food distribution for local families in need. In addition to pastoring, I work for a Fortune 500 company where I manage hundreds of people at locations across the country. In response to the recent race and equity tension that our country and city have recently experienced, I have formed a racially diverse committee of local citizens. This group has various professional backgrounds, such as retired corrections officers, retired corrections wardens, business owners, lawyers, higher education professionals, and pastors that represent multi-faith denominations and thousands of people in the Temecula Valley. We would love the opportunity to share suggestions, proactive measures, and talking points which have been drafted and are ready to present with the city council. The next speaker, it's a group email from Temecula Unity. We would like to introduce ourselves. We are members of Temecula Unity, a group of community members who are dedicated to equitable treatment and opportunity for all residents. We are an active organization that aims to make significant changes to help dismantle the systems of oppression within our community. We appreciate the efforts our city has made to advance the elimination of racial disparities and racial divisions, but we believe your consideration of the REAL initiative is an overzealous approach and that you can achieve these results by utilizing resources already available in the community, such as Temecula Unity, Equity in Action, and the Inner Faith Council of Marietta in Temecula Valley, to name a few. The reason this item is on the agenda is a direct result of a community call to action. This is why your residents should be at the forefront of future conversations. The council's goal is to develop capacity to work intentionally on equity within the organization through structured policies and processes in an ongoing and routine manner. You do not need to hire an outside facilitator to solve racial disparity and tensions when the resources and solutions are here in the local community. We invite you to engage directly with us without having to hire a third party. We are also concerned about the Phase Two proposal, which recommends that each city council member choose an appointee to the board or commission from their district. We suggest that an application process be used instead. It is of utmost importance that this body is composed of diverse experiences and backgrounds in order to be an effective sounding board for city council. Many members of Temecula Unity have experience in developing questions and selecting candidates for diversity and equity committees, and we would be willing to help guide you through the process. Our members include mental health professionals, educators, ethnic studies, anti-racist, anti-bias curriculum developers, retired law enforcement, youth advocacy experts, policymakers, and concerned mothers and fathers. We live here and are here inherently, and are inherently invested in our community. We are Temecula. It is clear that the plan proposed by the Temecula City Council is lacking the input of our diverse community. Please invite us to a seat at the table, and let's work to make Temecula a leader in equity, diversity, and social justice. The next comment is by Marion Grosner. Many students who have a reading disability such as dyslexia have an individualized education plan, IEP, at school and are in special education. The IEP is a legally binding agreement between the student and school. Families need to hire an attorney to get a reading program for their student. General education students, avid students, do not need to hire lawyers to get an education at TVUSD. They are supported to reach their full potential without involving lawyers or advocates. Unfortunately, many students at Temecula Valley USD who have IEPs are not receiving reading programs to close the reading achievement gap. Families hire lawyers and fight hard to get reading programs for their students. Low-income families can't hire an attorney, and their student with a reading disability such as dyslexia is pushed through school without reading at grade level. Amir Baraka is an African-American actor and dyslexia advocate. He grew up in New Orleans. He was called dumb and stupid by his own mom. He was humiliated in school because he couldn't read or spell. He spent time in prison. He learned to read and write in prison. The International Dyslexia Association stands in solidarity with Black Lives Matter. The International Dyslexia Association, IDA, has zero tolerance for racism and violence in all forms, and we are adamantly opposed to the social inequities that affect communities of color. We stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter and others denouncing these systemic injustices. We also know that making this declaration is not enough. IDA must examine and understand the complex and enduring factors that contribute to the recent tragedies that have taken place and reflect on how we can do more to help end them. Education is an essential pillar in achieving social justice. Now more than ever, IDA is committed to erasing the racial disparities that impede receiving the quality education all of our children deserve. Our mission is to advocate for and empower all struggling readers, particularly those with dyslexia. We can and will do more to ensure that all students get effective literacy instruction. We believe reading is a civil right and reaffirm our commitment to work until everyone can read regardless of socioeconomic status, ethnicity, or race. The next speaker is Dana Kizlatis. I am submitting public comments tonight about equity, Black Lives Matter, dyslexia, and how our Temecula taxpayer dollar intended for education that is wasted at Temecula Valley USD paying private law firms and who fight, not support, students with reading disabilities such as dyslexia. I became a non-related legal guardian to an African-American student when he was sixteen years old. I immediately hired an attorney. The student required a different reading program than what was offered at the school. He had a reading spelling disability. Temecula Valley USD has a history of litigation. Google, TVUD, City of Temecula, I believe that's TVUSD, City of Temecula Special Education Press Enterprise. To date, TVUSD continues to litigate using our taxpayer dollar. Families have left TVUSD because of their special education department. During the one and a half years, I was in meetings with students, attorney, and district attorney from Dannis Wolliver Kelly. District spent approximately $14,000 of our taxpayer dollar on attorney fees. I spent $10,000 using foster care benefits, our taxpayer dollar, to hire an attorney. This is a total of $24,000 of our taxpayer dollar, and the student was denied reading remediation. When the student turned eighteen during a meeting, the assistant principal and district's attorney denied student reading remediation. The assistant principal, who was in meetings from the start, was on the African-American parent council and the TVUSD equity team. Me and the student received a follow-up letter. That student is college career-ready, denying him reading remediation. The student once asked me, why do we have attorneys in our meetings? I told him that Rosa Parks had to get an attorney. I told him his situation is similar, and we need to hire an attorney and possibly go to court to get him a reading program that works. More than ever, I understand the Black Lives Movement. October 2019, me and Victoria Cog October two thousand and nineteen, me and Victoria Coghill were presented a proclamation for dyslexia awareness by James Stewart, city council member. He told us that he had dyslexia and how he struggled. I cried when James Stewart announced in front of everybody that he was dyslexic. I felt that all my speaking out, I finally met somebody who can make a difference in our city with dyslexia. Me and Victoria spoke about the use of lawyers at TVUSD to fight, not support reading for students who learn differently. There is so much hypocrisy at TVUSD during the time I'm in meetings with lawyers being paid with our tax dollar, trying to get an African-American student the right reading program. The principal and assistant principal are supporting the African-American Parent Advisory Council attending equity meetings. Then there are the meaning, then there are the meaningless equity and equality statements. Black Lives Matter when everybody can read." I think this is a part of her comment as well. Thank you, Wendy Hausman, attorney, and Teresa Setzler, advocate for supporting African-American students at Shepperell High School, TVUSD. The next speaker is Skylar Temple. "Good evening, Mayor Protam Edwards, councilmen and staff. My name is Skylar Temple. We've gotten to know each other over the last many years, and I am ever thankful to have such a receptive council and team of city staff running our beautiful city. As a twenty-two-year resident of the city, I can say that this is one of the most important items that we will ever consider. I'd like to recognize the hard work put in by city staff to bring this item forward this evening and for the council giving good feedback, as noted by the city clerk in her report. It fills me with pride that our city, the City of Temecula, will be leading this effort in our region. I have just a few thoughts to share on this item. First, the addition of an equity value and the Quality of Life Master Plan cannot be understated. I am heavily in favor of this addition and hope that staff and the council utilize this addition to guide the budget process and vision and mission of the City of Temecula. Second, a new border commission charged with advising the council on matters of diversity, inclusion, race, and equity is very much needed in Temecula. I am in favor of this body also being charged with the duties of a redistricting commission, as this body would ideally represent the many walks of life here in Temecula. I ask the council to carefully consider how the composition of this body will be created. Considerations like five or seven or more people, like gender balancing, the body, the body between self-identified females and self-identified males or non-binary individuals should be included without conditions. The selection process should follow the current application process for boards and commissions. I would also like for the council to consider other factors when making selections to this body, those being of race, sexual orientation, economic status, and geographic location. This body needs to be diverse if the new border commission is to be successful with its goals to advise council on matters of diversity, race, and equity. Lastly, a note for people listening that may not like or understand what this means going forward. I know Temecula in your eyes may not look like the way you're used to. You may be angry that our former mayor resigned over what you believe to be an honest mistake and that the media was out to get him. When you're elected to lead and represent a community, you represent more than yourself. You're held to a higher standard and should be held accountable for your actions. No matter how you equivocate or attempt to justify, it comes across as defending the hateful words that were said. Utilize this new border commission as one way of starting conversations with those that you don't understand so that in understanding each other, we can develop positive relationships in the community. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to this big step in the right direction going forward." The next speaker is Ira Robinson. "In connection with item twelve on tonight's agenda, I am writing primarily to commend the council and staff on getting off to a good and promising start on what will surely be a challenging and potentially rewarding journey. My most serious inclination at this early point is to simply suggest that the council make every effort to assure that all boards and commissions, including a timely-appointed Citizens Redistricting Commission and all advisory training and other related activities, include adequate numbers of residents and professional personnel from underrepresented minority populations. I believe that doing so will make it possible for the city to realize maximum benefit from the real-life experiences of its own citizens. In short, if those who have that experience are not at the table, there, there may be little point in sitting down. Thank you for the opportunity to present these thoughts." The next comment is Julie Geary. "Members of Temecula City Council, my name is Julie Geary, and I am a member of Temecula Unity. I have lived in this valley since nineteen ninety-seven. I am writing today in regards to the adoption of the REAL Initiative and Diversity Committee. I am thrilled that the city council wants to work to improve race relations and diversity in the community, in the community. However, the REAL Initiative is not the way to go about bringing positive change to the community. This program is expensive and uses outside facilitators that are not experienced or versed in local concerns. It would be fiscally smart and more favorable to utilize the resources right here in the community to help with this task. Temecula is a diverse city and has many experienced individuals that would help with anti-racism and anti-bias training, mental health and trauma education, and to be a sounding board for diverse perspectives and viewpoints. I am afraid that adopting the REAL Initiative is a means of distancing yourselves from the work that needs to be done. Hiring someone else to clean up your mess rather than inviting the community to work with you is deplorable. Another concern I have is, and now the diversity board will be appointed. This council doesn't have a good track record in being on the forefront of equity or diversity relations. The Quality of Life Master Plan two thousand and thirty was a twenty-year city master plan created in two thousand and ten by some members that still sit on the city council today. The document did not include a single person of color in its seventy-six pages. Every photograph was of a white individual. It also didn't mention diverse racial demographics in the document. Rather, it talked about differences between aging baby boomers, Gen X, Generation X, and millennials, and talked about having more local choices for community colleges and universities. Being color-blind to different culture erases away people's unique experiences and perspectives and is disrespectful. How can we trust city council to make thoughtful appointments when they've missed the mark so many times? Instead, I would like to see an application where individuals could apply to be members of the board. This will ensure a truly diverse panel with different voices from around the city. Many members of Temecula Unity have experience on creating applications and selecting candidates for diversity boards, and we would love to help out the city. It is clear that the plan proposed by the Temecula City Council is lacking the input of our diverse community. Please invite us to a seat at the table, and let's work to make Temecula a leader in equity, diversity, and social justice." The next comment is by Lana Salier. "I am an ally of Temecula Unity. As a thirty-one-year Temecula resident, I have grave concerns about council members selecting appointees to the commission board from their district. I would encourage an open application process. Also, the questions asked and elicited from the applications is very important. We need individuals, parents, grandparents, young people who will bring to the table passion with personal firsthand experience and knowledge. We need individuals who work on the front lines. We do not need to spend a lot of money as we have the resources right here in our backyard. Resources such as college professors who teach on racial policing policies, inequalities, and discrimination pertaining to religion, ethnicity, sexual identity. We have teachers, counselors, interfaith groups, PFLAG, A New Path, San Diego Years of Advocacy for Addicts and Families, Do No Harm, other cities who have private citizens on their local police commissions, Jane Elliott, who is an American diversity educator who resides part of the year in our own neighborhood. The list of potentials are endless. Talk to parents and teachers who have observed and interacted with some of our school resource officers. I have cringed by some of the dialogue I have heard from a trained resource officer. I have a firsthand, I have a firsthand experience from years ago that put our son at risk. I have observed segments of our citizens that have remained very proactive, I'm sorry, very protective of the status quo of how they wish or perceive Temecula is and should remain. There is this element of almost extreme niativity in some of our citizens that is dangerous. Temecula Talk and other such groups blatantly display misinformed and venomous verbiage. I love Temecula, and I believe we are better than this sort of behavior and display of lack of information and regard for others. A few years back, we had a city council member who thought PTSD was a term only used for veterans. We had a previous mayor who stated a few times, as far as the virus was concerned, that Temecula was not like L.A., such a cavalier statement. I do not think the virus got that memo. I believe our citizens deserve a commission that has grit and is willing to peel the layers of the good, the bad, and the ugly. A commission with integrity and substance. Knowledge is power. I have great hope for our city and our community." The next speaker is Robert Bryant. "After reviewing the recommendation report, I, as a Temecula resident and a person of color, have concerns regarding the recommendations. I am pleased to see that the city is aware of the current issues regarding discrimination and racism within the country. I am also very pleased that the city has desires to see change within the city in regards to these issues. I have been on the front lines of peaceful protest and peaceful community forums within the city. I've talked to countless residents of color, and I've personally met with current and past council members discussing these issues as well as solution efforts. It has been very clear in all my efforts that my understanding of the culture within the City of Temecula is very biased. A quote highlighted in the City of Temecula's Quality of Life Master Plan two thousand and thirty guide states it best on page thirteen and fourteen. What used to be white flight to the suburbs is turning into bright flight. To have what's been historic in the City of Temecula as for leadership, majority white, to have the ability to handpick anyone whom they deem fit for a role to represent the minority community in a commission is very troublesome to me. To care but not care enough, to design and create the city's own commission, especially after hearing the voices of the community, is very troublesome to me. The City of Temecula unfortunately has a bright stain. We are not only known for our great wine country. If real solutions are not made and not involving our true minority community leaders, that stain will continue, continue to shine brighter than any wine location or big balloon in the sky. As a proud member of the Temecula Unity Group, please allow us to serve our community. Please consider our participation and requests. I like living in this city. However, I and so many others would love to be living in this city and knowing that the city loves us just the same. Thank you for your time, and your time in reading my heart."
City Clerk. Let's come to twelve?
Sure, I'd say, I'd say twelve-thirty, just to be on the same side.
Okay, twelve-thirty, I got a.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The next speaker is Ashley Kling Smith. "This letter is a call to action stemming from the current civil rights movement taking place in our city, nation, and all over the world. I am also a member of Temecula Unity and would like to see our city express its diversity. I stand with the statement that was sent as a group regarding the topic of a diversity committee or council. The need for one is imminent, however, the approach is weak. The real proposal is flawed in that it would outsource a facilitator when there are plenty of community members whom are skilled, experienced in the necessary subjects, and willing to provide their services. The allocation of funding would be better well-spent investing money back into the community. It would be advantageous to include members of the community in the selection process as well, not the biased approach of an appointee selected by the Temecula City Council itself. An application process would better serve the city, so it truly can be a diverse council with the city's best interests in mind. Temecula City Council, as it stands today, is not a diverse council or representative of our city. I hope that the future of Temecula will include the Diversity Council with members of the community who have been appointed according to qualification, where both Temecula City Council and the Diversity Council can coexist and thrive together to make our community a leader in equity." The next speaker is Tim McDonald. "I have resided in Temecula since nineteen eighty-nine. Over the past thirty years, I've seen tremendous growth and witnessed great change in both the population size and demographics of this city. Unfortunately, I am not seeing the change being appropriately acknowledged or represented by city leadership. By considering adopting the REAL Initiative, you seem to at least be acknowledging that there is work to do to make this city a more comfortable place for those that have been discriminated against. I am afraid, though, that you are missing the point. The initiative comes off as a way of just applying a Band-Aid or checking a box to show that you are at least doing something. I am disappointed that you have denied requests for help from trained community members on how to be more inclusive to all the city's residents and visitors. There are many talented local residents who are trained and educated in these matters that have offered you help in creating a diversity committee. You have, you have denied or ignored these requests. One citizen got a response explaining that's just not how we do things here. I think that might be the problem, though. The way that city leadership has been doing things hasn't been working. Maybe it's time to try a new way. I hope that the city council can work hard to change the reputation that they have earned of being distant or unwelcoming to ideas. I have been embarrassed on many occasions to tell people where I live. The city has a reputation in the surrounding areas as being a location that is unfriendly to historically marginalized groups. It's time that we all work to change that, and I hope your future decisions will keep these concerns in mind." The next speaker is Martha Howard. "I want to recommend race, equity, and leadership real core principles as follows. Number one, normalize the conversation by recruiting and accepting out-of-your-circle commissioners and volunteers. Number two, operationalize action by forming a diverse citizens' commission. Number three, organize sustainable effort by actively participating and engaging in community outreach with our local organizations such as Interfaith Council, the League of Women Voters, the League of Latina American Citizens, LULAC, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, LGBTQ Community Liaison, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer. I firmly believe that personal interaction is of greater benefit than contracting, than contracting professional firms with consultants who can't relate to our personal experiences. Similarly, I'm hopeful that discussion of item twelve, race and equity, will be taken seriously and followed through and not just another great statement of the Temecula City, not just another great statement on the Temecula City Council agenda." And the last comment is from Christopher Baut. "Good evening, my name is Christopher Baut, and I am a twenty-one-year resident of the City of Temecula. There is growing yet unfounded resentment toward law enforcement nationwide. I urge that you do not listen to the fringe violent extreme sentiments currently being proliferated and facilitated by the media and leftist bureaucrats. I can tell you that me, my family, and every single person I know in my personal networks, neighborhood, employment, kid's school networks absolutely unequivocally supports our Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Anarchy and lawlessness and rampant crime might be okay for Seattle, Minneapolis, Los Angeles, but not for Temecula." Thank you. And Madam Mayor Protam, that is the conclusion of the public comments in this, on this item.
Let's do it.
All right, thank you. So, let's go back to the, do we need to go back to the plan, Randy? And get direction on the items?
Yeah, I mean, at this time, if we can get council general comments, or we can start going through the bullet points, your preference.
I say we just start going through the bullet points.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
The comments will come out of that if.
Yes, I agree.
So, if we can go ahead and.
Can I, can I just say one thing, just one, one thing real quick? It's important that everybody knows, and I think we're gonna reiterate, that I know each and every one of us separately with staff has spent several meetings and many hours. I know for myself, I've spent six hours over two meetings with staff. So, what is being presented tonight is a conglomeration of all of our comments that now we're gonna be able to talk about amongst ourselves. I know I'm being redundant, but it's very important that it doesn't give the appearance we're moving through these things. Many of these things are our own ideas. Thank you.
And, and Randy, didn't some of these ideas also come from other, you know, meetings that, like, we had with the NAACP and the BLM organizers and those folks as well?
Yes, we did have some very preliminary meetings immediately after the incident, as mentioned earlier. And some of these concepts and ideas were received through that forum as well. And then, obviously, you guys have been getting emails, and so some of them, you'll see redundant ideas through that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we can go ahead and put up slide number ten, Chris. Awesome, thank you very much. So, this is Phase One, City Council Engagement Involvement, where we're looking for consensus on the first idea is how would you like us to handle requests for external meetings?
Well, let's, let's say first, right now, when we have requests for external meetings, they're usually divided up, you know, and, and given to, or the option given to members of a subcommittee sometimes, if it's something to do with that particular subcommittee, you know, material. Sometimes they request a particular meeting with the mayor. Sometimes they request a particular meeting with the mayor. So, other times, I think people request meetings with council members that they know, and so they might not meet with all of us, but they know us, so they meet with us. So, I think we're all over the map as far as how we meet with outside organizations now. But since everyone wants to be involved, how would you, would you like to each of us be included and then meetings scheduled when we have a request?
Probably the easiest way to do it. I mean, I think all our doors are always open, we're always happy to meet with folks and talk, so, you know, obviously, absent, you know, any Brown Act issues, I think, you know, you know, we're, we're all here to be able to meet and communicate with folks, not just in, you know, one-on-one meetings, but, you know, we're going to have plenty of workshops and plenty of forums and, and dialogue with the community as well. But I think it's, you know, anytime we've had a major issue, I know all of us will, you know, at some point, you know, meet with a lot of the same folks, and they can meet with all the councils, so I think that's, that's probably fair enough to handle it the way we've always done.
So, frame that in a policy, Councilmember Ron. The consensus is we'll continue to meet on this topic like we meet on any other topic.
Correct.
So, if the request comes for all council members, we will send it out to all council members, and we can go ahead and schedule those individual meetings. If the request comes for a particular council member, we will reach out to that particular council member only and facilitate the scheduling. And if it's multiple council members, if the request just comes as a general, we'll just treat it as, we'll send it to you all.
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
And, and of course, I.
The other way, the other way to, to sort of, if you go down that path of, of handling it that way, the end of, the council member that takes the particular meeting, certainly you're going to have a council meeting following that, that individual meeting and under council reports. You could keep your colleagues apprised of who you met with and what you guys discussed. So, there's kind of the sharing of information as we sort of pick through it, too.
And then by doing that, if anyone else, as a result of that, you know, comment, wants to meet with the same group or the same person, then we can. Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. So, we'll just do any follow-up from those meetings at under city council reports on future agendas.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. The next idea was the resolution supporting unity and racial equity, and we basically need consensus on, would you like us to proceed with researching and creating such a resolution? And return to you, this one would happen pretty quickly, as it is in Phase One, and as we know, SCAG just adopted their resolution last week, so if we could get consensus on that.
Yes, I think we should.
I would support that. I, I would ask that you include inclusion and define inclusion in that, and yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, and I'm speaking inclusion in general, but also inclusion as it relates to special needs. Just, I just wanted to be clear.
I think we're going to, I mean, special needs will be included.
I think so, too.
Yes.
And, and I, I don't.
Specifically.
I don't, good, I'm glad we said that, so you know that every time it comes up, I don't have to be redundant.
I just assumed it would.
Okay.
The next idea was the, the professional diversity and equity training or education, and this is the internal piece of it. So, if we could get some consensus from you on whether we should be proceeding with contracting with either NLC, of which we are members, or some other professional to provide this type of training for council commissions and employees.
Absolutely.
Quick, quick question on that. Is, if we were to just do an RFP on this, would, is that something that the NLC would, would participate in? Or, like, how, I mean, because you're saying consensus on contracting, administering training with NLC or other professional to provide, right? So, how do we, how do we?
Is it part of our membership with NLC?
It, it is. So, that's something to consider, and of course, I'll definitely let Mr. City Attorney weigh in if I am out of term here with respect to the RFP process. So, we are currently members of the National League of Cities. The REAL program is one of the benefits that we can take advantage of. It is offered, and obviously, we'll have to pay for additional costs and things like that for coming out or facilitating the training or whatever, but we wouldn't necessarily go through an RFP process on that. We already have an existing mechanism to engage in that space.
Well, and that's why I'm just saying, so, NLC slash other professional, why do we have that language there?
I don't, I don't know if they would submit a proposal or not. We would certainly encourage them to. The RFP process would, would be, I mean, we would cast a big net, we would have to use Planet Bids.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying necessarily we have to, I was just confused because contract with NLC or other professional. So, why, why are we saying other professional?
We're saying other professional in case you guys had ideas of somebody else you had a preference for contracting with, or you didn't want us to use NLC and you wanted us to use somebody else.
I see, I see. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm good working through NLC. I mean, you know, I think it's a service provided to cities, they've got a, you know, framework that was based off of Ferguson, you know, it's been used by a number of cities across the country to date.
Very diverse and inclusive.
You know, and, and I think it's, you know, look, I, I don't want, you know, based on some of the public comment, this isn't the only tool, right? This isn't the only conversation, and it isn't the only organization. It's just from a city perspective, it provides, they work with cities and city government, and they, they understand some of the, you know, both legal constraints that we're under and, and, and other issues, right? So, they have a specific perspective and expertise in this that I think advantages us, but it, you know, by no means, means that the League of Cities or the REAL program is the only thing we're using to guide us through this community conversation.
Councilmember Ron, that's, that's a good point. A couple of thoughts on that, and I, I like the, the notion of other professionals, and you mentioned an RFP, and I'm not necessarily saying to go down that route. The National League of Cities is heavily weighted with, with East Coast cities in that area, and, and capturing our own demographic in this process is going to be very important. So, when you create a program around, let's say Ferguson, or something, you know, again, in that, that eastern, northeastern region where a lot of turmoil, a lot of misunderstanding is going on, they have their own demographic, we have ours, and I want, I want to focus on our demographic. So, to, to that extent, I mean, we can use the NLC, I have no problem with that, but I also don't want it to be a cookie cutter, like, this is our guys, our, this, these are the guys we contract with, and then they come here with preconceived notions that don't apply to us.
Right.
So, how would we formulate that, or did I just formulate it?
You, yeah, so, just so that we're clear, NLC has utilized this particular program with over a hundred different cities across the entire nation, so West Coast and East Coast. And it was, the program is its own program, it has its own director, it has its own staff, and it's specifically tailored to each city's needs, understanding that each city's needs are going to be different. So, they will be giving us a proposal based on our needs of what we want.
So, if, if we can just ask for in that proposal, a scope that is tailored to our own needs, and then we can, the council will evaluate that, is that cool?
Sure.
All right, good.
Okay, so, the next one was professional media relations training, and this was to go ahead and contract with a professional firm to provide public communication and media training to the city council and executive staff. Again, we're members of the League of California Cities. At the League of California Cities, obviously, they're connected to several professional firms that specifically do media relations training. We can go ahead and utilize them as a resource to obtain a list of professionals, and then bring that back to council if there's anything there. We can attach resumes, we can do all of that, it's up to you guys.
Agreed.
And media training is kind of the same across the board.
Agreed.
Yeah, and these items, these two items are under Phase One, so we'll move more quickly than not on the Phase One items.
Okay.
Great.
Any other comments on that one? No? Good, okay. Okay, so, communication with law enforcement. So, this is really, we would like consensus from you for, to go ahead and you're good with us proceeding, specifically the city manager and whoever he deems necessary, to start meeting on a regular basis with the RSO, so that we can get a better understanding of what their existing hiring, training, community policing programs and policies are, so that we can answer those questions when we get those questions from the community, and also, the city manager can guide, improve communication for incident awareness. Mr. City Manager, I know you're on the line still. Is there anything else that we're looking for consensus on, on this one?
No, I think, I think you summed it up pretty well. Just looking for, again, consensus from the four of you that, that I can continue to reach out to the sheriff, work through the captain, and we did have a meeting scheduled with Sheriff Bianco. Unfortunately, we had to postpone that prior to this, to this council meeting, so I'm looking forward to, again, having that conversation, better understanding policy, and also better understanding what changes, if any, are being contemplated at the, at the sheriff's level. So, I'm, I'm willing to run lead on that and/or, you know, bring things back to the full city council as you deem appropriate as well.
If I may, Madam.
Yep, Mike.
I think that's, that's appropriate. That way, it funnels down from one source to all of us, and city manager should use our police captain at his discretion.
Agree.
And, and again, just wanted to emphasize, this is just initial, right? So, as we start the conversation with the community and we start, there's going to be other questions, other things that we'll want to be asking. So, this is just for us to get the basics started, to begin that process and the conversation, but it is just the first step in that.
Right.
Correct. Communication with law enforcement is also in Phase Two, and that's the ongoing piece. So, communication with the community, this is really, if we can get some consensus on how you would like us to receive and share invitations for the purposes of attendance at community events with all of you. So, obviously, there are various individuals and groups that are having a ton of events, right? So, we're, actually, today I got something from the NAACP. So, is your preference that even if it comes to one council member, the invitation goes out to all, so that everybody could be equally aware of an event? And again, the purpose of attendance at these events is simply to listen and learn, because we are still working on our own house to educate in Phase One. Or is it your preference that if we get an invitation, we only give it to the council member that it is addressed to?
If I may?
Go ahead.
I, I think it needs to go to everybody.
Yeah, I do, too.
But I also want to make a statement now, and I don't know how we communicate this, but I think it's important for the public who's listening to know, is every council member cannot attend every single event, and some may feel, I don't want any person who throws an event or decides to throw a community meeting or a talk session or what have you, to feel disenfranchised if one or more council members don't show up. I'll elaborate on that a little further. Many people do not know that in essence, we all hold full-time jobs, that, that being on the city council is, is a, well, it's a paid position, if you add up the hours, we probably pay to be on the city council when you add it up. And so, and so, a lot of it has to be meshed with our work obligations and also other obligations that we have to the community. So, I, I just want to mention that, because we'll, I, I know for myself, we get five, six invitations, I can't attend every single one, and I don't want to disenfranchise anybody, but I, you know, there was one held at the Blues Club and got that invitation, you know, the day before the meeting, and, and, you know, and so what do you do? And they were asking, but why isn't any other council member here?
See, I didn't even get, I don't think I even got one.
And I felt real bad, I actually watched it on YouTube, and I felt real bad that somebody'd have the impression that I just blew it off.
Yeah, I didn't even know about it.
Right. So, I'd like to attend everything, but that's not possible, and I think that goes for everybody.
Well, and some of us belong to, you know, various organizations, too, so.
And just, just going back to the text of that, I mean, under COVID environment, these, understandably, are going to be challenging for, for a time. So, you know, as much as we want to engage in this, and I know we all want to get to these listening sessions and public workshops and having those dialogues and, and meetings and all of that, there's a lot of constraints on us and, and, you know, anybody's ability, not just as a council, but in general, you know, ability to engage in this, and I, I don't think that should, you know, slow it down necessarily at all, but it, it's just one more constraint to that, you know, it's just unfortunate right now. So, you know, I think we're going to make every effort, and I think between all of us, we'll make every effort to participate in this, absolutely.
On another note, I would be happy to make a list of all the things that I attend now on a regular basis, you know, the organizations I belong to and things like the, you know, I mean, everything, Workforce Development Board and EDC meetings and, and all of those kinds of things, too, if you, you know, want to see.
Well, that may work for you. I, I may not be a member of that many organizations, but I, I have fewer that take more time. So, you know, I mean, it just, who knows? I, I would just say that I just wanted the community to know.
Well, mine take quite a bit of time, actually.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean it in that, in that way, just, you know, I just wanted the community to know that if we could, we would attend every single one.
Yeah.
But that's not possible, and I don't want somebody to think, and I know I'm speaking for everybody, that our non-attendance at something is because we don't believe in it or don't want to be there, but that we'll make every effort to go when we can. Yeah. So, you, I don't know how you write that in as a consensus, but.
We're, I think we're good. I think if we receive, and, and sometimes we don't receive an invitation either, so sometimes you guys will forward us the invitation, and then Luisa and I will coordinate as we need to, so we try to get it on everyone's calendars. So, so the consensus, what we are hearing right now is if we do receive such an invitation, we will go ahead and share it with everybody. We all understand that the purpose for that is, this is Phase One, so, for listening. And then the follow-up from the attendance, you just want to put it under city council reports as well, since you put the last one under city council reports.
And sometimes we've had meetings where, I know I couldn't attend, and I think, did I call you for, to see if you could go?
You have, and then I call Eric over there.
Yeah, if we can't go, then I think, you know, it's good to check and see if another, you know, one of us can go or a commissioner can go. Yeah, okay.
It's just important to note, too, that, you know, in this environment that you mentioned, you know, everything is available online, and so, we might not be there physically, but we are there mentally and spiritually, and we're, we're paying attention. So, to your point, if you're not there, it doesn't mean, you know, you're, you watched it on YouTube, so you participate.
And aren't you doing more Zoom meetings than you ever had regular meetings? I am. My gosh.
And also, as Dr. Ron mentioned, in a non-COVID environment, I can tell you, I know we all get a good three, four, five invitations a week to attend various things, and it's just not possible, even on other things other than this issue, to attend every issue, so. But this is important, and so I know that we'll be giving it a lot of attention in the near future, but again, didn't want the community to think we can come to everything all the time.
So, the, the next one is the creation of a diversity or equity board or commission. This is the first item in Phase Two. So, those other items we just talked about, that you can expect that those things will be coming back to you probably within the next couple of meetings. We just need to get some consensus on how to build something for your consideration in this space, so.
Well, many of the comments reflected that people thought we should use an application process, but we always use an application process, so.
We, we mentioned that in the presentation.
Yeah.
For every board, we have one board, three commissions currently, and an application process, which we actually made online last year, is utilized regardless. The, the consensus item really is, what is your, your consensus on urgency for the creation of this, and then what is your feeling on how you would like to, what's your preferred kind of selection process, so we can design the item?
Well, I, I would say form it immediately. I think we follow the same process that we follow when it comes to appointing our boards and commissions. I think it should be citywide, not focused on district. I think the question that we need to ask ourselves, are we looking at five members on this? Are we looking for a board who votes, in which case, it has to be an odd number? What, what are we looking for? What are, and, and we almost, right now, we only have a loose scope. We know that they may be looking at redistricting. What else is the board going to do? Make recommendations to the council? Is that the idea?
Yes, it, it will be, yeah.
And is that a, is that a, is that a voting thing by this board? Or is it a consensus board? When they. board? When they report to us that the board had the discussion and it was generally, you know, you know, agreed, what are we, what are we envisioning the board to do?
I mean, I think they can, I, I think it should be a vote. I think that's powerful, right? Like, that attaches something to it. You know, to kick this idea around tonight, you know, part of having a commission and really building in a system within the city was the idea that you can have this commission, but it could also, you would probably have to do two members to not make it an odd, make it an even number, but to have those other members sit on the other commissions we have in the city, right? So that every conversation, whether it's housing, whether it's community services, whether it's public safety, is you get that feedback immediately.
For equity and diversity.
Exactly. So that was just.
Explain that again, how you, what you just said.
So let's, let's say you have a seven-person commission, an equity, diversity, and inclusion commission. And community services commission has five members. All of, all the boards and commissions have five. You could appoint two members to sit on the planning commission, right? Or at least attend the meetings, so that while the planning commission is debating something, they would have input from the other commission just directly. And I think that works in a way that you, you immediately get feedback, and it sort of trickles down through the organization, because it's every department, it's every commission, it's just, just seeps down right into the core of who we are.
I want to ask once again, what, what do you anticipate? And, and I'm, I'm just speculating here. If you have a member of this equity inclusion commission attend a planning commission meeting, they, it's presumed they're not going to have planning commission knowledge. So they may proffer, a project may be being heard by the planning commission, and they may proffer an idea or something that has to do with race, equity, inclusion, that, that, that may not be able to be really considered. In other words, I'll give you an example, a planning commission and, you know, I, I think we ought to have more housing for Asians. I think we need to have more housing for, for the black community, or more housing that's affordable. And that's not in the purview of the planning commission. It, so what are we going to be asking that commission to weigh in on?
Well, I think that conversation can happen, but, but just like you said, we would say that's just not legal, let's say, or whatever.
Yeah.
But you'd get to a point where having that perspective is important, right? Like, having that perspective in a housing conversation or in a community services conversation or in public safety is important. So the idea in, in my head and, and when speaking to people in the community was to continue that conversation forward at that commission level.
How about if we reverse that? How about if, if notwithstanding our appointments, somebody from each one of those commissions are on that board?
Yeah.
That's just a thought.
Yeah.
There goes Dr. Ron. I see, I see the.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking of the logistics of all of this, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we want to, we want to create the, the collegiality among all our board and commission members, which we've really tried to foster, you know, over the years. But, but also the independence of the boards and commissions themselves too, right? So I, I, I think what, really what I'm hearing, Zach, what you're saying is, you know, if we have a planning commission or community services meeting, we would expect that somebody from the commission would be in attendance there to, and if appropriate, and it'll look, not every agenda is, you know, super exciting, and we may just be talking about a stop sign or something, right? So, you know, so not everything is, is going to lend itself to that conversation.
That's very exciting, Pat. Very exciting, Pat.
So, but, but to be able to be there and provide the, you know, the perspective as needed and vice versa, right? So it wouldn't, you know, as any, you know, diversity, equity, race commission is, is sitting down and having their meeting, we would also expect it'd be great if, you know, a representative from other, other boards and commissions could at least be in attendance to listen in on that conversation. And, you know, I mean, ideally, we'd have, you know, everybody, you know, showing up to these conversations, right?
Because we don't know what we don't know.
So how would you, how would you organize that? How do you see the?
Well, I'm not sure this agenda item asks for that, right? So can we go back to that item real quick?
Yeah, so actually, this, this is really the, we can bring back, when we bring this back for the creation, this will be one of the bullet points that we ask for your direction on, will be what is the purpose of the, the purpose and the mission of the commission?
Right.
So let's get a consensus now that, I would say, let's form it right away, and the applicants should be citywide, just to follow the same procedure we do for all the other boards and commissions.
Yeah, and, and just wanted to say one thing. I wrote down a note, there were a couple of comments that said, you know, well, you appoint the members, this is your commission. This isn't our commission.
Oh.
Right? I want that to be 100% clear. We're not appointing a commission for us. We're appointing a commission to represent the community, the city of Temecula, and, and foster a community-wide dialogue. It's not, it's not here to represent me, it's here to represent our city.
And to inform us.
You know, and so, so, but, but in saying that, I, you know, our, our process is fairly robust, we get all the applications. The big question in my mind is, how do you, how do you set the, the number, right? Are we, like, five members? I could tell you right now, I think a five-member commission is just not representative of the diversity of perspectives, let alone just the folks we've heard from this evening. I, I mean, I would expect that everybody who has, you know, submitted a comment should be submitting an application, right?
Yes, but by the same token, you don't want the commission that's so large that it's, you know, unwieldy, but you want, you want a broad spectrum.
But, but also, you know, in, in doing that, you also have to recognize too, there's an opportunity for each one of these organizations that's participating in this to, you know, do, do they say, you know, here, our recommendation is this member from our organization could serve on this board, and here's why, and this is the support? Because then they collectively can bring with them a lot of additional voices, you know, and so you're having this sort of, you know, magnification of the effect of, of, you know, communication.
So how, okay, and, 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 maybe now's not the time to have the conversation, but how many? And how do we go about picking a racial balance? I, I mean, okay, we got two blacks and Asian, who's gonna, how are we going to pick the white guy? I mean, how's that going to work? I, 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 I mean, are we going to say, well, we got already, you know, we, we, we need two more black people?
That just makes me uncomfortable.
How does that work without being?
Yeah.
Without being, without defeating the process of which we're trying to establish? I mean, how do you not focus on race when you're focusing on race?
Councilmember in a car.
How does that occur?
I, I actually have, if you would like, a suggestion. It's, as much as we would like to think we are on the leading edge of this, we are not. There are plenty of other cities out there that do have diversity and equity-related commissions. So if, so that we can move on to the rest of the points too, I want to make sure you guys have ample opportunity to discuss those too. When we bring the item back, we can bring our research back to you and say, okay, this is how other cities have set their diversity commissions up. In addition, our community that spoke tonight will also have ideas and suggestions for you
Right.
that we can go ahead and include in those recommendations as well. And remember, every single one of our commissions is a Brown Act body. The, every single one of their meetings must be public. So even if somebody doesn't make it onto the commission, it does not preclude them from actively engaging in this space. And we want that. And, and being on the record. We want that.
So I have a, I have a follow-up question. Is, are we envisioning this as a permanent city commission, much like our, our planning, traffic and safety and community services?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I think the recommendation tonight, and I think that's where a lot of the speakers were coming from, is the recommendation tonight isn't to establish the details on this, it is staffer, they're going to come back with, you know, here's how we could begin the formation of this. There's going to be plenty of public dialogue on how this gets formed and how it's done. This is just, we're just giving direction at this point to say, let's go ahead and start doing that.
Sounds good. Let's move on. I think you have the consensus.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you let me handle this.
I'm sorry. I want to make sure we get it in. I think one of our members has to get up very early in the morning.
So what, what number are we on now, Randy? I, I think we're good there. So the professional assistance for community dialogue, that was really, this could be a part of that scope with NLC.
Agreed.
And this does not necessarily mean that we would have NLC facilitate the actual discussion. This could mean that we are equipped to participate in the discussion and, and utilize internal facilitator, community facilitators, however we deem appropriate in the future. But it's really to get consensus from you on, are you okay with us going ahead and contracting with NLC or some other professional, so that we can get properly equipped to have this community dialogue?
Yes.
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 So we'll make this a part of the scope then.
Yes.
Communication with the community on an ongoing basis, this is where, again, phase two, this is where we're now starting to talk about two-way dialogue, right? So this is where we talked about diversity in small group gatherings, discussing, I'm sorry, race, equity, and diversity in small group gatherings, homeowner, homeowners associations, coffee with council members in particular districts. Obviously, this will happen a little bit later on down the road, like you guys had, had individually mentioned, some of you had. But we just want to make sure that you collectively are good with having two-way dialogues in, in phase two. Yes. And then we can bring back a menu of items of, did you want to do, you know, coffee with a council member in a district? Do you guys want to do HOAs? And that's when you guys can tell us, you know. This is about relationship building too. You know, it's information gathering, but it's definitely relationship building, I think.
And maybe it's a subcommittee at that point. If we're moving down this process, it's a thought, but I, I mean, if we're this far in the process, maybe at that point, a subcommittee and reporting back to the council. Anyway, I think, I think we're, we're good.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Communication with law enforcement. So this is where we really, after we have a, a general idea of what the current condition is currently with regards to their policies, their procedures, anything that they have planned, this is really that next level ongoing conversation. How can we, on an ongoing basis, engage with RSO to make sure that we are building and practicing the strongest community policing model that we, that is fitting of Temecula? There have been some ideas mentioned about community policing through HOAs or community policing in Old Town with folks visiting the businesses and developing more interpersonal relationships. And then there's also been some ideas about the school district and appropriately partnering with the school district, so that we can address racial tensions and equity together as full stakeholders. So.
I, I think this will come out of the commission, and I think we handle it, much like we handle any of these special things that come up. We, I mean, if, if, if out of the commission or in our communication with law enforcement, we find that there's, there's, there's not equal treatment, or there's some sort of profiling or something of that nature, then we start the dialogue on it, or we just start to look into it.
Great.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward with consensus, that this will be something that we'll give the commission to go ahead and undertake. Mr. City Manager, any additional comments on this, as it has directly, it's related to law enforcement?
Nothing further from me, no.
Okay. Next idea is the city council protocol manual. As, as discussed, several cities, especially those that are a little bit seasoned and older in age than Temecula at a young 30 years, have city council protocol manuals. And those city council protocol manuals include things like rules for decorum, code of ethics, standards for communication. It's basically an orientation and education and accountability tool for this, for the city council. There's not really an enforcement mechanism per se to it. It's really a declaration in writing of this is how the city council does business.
Right.
And this would be same thing. We're seeking consensus to go ahead and go out and research a couple of different models, and then bring this item back to you with maybe a draft city council policy manual and/or items for additional consideration.
I certainly.
Well, not to complicate it more than I'm sure it already will be, but I do know that in the last 31 years, you know, the city has, you know, the council has put, put its own policies in place. You know, I'm thinking specifically, one of those would, was, was, was put in place several years ago, far longer before my time, that, that basically said, you know, look, if you're going to, as a council member, propose an initiative or staff time that takes more than five hours.
That's true.
You know, look, anything beyond that's going to take council consensus.
Yes.
We've never run into that issue, because we're always very open with, you know, and, and we always say in our council comments or whatever, hey, I'd like to be able to do this. Can I get your consensus? And we say yes or no, right? So, so, but those little tidbits need to get woven back into that framework as well, just because there's been things that have, have occurred in the city that helped create some of our policies that we either knowingly or don't, you know, operate under. And then perhaps some of these things are a bit outdated at this point, given the dialogue we're having today. So it'd be nice to bring some of that into that conversation.
A lot of things that we do are unspoken, or, you know, not written, but it's the, the way we build consensus in public. You know, it's the way we like to leave the meeting, you know, all on the same page. And we've had to, you know, morph and compromise along the way. So, and that's not, those aren't spoken, but I think they're very good practices.
I'm so glad to hear you say, both of you say that, because when you, when you start to roll in rules of decorum and things you won't do and things you can't do, it has the ability to, to suck out the personal relationship of it all and the personal respect of it all. Well, I, I didn't do this, or I didn't violate that. Right now, I know that whenever I consider something, and frankly, I get it from you guys as well. I know you say, well, you know, what Mike's, what's Mike going to think? I want to get his support. Hey, I want to do this, you know, I got to get two other votes, and I certainly don't want to alienate, you know, the, the, you know, the third one or whatever. And so there's a, you just said, there's a relationship quality of it that we don't want to replace.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And we can discuss that when it comes back.
We don't operate in silos. As much as we don't violate the Brown Act, but we definitely don't operate in silos.
Exactly.
We're good?
Good.
All right, so we will bring that one back. Again, that's phase two, so it's going to take us time to bring that back. It won't be in the next couple of weeks. And then the next one was for us as executive directors to be able to, are you guys good with us reviewing and adjusting our internal policies and programs on a department-by-department basis, to go ahead and adjust for diversity and inclusion of underrepresented community population, and then return to council where appropriate, where, where needed? Yes. Because obviously, as we go through phase one and get some of this professional education, there might be opportunities for us to go ahead and see, hey, you know, we can, we can adjust the boards and commission recruitment policy further. Obviously, that's one that would come back to the city council.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And then phase three, last but certainly not least, the, we'll talk first about the budget. So is there some consensus on proceeding with a refreshed budget process? And for those of you that had their ideas on this particular item, if you guys want to share, because since we gathered ideas individually, you're, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, I'll jump in if that's okay.
Well, I, I think it is.
Well, I was looking over here and you were looking that way, and I was like, trying to get your attention. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll just try to briefly share my experiences with the budget process, and, and I know that these are well-established through Qual Life Master Plan and our general plan and whatnot. But, you know, coming on to the council a couple of years ago, quite frankly, the, the budget process was daunting. It was this, this, and I'll share this here, maybe everyone will find enjoyment in this. But I, I feel like you're running from the ball in Indiana Jones, the big boulder coming down, right? You're trying to impress your beliefs on that, the community's beliefs on that, and, and that is set in stone and literally by the master plans that we have. But I didn't feel like the, there was a lot of opportunity for the community to give feedback. And you see that when we have our budget hearings, where there's like one person that comes and they want, you know, one thing or something like that. Now, that could lead you down two paths. One is everybody's really, really happy with the way things are going, and there's no need to make any changes. Or maybe we're not reaching out into the community deep enough. to make any changes, or maybe we're not reaching out into the community deep enough to get some different opinions on, on funding and how we spend things. I think this item's the, the most important topic for long-term systemic change within the city. It's, it's your values, your, how you spend your money is, is at your core, your values. So, I think just a different process, and what that looks like, I'm not quite sure. But I think the more involvement on, on staff side, more involvement on the community side, if that's, you know, if that's smaller surets in the community, I'm sort of in favor of that, just a different look. I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong, it's just maybe we can do it differently. We've been doing it a certain way for a long time, and, and maybe this is the way everyone does it. I've only been to a few budget hearings, you know, and they're mostly here in the city of Temecula, so, maybe there's other ways to do it. And that's all I'm sort of looking at is are there other ways to do, allocate $70, $80 million for a city?
Okay.
Perhaps Councilmember Swank, in that vein, maybe, you know, we typically have a budget, we typically have a budget workshop, and that's a chance for the public to weigh in, and then, we have, of course, it comes to city council and we do it then. When we do the budget workshops, they're typically in the morning. Maybe we just switch it to a, to a time like a regular council meeting, maybe it's a special meeting, and that gives the public more opportunity to review the proposed budget and, and weigh in. There's another angle to that that we have to be careful of, and that is when we, when the budget's prepared, a lot of staff input, and, and this is part of what this, this item is, which I'll address in a second, but a lot of staff input goes into that, and then, a lot of council input goes into that. I mean, we all have our, our things that we've promised or little special projects, like, you know, I shouldn't say special projects because it sounds like special interests, but, hey, I've been big on inclusion, you know, for, for the past 12 years. So, you know, oftentimes, like when I bring the, the, the vineyard program, the, you know, those type of things, and, you know, and that was something that we wanted to do with special needs. So, that drives the budget as well. Now, input from the community as to those projects, I, I didn't just think that up, that came from input, you know, and so, if, if there's an opportunity as a council member for people to input with you, that'll make its way into the budget as well.
And that's, that's kind of where I'm going with it, is to, is to make that input easier because let's be realistic, coming to city council and city chambers is very intimidating.
Right.
I mean, and I'll even go back to one of the first meetings I ever had here, years and years and years ago with, with you and, and our now supervisor, Washington. It was, it's daunting, right, to come here?
It is.
So, I'm trying to say, "Let's, let's get into the community," and whether that means much smaller, less formal ways to interact, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we have to completely reinvent the wheel, but, but make people feel comfortable in that space where they feel comfortable talking to a council member about the budget. That's all I'm saying.
Well, in an informal way, I know that I, when I worked for Senator Stone, he, I developed for him a kitchen cabinet.
Speak in the mic.
And you've, you've probably, I mean, you've, you've had a kitchen cabinet yourself.
I've done a kitchen cabinet, yeah.
And it's where you, and it's, you know, not anything formal with the city, but you want advice, and so, you get diverse group of people and not necessarily people who agree with you. So, that's a great opportunity to sit down and talk about budget stuff, too.
But I think it's embedded in a lot of the conversation we've already had, right?
Yeah, yes.
Creating the, the commission in the first place helps engage, you know, the community in a different way in the budget that we've never done before.
Oh, no, right.
But, but we're also talking about bringing back, you know, some of the both formal and informal meetings that we have in, in the community as well. And so, it's incumbent on us to, if we're at those, those meetings, or any of our, you know, boards or commission members are, that, that they help foster that dialogue as well and make sure that when we're, you know, doing a, you know, a coffee with the counselor or whatever it is, "Let's talk about the budget. What are your priorities? What are your, you know, thought, I mean, you know, so that's, I mean, it, you know, the conversation needs to go two ways, but there, I think, once this framework, you know, starts to become a little bit more clear, we're gonna have plenty of opportunity, and that's, you know, and as long as we recognize that that's part of this and we want that to feed into our, our, you know, perspectives of the budget and the budgeting process, then I think, you know, we're, we're making a good, good headway. There's a lot of details that still need to get figured out, but that's, you know, for all of us to try and fill in some of those blanks."
Could you put the slide back up real quick? Yeah. And again, we'll work out the details as, as Councilmember Ron just pointed out. So, when we talk about the needs of underrepresented community population, I envision that as being very dynamic. That, that may change as time goes by. And one thing that concerns me is an underrepresented community population may not have the oomph to represent themselves.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Right, and so, I, that question or that mechanism is something that I'd like to, to look into. Right now, we have a, we have a protest movement going, it's, it's a all lives, Black Lives Matter type of protest movement, and they speak with a loud, loud voice, and we're listening to it. That's the purpose of why we're doing all this. And so, when we talk about underrepresented, the first thing that comes to my mind is that issue, and we're focusing on that, and we, and that's a good thing and we want to. But once we've done that, okay, there are, there are a myriad of underrepresented community population here that, that don't have 500 people showing up to protest. There needs to be a mechanism to vet and find out what those needs are as well so that when we do our budget, it doesn't, you know, it just doesn't go to who, who has the loudest voice. That's my concern.
And it changes, too, because I deal with this at the school district, and there's actually state definitions of what underrepresented populations, you know, who might be in those groups. But it depends on the context that you're speaking. If you're talking about, in Temecula, you talk about, you know, school teachers, well, what group is underrepresentative, is underrepresented in our school, you know, our, our teacher population?
But that concerns me because when you start getting into the legal aspect of it, it means something like when you start looking at the Voting Rights Act, underrepresented, you know, they focused on Hispanics, and then, they did the, the whole, our whole council district based on, on that issue because that was a legal term. When we look at, when we talk about budget and underrepresented people in our community, that's a whole different thing.
It is.
I mean, I don't know that there'll be a legal definition.
It is, no.
I mean, are seniors represented enough? I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the point I was trying to make.
Was it?
It's different depending on the context that you're, you know, in which you're considering it.
Okay, I think I, I made my point, though.
Yeah.
I just, I just think in, in that, I, I love this and, and that's the item for direction, but when we start, I guess we need a definition of how that would operate.
Yeah.
Based on...
Well, groups that typically, you know, they can't speak for themselves, or they don't, you know, they don't speak up, but they, you know, you want them to be included. I mean, it's...
Well, and, and see, here's the thing, is I think we already do that, okay, in many ways, but we've, again, we're dealing with racial issues now and a population base that has said they feel underrepresented, and so, we're here talking about it and we're gonna do something about it. Once we're done addressing that, I think we have done in the past a great job of representing those that have, I mean, our inclusion programs are, are, are an absolute example of that. We have food programs. Mr. City Manager, weigh in on what I'm saying because we've had these discussions.
Yeah, but, but I think that's the...
We have housing programs.
That's the point of, of establishing this framework now.
Yeah.
Is we're never done addressing it.
No.
That's exactly right.
I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, you know, so whether we're talking about, see, I mean, we're never done. There's always an issue, there's always something for us to discuss.
Right.
And so, I like the wording that, you know, the staff report provides because it gives that carte blanche to be able to, you know, a, address what's in front of us today, but also be prospective about what's, you know, going to be there in the future.
Because it does change.
And, and, and that's the whole point of, of creating this commission, that's the whole point of making sure it's integrated into the budget process, is that we're, we are, we are, we've never gotten it perfect, and we need to recognize that, right? And so, the whole point is, and that's why we need to build in that sustainability piece, is that this dialogue needs to be a constant part of the conversation with the city.
Well, it's a continuous, it's a work in progress.
So, your comments and the comments that we just had is the consensus. I agree 100%. Does that, have we communicated?
Yeah, I, I think we're good. And then, you know, this is, this is where the diversity commission can definitely come into play as well because they will be, in theory, not only representative of the underrepresented community when we're talking about race and equity, but also have access to those that are in underrepresented communities when we're talking about race and equity, and will be able to bring that perspective.
Let me, thank you, let me ask a, a question because when we're talking about that commission, are we just looking for racial diversity? Are we looking for age diversity?
No, no.
Are we looking for special needs diversity?
Single moms?
Single moms, I mean, like...
Well, that's, that's what we're asking staff to basically come up. There's models out there, there's different perspectives. We need, we need those perspectives brought forward. So, it's not, it's not for us to, to establish that here tonight, it's just, that's, that's, that's the next step.
And that's why I mentioned the, the state because it gave me ideas of...
Got it, understood.
Things that I've never thought about before.
Thank you, both.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem?
Yes.
May I, really quick, just want to follow up on the budget, and, and I think it's important to note that, that this item is not just for us in this moment, right now.
Right.
This is to create a policy and a system to carry the city forever, right?
It's a structure.
Forever.
It's a structure.
So, this is something we set now, and we're gonna be gone in a little bit, right? And we've set something in place that is, quite frankly, is probably not gonna be undone. You know, you, you say, "We value you, we want representation, and this is how we're gonna go about it." And, and I think that's really the important thing, not to get so hung up on the conversation right this second, but what it looks like going forward over the next 100 years.
Well, and we've talked about it within the context of internal, external, I mean, so, it'll be so ingrained in the, in everything that the, the city does. And, you know, you want it to become a natural, you know, a natural type of thinking.
Okay, so, I think we're good on the budget, and then, lastly, the Quality of Life Master Plan, the consensus of when we go through the process to consider adding a, a equity value and then, an additional diversity and inclusion value. And I want to make it really clear that those words are very different words. It's, there's, when I said earlier, the comma matters, it matters. A diversity commission on its own, a diversity value on its own does not include equity. It does not include equity.
Define equity, as you're, as you're mentioning here.
Yeah, so, so, when, when you just talked about diversity, we talked about diversity as gender, as thought, as age, as all kinds of, all kinds of things. When we talk about equity, we are talking about people moving forward from the same foundation. And when we see a crack in that foundation where people aren't on the same foundation, that we will work to fix that foundation so that everybody is working off of the same foundation. So, that's why I say, and traditionally, minorities, black and brown individuals have not always been moving forward in this, in this space from an equitable foundation. So, that's where, if you say diversity, that's fine, but diversity is a very big word that can include a lot of things. Equity is specifically you are committing yourself to making sure everybody is, is not getting the same tool, everybody is getting the tool that they need to be successful.
If I may, I, I see clearly the equity issue, as you mentioned, for black and brown. Would you say the equity issue applies to special needs?
Yeah, so, that actually, if there is, I mean, again, it depends on context, right? So, in this context, we are specifically talking about race and equity as it relates to race.
So, equity as it relates to race?
Correct.
Okay.
And the statement that we have basically said, and obviously, this will be refined as we go through the QLM pre-process, we're talking at the very conceptual high level, but what we're talking about is the city council's commitment to residents of all racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds.
Sure.
That we believe that everybody of all racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds deserves equal access, equal treatment, is equal to Temecula.
Yes.
Very well put.
Yes, I agree.
And I, I agree with that 100%.
Okay, so, so, that's the last consensus was the addition of those two separate values. Mr. City Manager, I know you're still on the line. Have we missed anything?
No, I think, I think what we could use is just a, a motion. I took notes, I know, Randy, you took notes as well, but we, we got general consensus and direction on all these items. We appreciate the dialogue. And, yeah, looking for, for a motion to, to move this along, and obviously, we got a lot of work ahead of us. Some of this is gonna come sooner than later, but the staff, myself, we're committed to turning things around as, as quickly and responsibly as we can, and we're looking forward to working on this with, with everyone.
Okay, thank you. So, we need a motion?
Well, some, can we have just a few closing comments? I know I have a few things I'd like to say before we close.
Point of order, you might want to extend your meeting also.
Oh, yeah. Motion to extend.
Yeah, move to extend, we won't need it, but till quarter to one.
Oh.
I, I said we won't need it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second, somebody?
Second that.
All right, one in favor.
Hi. May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'll be quick, but, you know, I've been thinking about this for weeks and, you know, working these things out and learning a lot and, and, you know, there, you know, you, you say to yourself, "You don't know what you don't know," but then, you go out and you seek answers. I, I want to once again say that when we, when we had the protests here, and I, again, I even hate to call them protests, but they were...
Demonstrations.
Right, they were demonstrations, and we in the city of Temecula have encouraged demonstrations. I mean, we, we like that, we encourage it, that's the type of community that we are. One thing that I have to continue to say, and I say this because there's a lot of misunderstanding, and part of our whole effort is to bridge the gap between that misunderstanding. One thing I was impressed with the groups that came to demonstrate was their opening statements of, "We know all lives matter, but right now, we're talking about black lives." And that took the tension right out, right out of the air and enabled us to move, at least me, to move the dialogue forward. There's, there's something that I'm gonna ask the council and, of course, the community out there at, at large, is, it, it, we're gonna have to adopt, we have to adopt. And that is, as we move forward in these conversations, it has to be safe to do so.
Yes.
I, I, no one, no matter on what position you maintain, can be in a situation where they are afraid to speak. If they are afraid to speak, then the, then the dialogue will not move forward.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna speak for myself. In this process, I may say something that's offensive to somebody. I don't mean it to be offensive, I'm not an offensive guy, but if I have to watch every single word that I say, I'm not gonna say anything. And if I don't say anything, this process is not going to move forward, at least for me. I will just take what I believe and go about my merry life, and, and, and that's all I can do. And I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think most people, no matter what side of the fence you're on, are going to have that reaction. That's the reaction we don't want to have anymore. We, we, we have to be able to speak. That really, that, that's a concern of mine, and it's a sincere concern.
Yes.
And I just wanted everybody to know that. My last, two more points. We're going to enact some good work here, but no law, whether we pass a thousand laws or change the Quality Life Master Plan or add whatever we do, will not work unless we reach men's hearts and women's hearts. That's where the change is going to occur. That's what we have to reach, and that's why we need the safe space to do it. You, you can pass a law that says we're gonna honor racial diversity, but if inside men's hearts don't change, it, it's meaningless. It's absolutely meaningless. Our goal, and I'm talking to everybody out there, is to get past the, the law and get into a connection of the heart. And then we'll do something that is not being done anywhere in the nation. We will accomplish what we're setting out to do. And my last comment is, you know, right now, we're focusing on race, but the goal is to focus on race, so that we eventually don't have to focus on race. That's the goal. And so I envision a time when we don't have this dialogue anymore, because we don't need to. That's the goal. It's a lofty one, but I think we can do it, and that's all I needed to say.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, if I may, just one other thing, I was going to say this, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking a lot. I don't know if the community at large knows out there, I am not running for reelection. So I have approximately six months in my term. I hope that I can participate in this as much as possible. It's very meaningful to me, I'm about to shed a tear, and I hope I can move the process as forward as I can. You can see I'm very passionate about it. Anyway, I just wanted the community to know I'm only six months here, but I'm going to give it everything I got, and I hope to participate. I hope we can move it quickly, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, and that's it, thanks.
Good, thank you. Matt, Zach?
Mike, thank you for saying those words.
Zach?
Mike, again, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, I know we're pressed for time, but, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot, and there's a part of me that's just truly happy that we're here, right? And then there's a side of me that's sad that we're here. It took us this long to get to this space, right, as a community? And when I say "we," I just mean collectively, as our community, as our state, as our nation, that we're... It took us this long to get here, right? But we're here. And I think it's important that we continue to learn. And we don't know what we don't know. And I think you've seen, and I know that you all are soaking in as much as you can, and are open and willing to learn. I think that that is truly one of the most important things, just on a personal level, right? To try to learn. I really want us to, and I know we're going down that path, to keep working in this space. Don't stop working in this space. This is something that we need to continue forever. And I know we'll get to a place where we'll feel comfortable, and things will pass, and there'll be another new cycle, and something else will happen. But I just must insist that we continue to be working in this space. And then this is just the beginning, okay? So we can start from here. We can start from today, and we can move forward in a meaningful, impactful way for our community. I know you're exhausted. I know the community's exhausted, I'm exhausted. And I teeter back and forth between exhaustion and empowerment. So I've never felt more proud of the council, of city staff, of the community, than I do right now. I mean, I'm getting chills actually saying that, because it's true. I mean, I've seen growth, I've seen genuine love for our community, and I've seen a willingness to acknowledge the realities of our world. And I think that's important. So while on one hand, I'm exhausted, on the other hand, I'm extremely proud and empowered to be sitting here with you all. So I thank you for indulging me and being a part of this. I truly am proud.
Well, thank you, Zach. You know, when you really love people, it hurts me to think that someone is afraid, or that someone has a negative self-image, or they lack the confidence, or they're, you know, afraid to speak out, or they're afraid to try new things, or they're afraid to step out, or they're afraid to, you know, be criticized. That hurts me. I don't want people to think that for any reason they're inferior, for any reason. You know, we're all God's children, and when you love people and they hurt, I think you hurt. So if, in doing this, we can make people realize that through your words and deeds, you can build confidence and comfort and self-esteem in others, and make them comfortable. And when they're comfortable and they have trust, that's when you get the dialogue that you need. And so that is the environment that we need to foster, is that an environment of love, where we're not critical. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. And when you believe what you believe, it's important for you. And if somebody doesn't agree, they have to realize that, you know, they have a different opinion. But we're all able to have our opinions, and we can't criticize what someone feels. But if they feel like they have no self-worth, or they'll never be anything, we can go a long way toward making them realize that they're valued and that they can contribute. And I hope that that's one of the things that this does. It puts us all on a, you know, it makes us all aware of how words really mean things. And we have a lot to learn about those words right now.
Madam? Thank you.
Yep, and second? And you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have to, Madam Mayor Protam, we have to. So Mayor Protam Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
Yay. Okay, faithful commissioners...
Point of order, can we forego the rest of the agenda?
Sure. Well, public safety's here, I mean, they've...
We do need a city attorney report, because we had a closed session.
Just real quickly, we had a closed session, and there were no actions taken.
Very good, Peter. So is anybody in the audience that is, you know, supposed to speak concerned if they're not going to speak? At a quarter till one? I don't think so.
Madam Mayor Protam?
Aaron?
I know it's early in the morning, and everyone wants to leave. If I could indulge everyone for about five more minutes, I would just like to acknowledge two gentlemen. I know we're going to adjourn in their name this morning, who selflessly devoted their life to public service. One served our country, and the other, our city. First Lieutenant David Schmitz, fighter pilot for the United States Air Force, stationed in South Carolina. He died too soon at age 32. A young hero on a training mission on June 30th, protecting our nation's freedom. He leaves behind a wife, Valerie Schmitz. His parents live here in Temecula, Mr. and Mrs. Brian and Sherry Schmitz. The Schmitz family, you're all in our prayers and our thoughts. We will also close in memory of Mr. Perry Peters, one of the founders of the city of Temecula. He was part of the city committee in late 1980s initiating Temecula's incorporation, which became official on December 1st, 1989. Mr. Peters' legacy is the can-do spirit, demonstrated by his will to develop the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and the Perry Peters Room at the Community Recreation Center, is named after him. Last year, with Mr. Peters' blessing, we created the timeline of photos of the city of Temecula growing up, over 30 years, using his voice as the prophetic voice and the letter that he wrote to the city council. And it was published in the newspaper in 1989. I think it's fitting to play that we listened to his words from 1989 in his honor. Would you please play the video?
Get into your time machine, dial it back to 1989, December 1st. Dear city council, the aspirations of those who came before you, their families and accomplishments, the sum total of Temecula history, are now entrusted to you. You are the caretakers of the soul of Temecula. Please remember and respect your roots. As we write this, expectations about the future are high, like a brilliant, multifaceted jewel. Temecula glows with a rare, natural beauty. A gifted decorator, Mother Nature, arranged the setting of the Temecula Valley with rolling hills, sun filtering through the mist, clear air and sweet water, and a Mediterranean climate. This was the inspiration for our settlers, who in 1989 gave birth to this new city. If our efforts and those of our successors bear fruit, and our dreams materialize, Temecula in your day will be a thriving, commercial, industrial center with pleasant residential areas, roads over which it is a treat to drive, a center of culture and learning, and old town that reveres and preserves its place in history and shares its significance with each succeeding generation. In a nearby wine country known worldwide and protected from urban encroachment, are the air and water truly fresh and pure and clean in your day? Are parks, golf, tennis, cycling, jogging, horseback riding, and a variety of team sports within easy access to your constituents? Do travelers passing through for the first time still say, "My, what a beautiful valley"? If they do, thank you for that. We value our quality of life almost as much as life itself. We trust you do too. For the sake of our children, may you enjoy the civic inheritance we pass on to you like a baton in a relay race. In our lap of the relay, we have sprinted ahead. But this is a long-distance race. As you get ready to receive the baton, let civic pride, not greed, motivate you to move forward. From silent, unseen bleachers, we cheer you on. God be with you.
So moved, Madam Mayor Protam.
So have a motion and second to adjourn in memory of those two wonderful gentlemen. Betsy did a marvelous job on that video. So we stand adjourned, gentlemen. Thank you.